Doc, can you hear us there?
Yes, I can hear you now, Bill. Thank you.
All right, thank you for joining us there. All right, I will call this meeting to order, the Van County Commission. It is four P M on Tuesday, fifteenth of July. We have Commissioner Hadeen present, Commissioner Hadler online, Commissioner McCurdy, McGann, Martinus McCandless and myself all in the commission chambers here and we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance through the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, unconditionally, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, people want to start off with our citizens to be heard here at four P M. Just to know that if you have things that you want to discuss, that one of the citizens to be heard, preferably at the first one or the second one, we prefer to not have twice in one meeting. So make your make your pick and keep the comments and your remarks to three minutes. And I believe Steve usually adds a little sign that he flashes, but you come up and introduce yourself and have at it. So I'll start with anybody that wants to here in the chambers. All right, Steve. And then Cara, I'm unsure who went first there.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I sent this letter in early yesterday, so introduce yourself. I'm Steve Evers. I am sitting here with y'all today as the Executive Director of the Friends of Arches and Canyonlands Parks. I sent you all an email yesterday morning. Not sure if y'all said it. I'm just gonna read that letter which I sent to you. I just sort of make sure that everybody saw that or hears it in this case. So Friends of Arches and Canyonlands Parks is an official nonprofit partner of the National Park Service's Southeast Utah group, supporting Arches and Canyonlands National Parks and Hovenwee and Natural British National Monuments. We raise private funds and provide vital resources for projects and programs that otherwise go unfunded. Our track record includes providing housing and housing for seasonal rangers, purchasing equipment for search and rescue, and supporting volunteer housing and gear, just to name a few things. For the past two and a half years, we've been working closely with Arches National Park to address a longstanding and critical need, the construction of a modern emergency operations center. The parks, if I say E O C, that's what I mean, emergency operations center. The park's current emergency response facility is outdated and inadequate. It lacks plumbing, HVAC, basic storage and appropriate meeting space. It does not meet the needs of the modern incident response team. This need is urgent. Last year, Arches recorded the highest number of emergency incidents in its history, although it ranks around twentieth in visitation among U S national parks from year to year. Arches consistently ranks in the top ten for the number of emergency responses that they respond to. And so with each additional visitor, it has increased strain on an already overburdened response system. Friends of Arches and Canyonlands has completed the pre-design phase and a professional cost estimate for the new emergency operations center. So we've started down this this path to get a new building. We also recently commissioned a fundraising feasibility study. Unfortunately, the results were clear with that. And while we have strong donor support, a project of this scale exceeds our current fundraising capacity. And furthermore, many of our generous supporters feel that this type of public safety infrastructure should be provided through government channels. So the stated goal of the letter is, I see this is in response to the letter to Secretary Burgum. So the stated goal in the letter is to increase visitation. More visitors will inevitably mean more emergencies, and it's essential that any plan to accommodate increased visitation also accounts for the increased burden on emergency response. So with that in mind, we respectfully urge you to add the following bullet point to the list of infrastructure improvements supported to the letter. And that bullet point is construction of an updated emergency operations center to improve incident response and visitor safety. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to visitor experience and visitor safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Cara, please.
Not gonna read all of that, but it's just some added information. My name's Cara Dornwind. I have been involved in regional work related to land management in our area for twenty years. And I just wanted to give a little history with all of the discussion about trail ambassadors and all that. I wanted to give just a little bit of history of human waste management in recreation areas in Grand County. It's not exactly a well-publicized piece of our local history. And I just wanted, this is just an abbreviated history and a photo that I took in twenty twenty-two on the Rim Trail before the Trail Ambassador Program really took off. And there is really a long history of managing human waste in Grand County that actually started in the late nineteen eighties. For those of you who've been here for all that time, probably remember some of what was going on in your corridor, sand flats, et cetera. And I think some really creative solutions came out of that that were collaborative and really did a lot of good. In the mid-two thousands, though, two thousand ten, two thousand thirteen-ish, the human waste issue became a widespread problem, significantly widespread problem as visitor numbers increased and also as visitors started getting their information about where to go and how to do things from social media rather than from other sources. And it became much harder to actually get good information out to people. And it became severe enough that Southeast Utah Repairing Partnership, which had been an organization that started meeting in two thousand and seven expressly to deal with tamirisk issues along the Colorado River border and the release of the tamirisk leaf beetle, pivoted for at least four years on to topic, talking about human waste and how to how that is actually the more important issue that was facing local land managers at all levels. The Travel Council actually staff attended quite a few of those meetings, like Gisler was a big part of that for a while. And we really, when wag bags were new, there were discussions about should we just make these swag, you know, and we had some good funny interactions about that. In nineteen, another collaborative effort started, which was Mill Creek Community Collaborative, and that also talked a little bit about human waste, but it also talked about trail ambassadors. And that was as the trail ambassador concept was really beginning. So I just wanted to put a plug in there in light of the fact that we need visitors, we need the experience to be good, and we need clean water, that the Trail Ambassador Program has really changed a lot about visitor interactions in high-use areas. And this photo that I, I mean, I haven't seen that in years, and I saw it fairly regularly prior to that existing. So it I just would urge all of you to learn more about that long history of human waste management, because this is a very small picture piece of it that I'm presenting here, and consider that as you consider the future of the Trail Ambassador Program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers, please?
Thank you. My name is Colin Topper, and I'm here tonight as a member of the Trail Mix Committee, and I want to comment on the e-bike recommendation that you will be discussing later tonight. And I just want to point out that, you know, something very profound happened recently, and you know, this, I say this is sort of a synergistic moment where, you know, your two advisory committees, the two main committees who would be advising this commission on a topic like that have have found a a common ground to stand on. And, you know, I believe that even today, you received an email from the chairs of these two, what often, you know, I wouldn't say they're opposed, but often create the sort of the bookends of a spectrum of advice for this committee or commission, have have found a a piece of of common ground to share with all of you. And what that is, is that regardless of the decision and the direction that you advise the B L M to take with their e-bike decision, they would like that alternative to be rolled out to be phased out and not to just be executed all at once. And so whether you choose one of the, whatever one of the three alternatives you choose, they're asking you, both of your advisory committees are asking you to roll that out in a phased manner so that your trail committee, so that all or your trail crew, so your public, all of these people can ease into this and can make adaptive management decisions and and address these things in a controlled environment rather than just opening the floodgates. And I also want to say that a huge piece of this, whatever we are talking about, when we're talking about expanding use of our existing infrastructure, is mitigating the effects that the Trail Ambassador Program has shown time and again. It's an effective way to communicate and educate with our visitors and make sure that not only are they having a great experience in Moab, but their experience is not affecting in a negative way future visitors' experience in Moab. And that product that we're trying to protect and the Trail Ambassador Program has won multiple awards for their work protecting that product is essential to this, to everything in this. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gross.
My name is Pete Gross. First of all, just hearing comment, Colin come forward, remind me, I echo everything Colin mentioned to you. What I find rather interesting is that the commission has already drafted a letter to the Park Service citing the sixty thousand dollar Kim Gardner study, which has yet to occur. Why are we, so two things, what, that seems kind of odd. Or the other question is, why are we spending sixty thousand dollars to learn something we already think we know? On a related note, I hope you had an opportunity to read my exchange with one of the commission members. I noticed he just smiled a little bit. I happened to find, came across, and I don't remember exactly where I found it. I was reading the Hancock Study, which was cited as one of the sources of evidence for a timed entry supposedly diminishing, causing the economic downturn in Moab. I I used the word dubious in describing it. I was scolded for presumably judging a study that I'd already read. That was understandable because, you know, that wouldn't have been, you know, nobody would have any prior knowledge of that. I was also mildly amused to learn from that exchange with one member of your commission that I'm divisive, that I spread hate and negativity. I take exception to that. And for what it's worth, bullying backfires on me. It actually strengthens my resolve. It also reminds me that a member of your commission also raised the issue of feeling bullied by other members of the commission. And I hold up. I have firsthand experience now, although I already agreed with what that commissioner said. Thanks for your time.
Next, Mr. Coontz.
I'm Cliff Coontz, Chair of the Motorized Trails Committee. Three things. The first is item eight, e-bikes. Yeah, the M T C supports alternative C that would open the two hundred and eleven miles that were spoke to in this plan to the class one e-bikes, but we also support the phasing opponent of alternative B that when you add all two hundred and eleven trails, you really ought to do it over a three-year period. And so the the reason why I'll turn this is we feel that the class ones are similar enough and so popular in the industry that the focus should really be on making sure that the class twos and all the way up to the electric motorcycles and things that I prefer to ride do not wind up on these trails. And that takes some education to the public, and it maybe takes some trail work, widening switchbacks, whatever they feel they need to do. The people that developed the vast majority of these trails in question should be allowed the time to have an orderly implementation. So that's why we feel both those components are important. On item five, the Motorized Trail Ambassador, just want to reiterate our support that, you know, they did a great job first in hiring Kelton and then supervising. And and Matty were already developing the program well for the non-motorized side, and they applied it well to to motorized. And this one for the upcoming years is supposed to expand into more trail work, recruiting volunteers, anything beyond just the regular outings, you know, involve social media to broaden their reach. So it is a good value for the state and especially the county, in my opinion. The last thing I'll say is in regard to item seven, and this is just speaking personally on behalf of the M T C, because it's about your budget, but it pertains to the Trail Ambassador Program. And so I I do hope you'll keep at least a core of that program in place, such as the option three that was laid out in their previous meeting. I understand that budgets are tight, and so every, maybe the Trail Ambassadors need to do their part in typing belts with others. Plus, you know, I like to see more widespread spending from the county side to the motorized and the non-motorized components of whether it's education, trail work, anything else. But they have developed this program and deserved their awards recently. It's important to do this, not just to sustain the surroundings, but to sustain the tourism in the long run. So the county should continue funding that kind of education. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I am Samantha Derbyshire. I didn't have time to send this letter, so I will read it. As the owner of Volantilide Shuttles and Vice Chair of Grand County Trail Mix, I urge the commission to support a phased cautious introduction of e-bikes on our local trails. As a business owner invested in our mountain bike economy, I know the future includes e-bikes, but we must integrate responsibly. There are many who enjoy Moab because e-bikes are not allowed on most of our trails. There are also visitors that are who have stopped coming due to chaos and overcrowding. Entire towns have built marketing campaigns avoiding our example with slogans like, don't Moab fruit up. And just yesterday, the Salt Lake Tribune published an article about Richfield where the recurring theme was not becoming Moab. While Trail Mix is often criticized as tube bike centric, it is in fact the county's non-motorized trail committee and also represents equestrians, hikers and runners who also use the trails that we are discussing. A vote for a limited and cautious ski bike introduction came after hours of public meetings and a balanced discussion. Regardless of the outcome, both the non-motorized and motorized committees agree phasing is key. This approach would allow GCAT to observe, educate and adapt as needed. It offers our community time to adjust, ensure our trail users are informed and mitigates conflicts before they escalate. Supporting a letter that does not advocate for a phased approach would undermine the thoughtful work of those entrusted to guide trail planning in Grand County. I urge the commission to remember that our true product is the land itself. If we fail to take care of it through education, responsible recreation management and thoughtful policy, then it won't matter whether we allow e-bikes or eliminate the Arches reservation system. What will drive visitors away is a degraded and poorly managed Moab. And I will note that the Trail Ambassador Program has been very successful in educating and making, keeping our trails. Nice. The other thing I wanted to speak on was the O A O. During the public comment period on May twentieth, mayoral candidate Curtis Wells stated the affordable housing issue is due to the lack of private land. So creative solutions with the federal government to get some of these public lands is a really great proposal. And yet on this agenda is his request to rezone opposed twenty-four units, units that could serve as affordable housing into overnight rentals. This contradiction raises serious concerns about the consistency and sincerity of our approach to addressing the housing crisis in Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Noel Janu, and I wanted to offer a comment on the Trail Ambassador Program, the funding of which I understand is up for discussion tonight. After I started my career in the planning department here three years ago, I work now as a community and recreation planner with a company that works with small mountain towns throughout the West and really helps them grapple with the challenges of tourism and growth while trying to maintain their community character. We work a lot in Utah with the state as well as in Colorado with the state of Colorado. And in our work, reference the Grand County Trail Ambassador Program as a prime case of how a community is doing things right in the face of high visitation, how the team is proactively managing visitation, collecting valuable data, improving visitor experience through education and connection, ensuring greater resource protection and markedly reducing search and rescue calls. Other communities throughout the state and throughout the West look to Grand County and this program specifically as an example of innovative and responsible recreation management. I understand that balancing the county budget is no small feat, but speaking as a professional in this field, to cut the funding for the program would be short-sighted and a disservice to our local community, our visitors, our public land and the reputation that we have built ourselves as a community who is doing some things right in recreation.
Thank you. Any others? Yes, sir.
My name is Caleb Meyer. I speak today regarding the draft letter to Secretary Burgum. I was hired by the National Park Service in two thousand twenty-two to evaluate the first pilot timed entry system in state of two thousand twenty-three. I collected, analyzed and reported thousands of hours of data on traffic flows and other indicators. I speak today as a private citizen, several years removed, and know where it's said should be construed to represent those of the N P S or any other agency or entity. I cite stats today from publicly available reports linked in the letter you received supporting this comment today. There's a lot more nuance in the letter. Okay, a mandatory shuttle would decrease congestion, but with severe barriers. It would cost forty-five million dollars annually for Arches, not including a park and ride for which there is only one viable location, which is a nuclear waste site not owned by the N P S. It would severely decrease access and increase visitors' time in the park, not in town spending money. Voluntary shuttles, on the other hand, do not see enough ridership to reduce congestion at other parks. Paving the secondary roads would cost fifty million or more each for only N P S sections without operational costs or other infrastructure. However, more folks could stay in Green River for cheaper if those get paved. Main entrance sits, the main entrance sits between two active washes. One inbound lane is currently coned off due to damage from two thousand twenty-four. Arches appropriated budget was just two point three six million in two thousand twenty-three, plus a couple million in fee revenue and another million in cyclic maintenance. That'll potentially go down as the N P S budget is shrunk in future years. The Arches maintenance backlog is twenty-six million. With the federal government, contractors and inherently long timelines, it may be prudent to assume costs would be higher than projected for any of those projects. Removing the timed entry system in two thousand twenty-six will result in the same unfair strategy the N P S is forced to use when the park fills and serious safety concerns occur, swinging the gate and turning visitors away. The N P S was forced to use this strategy one hundred and eighteen times in two thousand twenty-one, just during the timeframe timed entry was in effect the following year, when there were zero gate closures. Timed entry may not be a permanent solution, but it is the only one right now which recognizes our limited role in changing things as lost in time as the human capacity, the delicate arch ball. The N P S should absolutely continue to study the other solutions suggested, but no available data suggests they would solve the issues present at this time. I believe we would all benefit from our county commission supporting the protection of this place we all love in a manner which suggests reasonable solutions while recognizing uncontrollable constraints. Nothing is less accessible than extreme congestion, ugly and costly resource damage, and swinging the gate closed as we wait another decade or more for time-consuming, expensive and unfunded infrastructure projects with unknown outcomes beyond their impact on the landscape. Sending this letter to Secretary Burgum is short-sighted and deserves more thought than this commission has yet given it. The N P S mission, which became law one hundred and nine years ago, still calls on the agency to preserve quota, unimpaired the natural and cultural resources and values of the national park system for the enjoyment, education and inspiration of this in future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Scott Newton. Here today to show support for alternative C, class one e-bikes on B L M managed trails in Grand County to express a serious concern about how the new recommendation was made. We are already behind. Communities are embracing e-bikes as a safe, sustainable and inclusive way to access public lands. Meanwhile, here in Grand County, we still do not welcome e-bikes and are debating whether to open trails while other regions are expanding them. A slow rollout does not progress, it's exclusion. E-bikes allow seniors, people with injuries and those with physical limitations to enjoy the same access many or many already take for granted. They reduce car use, support sustainable tourism and help bring new people into outdoor recreation. We should be leading on this, not lagging. And yet, the Trump Advisory Board recently made a decision on e-bike policy without including cycling businesses and local e-bike riders to the table. They misled our local land managers from the both B L M and U S Forest Service into thinking the cycling community believes alternative B is the best alternative. While in fact, the majority of the cycling business and e-bikers in in town support alternative C, that's not just an oversight, it's a breach of good progress process. In fact, the bike representative on the board doesn't agree with the decision according to its correspondence correspondence with me and voted for favorite and for alternative B. Was this to appease the board or for fear of a different opinion? Something is not right here. So now the bike representative is also for alternative C. Local bike shops, guides, outfitters and shuttle companies are on the front lines of user experience and safety. We are stakeholders who interact with hundreds of riders every day who see the change in demographics. And we are invested as anyone to ensuring safe, respectful and inclusive access. To exclude local businesses who livelihood, whose livelihoods and expertise is ignored undermines both the integrity and credibility of this progress. E-bikes do not need to be another topic that divides our company, our community. We need to move forward urgently together. The plan reflects the reality on the ground. E-bikes are here. They're growing and they deserve a place on the trails. Look to amazing resources like Dead Horse State Park and Bentonville that disapprove all hell is going to break loose if we allow e-bikes. Our B L M office has already sat on this topic for the last five years while continuing to restrict e-bike use. The time is now. Let's lead with inclusion and not restriction. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? About online, would you?
Harris online.
Harris, would you like to speak? Citizens be heard.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, please introduce yourself.
All right, my name is Harris Hajabdeech. I'm here to talk about the Trail Ambassador Program and its importance. And I just want to start by saying it's not lost on me that the county revenue is down and that we we could benefit from users. However, if we are promoting summer tourism during months where the average temperature is about a hundred degrees, there needs to be someone out there like a trail ambassador who's there to help out in popular areas, you know, distributing water and electrolytes and stuff. This is directly contributing to reducing search and rescue statistics. And like others have stated, plenty of towns are centering their marketing around, quote, we're not like Moab. And I I believe that trail ambassadors help educate us out of that image, and we should continue funding funding the Trail Ambassador Program as an investment in our future. Another thing I'd like to draw attention to is to make America beautiful again by investing in our national parks. We should be prioritizing our employees and opposing reduction in force for the National Park Service. And I also don't think we should be opposing timed entry. It's the best resource we have for visitation management at this point. And I also support a slow roll of e-bikes on our trails. I support alternative B, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
I think you're gonna have one.
Yes, would you like to speak? Citizens be heard, Lynn. You're on mute.
How's that?
Good. Please introduce yourself.
Okay, Lynn Jackson. I want to speak to a couple of things. I moved here in nineteen eighty-two, working for the Bureau of Land Management. I've been a county commissioner after my time there in I've been a county commissioner after my time there and I retired. And what I can tell you is we've been dealing with, at the BLM and a federal level, with recreational use since that time. Really, it started in the early nineties. We've dealt with human waste, we've dealt with trails, and did this stuff fairly effectively in cooperation with the various partners in the county and with the state. But what I've seen lately is not sustainable for our county. As a county commission, you guys work for the county. You don't work for BLM, you don't work for the park service. You work for what's best for the county. The BLM and the park service have literally hundreds of millions of dollars to spend on trail maintenance and trash bags, and the whole lot that I've heard is so wonderful for our community. And we all agree, we want Moab to be a nice, clean place with good, clean trails. But from my perspective of twenty-eight years working with the BLM in this area and being sitting in your seat, the BLM is perfectly capable. We created the Sand Flats Recreation Management Area. We created, in fact, I was involved integrally as an employee and manager in that. We worked on cleaning up the power dam situation, Ken's Lake, Alto Hurra Pass. The BLM is fully capable of handling their resources. Now, should we cooperate where reasonable? Yes, but not at the expense of county taxpayer funding. And that goes along with the Trail Ambassador Program. It goes along, thank you, Stephen, with the park service working with them so that they're not doing things to decrease our visitation. You can argue, the data is clear, since that timed entry system went in, our visitation has been dropping at the park, and our economy has shown a similar drop. So I applaud what you guys are doing, and I'm just here to tell you, you've heard from a lot of folks. Your job is to take care of the citizens of Grand County and not worry about what the park service and the BLM is doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
Not that I know of.
Anybody else in the chambers? Yes, sir. Thank you, Bill.
My name is Tony Mantuso. I'm a known quantity when it comes to land management around here. And I just ran some numbers, combed through the budget, and to Mr. Jackson's point, I understand and agree that your duty is here first and foremost to the citizens, the resources that we have here in Grand County, its county values. But I would like to speak up in support of GCAT and the Responsible Recreation Budget Line item as it was originally approved in the two thousand and twenty-five budget. In case, I did some quick little ratios. The budget amendment cuts Responsible Recreation by eighty-four percent. And that constitutes three percent budget savings in an already balanced budget for the overall active trails and transportation department. So that targeted cut is extremely focused on one individual program. And so I think the fact that that budget cut is framed as a fiscal savings is kind of it doesn't look like that way to me. If I have to make budget cuts across a single department, I try to make those budget cuts equitable across things. It doesn't seem like a fiscal decision to pick eighty-four percent budget cut to one line item and only get a three percent savings on the department. So there's the math. Additionally, I am a little late coming here today because I just got off of Public Lands Patrol in my nine-to-five job where we removed some tires from the river and found cooler of poop down by where the cat fishermen like to hang out on the potash section below Town Bridge, kind of near. I wish I had photos. They're still on camera, but actually, the guys are going to pick it up right now. I, thank you, Steve, I have a ton of respect for the work that Responsible Recreation does as an award-winning and incredibly popular program with our community. People like seeing folks out there doing this. When Rhodey and Jeff and the guys who go out and they look like they're all swatted up and they're going real fast on their dirt bike, I watch the public run away from us in our big white trucks and flashing lights. People, when I was a kid, my father drug me by my ear to go talk to a park ranger, said, "Shut up, kid, and listen there." And what I think the Responsible Recreation and Active Trails folks are doing is helping return the public's relationship with their land managers into a place where you can go up to them, ask about how to read the map. Remember, did you bring enough water? Those are what park rangers should actually be. And I just don't think that a three percent savings on an already balanced budget to cut one line item program that's incredibly popular and useful and serving to correct a relationship need between the public and the employees, it just doesn't feel right. That's, I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the chambers? Anybody else online? Nope, nope. All right. Seeing none, we will move on then. We can start with, did we put the first chair? Melissa Devers, is she joining us in person? Sorry, I didn't see you come in. Please, come on up.
Maybe I'll share my screen. Maybe. Okay, yes. Hi, everyone. This is going to be the most mercifully short departmental report ever, since I've been in this job six days.
That's fabulous.
So it will be mercifully short. The nice thing is, is after six days, I can't have done a ton of damage either. So it kind of gets both ways. Some of you I know and I've met, some of you I am really looking forward to meeting you. But I kind of wanted to go over, since I don't have anything to report on really, because it's tedious cleanup stuff over the last week, to forward and what we're focused on, and then encourage you to reach out and connect and share your thoughts as well.
Can I share for just a minute?
Oh, yeah, please.
Sure. We hired Melissa to fill the Economic Development Position as well as a Public Information Officer, or us, is that how we titled her? And so she's recently just been hired by the county to fill a position that went vacant some while back and to help on the economic development side. So I apologize, I didn't properly introduce you before.
No worries. I am super happy to be introduced, however or not, because I'm just really eager to jump in. So I'm really excited about both of those roles, and I actually think that they're distinct, but they're really complementary. So part of having a really good PR story and a really good narrative and crafting our external and internal image is doing really great things. So authentically, the stuff that we're accomplishing is the stuff that's really exciting and meaningful storytelling. So I kind of like the way that they go together. So as far as the strategy goes, I've got things numbered, but the way that the departments, the two departments that I'm working with are going to work together is that we can't really take a linear approach because we're in the middle of bailing water season, which is the grant reporting season, and the moving on to the next round of grant applications season. So while I would like for it to be a really nice linear, first, we're going to do this and then develop our strategy, and then we're going to execute on it. We don't really have that luxury because right now we're sort of bailing water really quickly and working on all of them simultaneously. So I thought I would just give you an overview then, or what are the key priorities or what I'm focused on. And those are, right now, we need to finalize all of our RCG and RCOG grant reporting, which is kind of a beefy process because they close on July thirty-first, and they also open, meaning until we do our reporting and until we finalize all of those things, they don't open up those new opportunities for us to be able to apply for, and we don't want to miss those funding windows. So I had a really great couple of hour meeting today with Deborah McKee at GOEO and establishing that relationship and cultivating that relationship with both she and James Dixon and other people in that department are really top of mind because they're such a valuable resource and a great partner for us. So we're also getting together in person next week for a few hours to be able to lay that foundation and that groundwork and that relationship. So finishing up all of that reporting, opening up the new rounds of reporting and applications, and then crafting that economic development strategy to be able to go hand-in-hand with the Trail to Tomorrow report. So doing all of those things at one time. And as far as the public information key priorities, we have a lot of calling to. So we don't really have an official platform right now for public relations with the county, and I'm really, really excited to develop that. So between Tess and myself, we've identified about thirty-some odd social media accounts that really enthusiastic folks get excited to start because we really have something to say initially. But then when we realize that we're going to have to do that two, three, four times a week for a consistent period of time, we immediately abandon those because it's not super fun to keep going. So calling all of those, same thing goes for when you go to our website. If you want to sign up for a newsletter, we have about fifty of those. I, for fun, signed up for about twenty just to see what would happen, and they didn't really go anywhere and nothing came back to me. So we want to create a really good consistent platform where all of our residents know where to go to get official information, be able to engage in conversation, and clearly, they know that it's coming from us. We do that with consistency. And then we've got a couple of communication initiatives that we're getting ready to push over the next couple of weeks. So I'll be able to test all of that calling and how it works, and then we'll be able to incorporate that feedback to future communications. That is my very short report about what we're doing, but it is a lot of stuff to do. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I was happy to see the Trail to Tomorrow. So I'm so glad that that's coming back, you know, that that wasn't something we paid for, and then it just sits there static. So thank you for revisiting that.
Yeah, I'm excited to work with it so it doesn't become another really expensive shelved work, and you guys will be hearing more about that strategy, and I'll be reaching out to get a lot of info from all of you.
Mary?
I just wanted to express how excited I am to have Melissa on board. I remember the first time I met her was when she was applying for to be on the travel council. And after her interview, she realized she didn't qualify. And that her interview was so amazing that when she walked out, I told Ben Alter, I said, "You run and grab her, tell her to try out for the Economic Development Department Board." And she did, and she said just fabulous on it, and I'm sure in this position, you're going to do an excellent job. So I'm just really happy to see you. Thank you.
Anybody? Hi, guys. Likewise, we're excited that you're here, for sure. So we look forward to whatever we can do to support you in that role and move forward.
I told Tess as part of the process, I would love to play coy, but I can't because I'm overly eager, just super excited to do it. So pretending won't do me any good. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it. All right, Big, you're up. Thank you.
You can leave that on. I don't have a screen. I'm going to introduce Leanne, just by saying this, Leanne Emmert, and this is Crystal Bowden. I'm going to reintroduce them later. First, I'm just gonna say a few things, but good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to share what the Film Commission has been up to. It's been a while since I have seen you. I met briefly with the chair on Friday evening about the Zeus production that's in town, and he invited me to give a full department update. With all that's going on, this is more of a half a year and half of a full department update. Some of you see some of my emails that have come through with numbers and things with film production that have been in town, but I thought that some of the public might also appreciate hearing that as well. It has been an exceptionally active spring and summer, and with that, I'm calling it a season of strong momentum. Put that in paper. Productions of all shapes and sizes, major studio films, commercials, international series have come to Grand County and to neighboring San Juan County, which I also represent as the Film Commission Director for the Moab to Monument Valley Film Commission. I didn't introduce myself, did I? Big Messner. Moab to Monument Valley Film Commission, correct? These projects support our hotels, our restaurants, our creative professionals, and our rental companies, and so many more things. Especially like right now during a very slow visitor season, slower visitor months. Today, the Film Commission has received upwards of twenty-nine direct production inquiries via my website. And those calls are not just hours, but potentially days of work facilitating, right, and inspire them to want to come and film here. Here's a look at some of the recent productions and their economic impact. Just hold my hand if I'm going to pass. One of our really exciting, interesting productions was called Wild Horse Nine. It was completed in May. An Oscar-winning director, Martin McDonagh, came to shoot here. They had scattered in January as well. They filmed in Moab area, in LaSalle, at a private residence, and also in Monument Valley. This is the only U.S. location that they filmed in. The rest was all shot in Chile and on the island of Rapanui, otherwise known as Easter Island. Why is this Moab and Monument Valley? They had about seven hundred and fifty room nights. They had a local vendor spend of about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and a total local impact of about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. There was an AT&amp;T commercial called "I Just Called." Very sweet. If you haven't seen it, you can look it up online. They filmed here in March. They had about three hundred and sixty room nights. They had a lodging spend of about ninety thousand and a total local spend of about five hundred thousand dollars. Their locations included Mineral Bottom and some local hires, Base Jump Moab, and some others. They also shot out in Castle Valley, at the Red Canyon School Ranch, and they used James Dixon and his team as forest rangers, so they got a lot of locals involved. Did you work on that one?
Great.
And Chris will also briefly work on that one. So it was a great use of locations, crews, and our local resources for that. We also had Discovery Asia exploring the Unknown, Season Two. This is a smaller-scale project, but it provided international visibility and it supported some of our off-grid locations. Castleton, not necessarily off-grid, but harder to access, the fruitful Wall Street and some Indian Creek locations in San Juan County. They filmed in May. They had a lodging spend of about one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. A local spend, including food permits and other vendors, of twenty-three thousand, a total of about twenty-five thousand dollars in local spend. So the updated spring totals from what I had set out before is about eleven hundred room nights and a total spend of one point two five billion dollars for the spring for those, just those that I listed, not any of the others. I'm going to move on to a couple of future projects, and then I'll circle back and make the introduction again to my guests. Some upcoming projects that I've been helping to facilitate is a road trip travelogue show with a boy band. They'll be filming at the end of this month. It's a smaller budget and smaller crew as well. Only thirteen people, but estimated forty room nights and about twelve thousand dollars spent. They'll be filming in Moab City, in Arches, in Goblin Valley, and in Monument Valley. I have signed an NDA for this Amazon Prime project that's coming hopefully this fall, so I can't really talk much further about it, but about fifty crew, a hundred and fifty room nights or so, lodging forty-five thousand dollars, and a Utah budget of about three hundred thousand dollars. And they'll be filming across Grand and San Juan County. But these smaller projects create consistent vendor demand and helps diversify our field economy. I also just spoke on the phone about an hour ago to another repeat customer who reached out for a commercial project in a month or so. That's pretty cool. I would now like to introduce Leanne Emmert, who is the Supervising Location Manager, and Crystal Bowden, who is the owner of Moab Film Services and a local, and who's working with the Location Department for this movie that we are calling at this point This uh, movie that we are calling at this point Zeus. And is an upcoming major feature film blockbuster production that is um. On the ground in Moab. Uh, I would say briefly, some of you already know Leanne, I mean, it's Crystal, but Leanne. Is a location manager extraordinary, a member of the Location Managers Guild International. Where she and I actually met for the first time almost a year ago, August, at the Location Manager Guild International Awards. And started sparking up a small conversation about a very small project that might be interested in coming here that has turned into. Not so small a project any longer. It was originally going to be. Uh, a second unit, potentially plate shots where they come and just shoot the background environment and then put. Uh, things in afterwards in post-production and it's turned into a full-fledged first. Team crew uh, project. Um, she's also newly minted into the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences. Um, that's the Oscars. So she's gonna be a judge for all the other movies that are out, which is really cool. So. Uh, I'm really happy to be working with Leanne and Crystal and I have been working together, gosh, ten years now. Or so at least. Um, and it's really great to be able to collaborate with uh, our local crew. Um, for projects like this. Um, I'll just say that this is one of the largest productions Zeus that our region has seen in a while. Uh, they scouted in December when it's kind of cold. Um, and uh. Brian, he had said, was, 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 he had, Brian had the only boat that he allowed to stay afloat during that off-season. Um, and was very helpful and is now working with the production moving forward as well. Their pre-production, uh, the crew lands on the ground pretty much tomorrow.
Yep, tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Uh, again, this is the only US location. Um, that this film project is shooting at in Moab. Uh, it is shot, they just, we're filming in Australia.
Yeah, we'll be filming in Mexico City, London, Mumbai. And yeah, this is the only US location that we're filming at. And it was selected, Moab was selected, um, not only for its beautiful landscapes. It was supposed to be a Grand Canyon scene, um, but they love the town. They love, you know, the look of the town. So we're planning on filming on Main Street, um, also out at Fossil Point. Um, we're gonna be filming on the river. Uh, with Brian as our guide. Um, and we will be filming at a gas station. This is an outdoors gas station that's just north of town. So, uh, you know, besides the, the phenomenal landscapes, uh, Moab offers just. You know, enough accommodation for a big crew like this. Um, you know, an established film crew, film permission. Film professionals who, who live here and know what they're doing. Um, and as well as great restaurants and bars. So I think we're all very thrilled. They just got back from Australia on Saturday. They fly in tomorrow. We have a lot of people on the ground. We're gonna have about a hundred and fifty crew here traveling both from. Uh, all over from, from uh, Salt Lake City, some from LA, some from uh, London and the directors from Australia. Um, but also we have about seventy extras that the, our producer who actually did live in uh, Moab for quite a. Junior or like grade school, junior high, high school. So for quite a long time. Um, he has insisted that we just hire um, local Moab extras. So we've been working really hard to try to just hire locally. Um, we also have about twenty seventeen to twenty local crew. Just from the Moab area. So we're, we're just thrilled to be able to be, you know, allowed to film here. And to showcase your, your really great Main Street and um, Fossil Point and the river. And, and just this, this great land that you guys have.
Thank you. It is really exciting.
Yeah.
Also, just in relation to the impact of that uh, so far, uh. Not talking, this is only speaking about two hotels that I'm aware of the numbers for. We have about two, two thousand sixty rooms on hold at this point, five hundred thirty-four thousand dollars in lodging and production office spend. Like I said, reflecting only uh, two out of five or possibly six hotels involved. Uh, estimated total, total local spend, which we won't know about until. After it goes through the audits of part of being part of the local, the early Utah motion picture incentive program. Uh, the estimated local spend is anywhere from two and a half to three and a half million dollars. Um, filming as Leanne said in Moab City, Grand County and portions of San Juan. Had a great open passing call for Moab locals in the eight four five three two. We had about a hundred and eighty total locals. Who came and submitted, but about seventy will end up being used for that. And like Leanne also said, seventeen local hires and. Crystal and then a fair amount out of uh, Salt Lake City as well. And now we're gonna go into the fun part, which is really why I went to talk to Bill on Friday. Um. But uh, Moab Main Street, Highway one day nine one will be uh. Closed down for a number of hours on July thirtieth. Uh, to traffic. Um, it's going to be closed from five AM until twelve PM noon or so. So one ninety-one uh, from one hundred north to one hundred south. That is a full closure. Uh, Center Street will have a partial closer, closer because of Wells Fargo being on the corner. It needs to have access, but for Main Street to two hundred east. It will be a partial closure. Uh, traffic detours will start north and south of town with um. Traffic being rerouted onto five hundred West Kane Creek Boulevard from both sides and if needed from four hundred east as a secondary option. Um, there will be no parking signs posted the night before, anywhere that it's necessary to get cars to not park there. Any traffic that is, any cars that are needed and any people that are needed in that street scene are going to be hired professionals. The cars as well as the extras in it. Um, UDOT uh, has been completely involved with this and they're putting out a CVB. That's what I'm calling it, a CB bulletin informing truckers in advance that they will be running into a potential traffic. Um, detour up ahead. And all of this has been managed in collaboration with the Zeus Locations Department. Me at the Film Commission, uh, the Moab Police Department, Utah Highway Patrol and Grand County Sheriff. And everyone will be on the ground uh, coordinating that. Planning began over seven months ago. With the city manager, the mayor, uh, and this other city Moab staff. And again, UDOT Law Enforcement and City Streets Department. So all the permits are in place. This isn't go. This is not something that you can say you don't want to do because it's happening. Um, public notifications have gone out uh, this past week and will go out again to all the local papers. Um, and uh, to social, on, on social media, but all the residents and businesses that was being used for filming on Main Street or not. Um, and on Main and Center have been notified like with flyers and will be given further information um, as things move forward to what they might need to do. Um, so that's about the closures because I did, city council mentioned it, uh, the papers wanted to know. So we just wanted to make sure that the community at large is aware of the, of July thirtieth, this street being closed. Um, we don't get the helicopter. I really want it uh, to make it that much more exciting, but there will be drone shots and people running. Um, you know, people on, on the streets um, doing that. So, but what's my timing like? Cause I have a couple more things. I have a minute? Okay. I'm on the edge. Never mind. Okay. There's a lot, it's all just numbers, but I'll just basically, uh, I wanted to just point out. Outside of this, this incredible Zeus project that it's, that's in town and it's very exciting. The Utah Film Trail markers are up. Um, there's one been installed at Dead Horse Point and one at La Salle Junction. Highway forty-six and one ninety-one, one installed at Golding's Lodge. There's one coming soon to Arches National Park, Red Cliffs Lodge, Forest Gunpoint, and it encourages self-guided tourism and film tourism. And they're really cool. And if you haven't got a chance to see those trail markers, please do. Um, and then I just have to briefly mention that some media recognition and global exposure. Markle Thunderbolts came out in May. It had, was a massive box office success. You worked on that. That was filmed um, in Grand County outside of Moab and also a little bit in Green River. The Electric State also came out, didn't do as great, but they spent a lot of money here. Um, I was uh, uh, the Moab via the Film Commission was awarded uh, through the Screen International Global Production Awards. A highly commended location of the year award at the Cannes Film Festival in France in May. Um, so Moab is a highly committed location of the year, which is pretty cool. Um, and uh, just final thoughts, thank you for your support. I'm happy to continue attracting top-tier productions to this area. Um, it drives real spending and local hiring. It builds lasting industry relationships and I love promoting Moab and Grand County on a global stage and I hope that can continue. All in all, this work supports tourism, hospitality, local vendors and creative professionals. We're keeping the cameras rolling and the results speak for themselves. And I look forward to continuing to open lines of communication between us. My door is open, always open and my phone is always on. Thank you. Any questions?
Very good. Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Leanne especially, you know, for bringing your crew and your people here. That's a big deal. And I know that Biga has worked hard to make that happen with different groups, but we're appreciative of you being here. And I guess mostly I'm appreciative on the economic side for the businesses and the employees that you hire while you're here. They all benefit from this and Crystal also for all your hard work. I know that you're behind the scenes, but. It still makes some of it all happen. So we're very appreciative of all of you. Ega was somewhat skeptical about coming here and speaking to us because she didn't have more than three or four minutes worth of material. Her own expectation. So.
Yeah.
We're, we're appreciative of all of you. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. We really appreciate it. And uh, you'll see us out there uh, next Thursday, the thirtieth. So yeah, on Main Street. So.
Yes, don't, 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 don't come and see. I just have to say, wait to see it in the movies.
Yeah.
Uh, because it, it, we just want to keep it, there's another location that they have to move to at noon or prior if they get done. And so the faster they can get the work done. So I know it's a really fun and exciting thing to see Main Street closed, but I'm just talking to the public now. You know, if you can hold off and wait to see it in the movies would be better than showing up unless you have been hired as an extra or as a PA. Or as part of the crew, which we have a, a number of locals who have been.
But if any film commissioners, or I mean, not film commissioners, but county commissioners, if, if you want to come find me on Thursday.
We have, I have an invitation coming out to you this week to the, to the commissioners. Wednesday, Wednesday, the thirtieth. Couple weeks. Yeah, you'll, you'll get your safe, you'll get your safe last week.
Wednesday. All right.
All right, with that, we can move into, we don't have any. Other reports, do we? Agency reports or anything? All right, commission disclosures. Do we have anything that anybody wants to bring forward?
Yeah, just like the disclose, I'm a concessionaire of Cannon Lands at Arches National Park.
All right, thank you. Mike?
That's Angel, concessionaire of Arches National Park.
Okay, thank you as well. All right, we can move into our general commission reports. Jacques, if you would like to start us off online. I'd gladly let you do that and then we get it out of the way.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. And I, I turned my camera on for this. My connection isn't great, so I may have to turn it off. Um, but let's see, I've been traveling since the last meeting. I'm happily returning to Moab. Uh, tomorrow evening. Can't wait to get home and get back to beautiful Grand County. Um, I did attend a number of remote meetings this last couple of weeks. On July seventh, I attended a, uh, audit committee meeting along with Bill and Brian. Uh, we met with the new internal auditor for the first time. Uh, we voted for accounting standards. Um, which I think Bill and Brian can speak to a little bit more than I can. Um, we discussed the readiness of our uh, twenty twenty-four state audit. And a, since that was due, I believe that was due uh, at the end of June. Um, and we discussed a potential special meeting of the audit committee to approve that and send it on to the commission for approval. Uh, and we also set our next audit committee meeting date for August fourth at ten thirty AM. Um, on, on July eighth, I attended a Trail Mix meeting. Um, we had planned to have a, a Trail Mix bylaws discussion at that meeting. But the chair decided to table that to uh, commit all the time of the Trail Mix meeting to discussion of the e-bike. Um, of the. Of, of the um, BLM e-bike decision. Uh, there was a very robust discussion in Trail Mix. And the result of that was a letter that was sent to the commission. I think everybody saw that. Uh, they landed on support for alternative B. But it was kind of a B minus option with, and they wanted to uh. Send a recommendation to not include the pipe dream trail and a mossaback trail in those that uh, were allowed to have e-bike usage. Um, I also wanted to comment on the process by which um. Trail Mix came to that. That was commented on by a citizen today. Um, I just want to point out that this is a volunteer board, uh, and that board works hard. Um, anybody is, it's a, it's a public meeting. Anybody is welcome to come to any Trail Mix meeting and participate, not only. By making a citizen-to-be-heard comment, but also to be involved in the discussion. I think that's one of the unique aspects of groups like Trail Mix. Um, and I think it, it does a, a major service to everybody. Anyone can come there and, and weigh in on discussions and participate. Um, people haven't been limited that way. You can also write in to comment. Um, so I think that, that uh, anybody who wants to be involved in that way absolutely can be and is very welcome at that committee meeting. Um, it's, it's a, it's, it's an open meeting and I would invite anyone to attend. It's the second Tuesday of the month at eleven o'clock at the Grand Center every single month. Um, I also want to remind everyone that Trail Mix is largely responsible for all of the amazing trails that attract visitors from all over the world. Uh, to our playground in Moab and, and that they have done more to ensure the success of the, of the bike business. And bike industry in Moab than, than anyone. Um, so uh, I would say please come to a Trail Mix meeting and participate. Uh, I also on July eleventh, attended the selection committee. For the um, tourism rebrand, uh, based on the RFP that was sent out. Um, an amazing thirty-six uh, submissions were reviewed and discussed. Um, it was limited, it was, it was kind of cut down to the top five that, that people had picked. And the result was that three of them will be invited back for an interview. Um, I didn't get to review all thirty-six. I, I looked at about ten and they were all very impressive. It's, it's amazing what some of these companies can do. I think we're gonna be in good hands and have a really cool rebrand eventually. Um, I would also uh, very much like to congratulate Mick and Ally from the Mott Department. On the work that they did in facilitating that discussion and in uh, going over those proposals. And Brian was also at that meeting. I think Brian um, was definitely more involved than I was. So it'd be, uh, I think, I think he could speak better to that. Uh, process than I can. Um, and that is it for my report today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacques. Trish, if you want to bring us around, we'll just follow or go on.
Yeah, you bet. Um, I'll go really quickly. I also was on vacation. So I just have a couple of uh, meetings to report on and they were both from yesterday. So in the morning I went to the watershed council meeting down in Monticello with Brian. And just a couple of things that we touched upon is just the continued efforts to put together. Um, our southeastern Utah's comments on the state water plan. And we are working and this will be noted with planning commission also on a water element of our general plan, which is a state mandate. It has to be done by the end of the year. So we are uh, running to get that done. And then we had Jay Olson from the Department of Ag come and talk about ag protections. And I kind of want to reiterate that we will be holding a meeting on July. Tw- twenty-ninth at six AM at the Grand Center. Held by Department of Ag around, surrounding ag protections and anybody is welcome to come to that. I also had a planning commission meeting yesterday afternoon. Um, Katie Murphy, who worked endlessly on our landscaping ordinance. Kind of talked to, came to talk about her involvement in that and, and continued commitment to try to work through that landscaping ordinance. Um, and then we're gonna talk about this, the meter overlay, which will be talked about tonight. So I won't get into that. And I already spoke about the water element of the general plan and the ag protection ordinance. That's it.
Very good. Mike?
Pretty easygoing. Uh, the, my Osta meeting was actually canceled. Uh, they're doing a fine job out there. They are the fire. And emergency operations uh, camp set up right now. Uh, Osta is pretty much shut down uh, to the general public as it stands right now, just because of all the emergency services going on. So that's just a public statement there. Uh, I have the. Hsu Board, uh, the Grand County Recreation Special Service District and the Moab, Moab Area Housing Task Force meetings coming up towards the end of the month. But that's about it.
All right, Mary.
Yes, I attended the uh, whole, uh, whole local hall of committee meeting. It's exciting news, uh, right now homeless misses down the block. It breaks out, which is the first time I, we've been able to report on that, isn't it?
Yep.
Even newer, you know, so, and they don't know exactly why. You know, they've been working really hard on, on finding housing and getting people housed and getting people into treatment and such that need it, because there's so many organizations that work with our homeless, the community, and spend lots of time, lots of effort getting them and, and providing services. Oh, and the other thing that we discussed was that, uh, perhaps, perhaps for next year, future, because when we go is is to work with, and I've talked to Karen, I've emailed the period, the library, is to keep changing the library hours to help with, uh, time periods that are homeless and the heat issues in Moab. So that the libraries are open a little longer in the time periods that the heat is so intense. And some, and perhaps more on Saturday and Sunday. So this is something we can look at this fall and, and look at, and, and try to find partners to work with as well. From the city to, uh, the partners that I already work with. The homeless, so it's not just, uh, financial burden off Grand County. But I think it's a really good review. You know, people can, it is very dangerous.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. So let's see here, on the second, I, uh, actually missed the chamber meeting. I was out on the, the River Scout, isn't it, the zoops? Uh, but I got a couple of things here that came in from them. The celebrate Moab website has launched, if you wanted to check that out. There's a winter shoulder season survey that will be shared late July from, uh, folks at the chamber. And then the Film Commission is providing an update at the next business meeting on July twenty-second at five P M at Moab. I was at the Audit Committee on the seventh with both Bill and Jacques. Just a couple of things there as well. You know, one of the things we met with, uh, Julian Metcalf of G P P. He was great. It's really nice to meet up with him. Uh, you know, and, and it was great because he started off with just what the goal of the internal auditor was, which is to mitigate risk before problems arise. And so it was, it was neat talking with him. He's going to be in town, um, in August. Also, we kind of discussed the, uh, the external audit, but I did talk with Gabe, and I think he's going to be able to provide us where we are on the status of that. Is that still correct, Gabe?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so I'll just leave that go right there. Um, that day I also met with Slavens. And, um, you know, they're doing some interviews and they asked me a bunch of questions about the community. So that was kind of a nice little thing to do. Um, and then on the eighth, I visited, uh, the Trail Mix. Um, we discussed e-bikes. I think we're going to talk about that a little bit later. Uh, on the ninth, I met with Utah Division of Outdoor Recreation. Uh, and we met to kind of discuss what was going on with the state, uh, trail crew. Also on the ninth was the Motorized Trail Committee. And, uh, there's a couple of things that happened there. They had a couple of letters of support. One is for Grand County Search and Rescue. That'll be for those two U T Vs. Uh, the other is for the Motorized Trail Ambassadors, uh, O H O H V R grant, and then also Ride With Respect also has an O H V R grant. That's in that package today under the consent agenda. Um, and then they also discussed e-bikes, but we're going to be talking about that a little bit later on. Uh, on the eleventh, I was at the, um, branding discussion that Jacques was also talking about. Yeah, there was thirty-six proposals. I want to thank Mick for making them only thirty pages long. Because, I mean, that was quite a bit to go through and score all of those. There were so many great, uh, proposals, but most of us landed on about the same ones. Um, there's three that will be invited, uh, for interviews right now. Um, that's Moxie, Camp Four, and Vladimir. And if any of you guys want to see, uh, their proposals, just send me an email. And I'll make sure that those get off to everybody so we can, you can all have a good look. The Moab Office of Tourism is going to be getting together, and they're going to be setting the scope of work prior to the interviews. Um, so that everybody will be coming in under the same. On the thirteenth, I went up to LaSalle, um, for their, their town hall that they had. Saturday, there were some extreme conditions, you know, with the fire tornado. They showed that up on the screen. It was, it was something to behold. I've never seen anything like that before. At, at that time, they were, the good thing they were hoping is to keep everything contained, two-mile road. Um, and trying to keep everything off that hanging dog that's back in. They were still at zero percent containment, and just a lot of thanks and kudos to the crews out there working. On the fourteenth, I was with Trish out there at the Watershed Council. It was great. There was some talk about the, uh, from Utah Division of Water Quality, uh, the Lower San, San Juan watershed plan. And, uh, also she was talking about the elements in our general plan, kind of that idea of bridging the gap between planning and water is, um, is what the state's going to assist us on. It's nice. Um, also, uh, we heard at that meeting that Arnie Holquist will be replaced by Daniel Lay. So that was, that was some, one of the other things that popped up. Later on in that day, I went to the Weeds Board, and there was some lively debate over our bylaws. There's going to be two board seats that are coming available January first, so I just want to put that out to the community. They'll have interviews November third. And applicants, all they need to be is Grand County citizens and people who are interested in weeds. It's a really nice board and actually is really interesting. It's been one of the boards that I've, I, I did, I was surprised at how much I've learned in. Enjoyed some of the conversations. Um, a couple of updates from that, um, they did a Purple Loose Strife trip, uh, with the D N R. Uh, and they found some of the purple loose stripe out there on the Moab daily, just across from White's Ranch. Um, they have another river trip scheduled up in Ruth and Brist. Um, also, Go Head seasons here, and they have already inherited twenty-one acres um, so far. So they're out there getting after it. Right now is the time to, to get ahead to Go Heads. Let's see here. Oh, yeah, they also did mention that the Weeds Department does have the use of a go-ahead roller for private residents over the weekend. So that's some expensive equipment that you might be able to borrow to go ahead and clear your property. Um, on the fifteenth, or that's today, um, I went, met with U Dot, and we talked about the, uh, some of the high emphasis crossings. Um, they're also going to be talking about installing some bull bats on Main Street, uh, which might help with some of the pedestrian, uh, visibility out there on Main Street, allowing the pedestrians to basically step out a little further and, um, have a little bit more visibility. Oh, I thought someone said something. Um, and they also talked about, uh, providing a, a study on the Dogwood area, looking for crossings right there. Um, just right there across from the Moab Valley and over to that little area. We're also trying to plan to meet quarterly. Uh, and then later in the day, we met with the Indigent Defense Council. I met Joe Alamania, and then just talked a little bit about the service that he's providing. That's all I got.
All right, well, I had two community renewable resources meetings. Um, they're moving along with the Public Service Commission process for the Utah Renewable Communities Program application. Um, that is just, it's, it's been a big process. Uh, they do have nineteen R F Ps so far for the program, which they were only expecting about ten. So they're really excited about that. They also, we also passed a resolution as to what would happen to the program if the Commission were to terminate, terminate the program, especially with the ever-changing climate of clean energy. It just seems that, um, the discussion is that it's a lot more expensive to do clean energy now than when they started in, I think, that program, the, it was twenty eighteen when they first started this, so. It's been interesting. We'll keep on seeing what's happening. It's going before the the dock is moving along anyways. Um, I had attended Agenda Review with Marion Bill. I also attended via Zoom the U S A C C C monthly, uh, meeting via Zoom. The most exciting thing out of that is that there's the twenty twenty-five events are coming up, so September eighth to the tenth is the UAC Annual Convention in Davis County. And then November twentieth and twenty-first is the USAC Fall Convention, the Little American Salt Lake City. So if any of you guys are interested in going, I think there's some of us want to try to go. Um, I had some housing discussions with Ben at H A S U and Caitlin and Shay Lee for, um, Moab Area Community Land Trust. We're discussing affordable housing, and I was also learning more about the way the county and these entities work together. So very interesting. Um, I had an EMS special board meeting as well as meeting with members of the Canadian Land's Healthcare Special Service District, talking about the need for funding. Um, they're proposing a point five sales tax be put on the ballot this November. Um, Grand County EMS is facing severe funding challenges. Those are driven by rising costs of ambulances, medication, fuel, and staffing, decreased insurance reimbursements and revenue from patient transport, hundreds of thousands of dollars in unexpected ambulance and facility repairs, and depleted fund balance. Um, they have borrowed, they borrowed operating funds, and we also, um, gave them an emergency fund just so they could meet payroll for twenty twenty-five. So they are looking at a financial cliff. And so looking at, um, inner agencies that can be included in that, that funding. I know that will come before the Commission. Um, but there's more conversations going on as far as that goes. I also met with Orion and Jonathan and Mike at the Health Department discussing the impact of the Trail Ambassadors and how they've had such an impact on the removal of the waste and brainstorming on the best way to keep their grant and continue this effort. So I think there'll be more discussions to continue on with that. And I also want to express my thankfulness and gratitude to all the firefighters and emergency personnel um, that have been working hard on the Deer Creek Fire. Um, I think want to solve the pink rain, but not too much.
Thanks, Mel. I'll comment on the fire a little bit too, such here somewhere in my report today. The first thing I want to do is just update the public on where we are as far as rebuilding the county with, um, our employees that we certainly have a shortage in some of our critical positions of late, and there's still a few shortages out there that we're working on, but to date we have hired, uh, Mr. Gleason as our airport director. Uh, Mr. Yates, Sean Yates is the engineer, is back in the zoning administrator's office. We've also, the sheriff hired Kate Finley, and I hope I'm not taking any of his thunder for the emergency managed direct, management director. And then also Melissa Jeffers, who you, some of you, if you were here, got to meet earlier with her presentation, so. We're slowly bringing some of that back here to the county to get some of these critical positions filled. I also had a meeting with Contour Airlines regarding the air service that we have here. Um, we discussed, um, increased flights that will be happening later this fall between Denver and Moab in the hopes of, um, bringing in a little bit more of our tourism base from Denver. And we also discussed some of the challenges that they're facing and, uh, I guess the weather in the Denver area has been fairly hard on them with, uh, late afternoons trying to get out of Denver, so they've been grounded a little bit, but trying to overcome some of those hurdles, and they might end up having to change some of their times, I think, to when they leave Denver. Let's see, we also, I also met with, um, the EMS and the Moab Valley Fire and the Sheriff regarding the attacks that Melody just mentioned, and we had some pretty broad discussions on how that would look moving forward, uh, you know, and getting that on the ballot. I was also part of the Audit Committee meeting that Jacques and Brian mentioned, and Jacques mentioned it a little bit, um, just coming up with some standards for our internal auditor. And evidently, um, to date, we haven't had an internal auditor who was operating to a set of standards. And it was decided that we would work towards the GOGA or work under the GOGA standards. And I can't tell you what B A P A means or stands for, but it's the government entities. And it allows, um, just a little bit more oversight and a little bit higher bar to be met. Also met with Dominion Energy over a franchise agreement, uh, that's moving forward. It's just to keep us and them in basically N M O U with their pipelines through the county. Also met with Slavens, as Brian mentioned, regarding the search for a new zoning administrator, which is one of the key positions that we're still looking to fill. We had an airport board meeting with our new airport director. Well, then a whole lot there. We do have an F A eight grant and an award to a construction company that will be moving forward fairly soon on taxiways. Uh, don't quote me on them. There's three of them that we're going to pave there. I know that Dana gave them to me, and I actually wrote E, G, and J. There we go. Taxiways that will be paving in the near future, and that's about a ninety-day project that's ongoing. It's been awarded to T S J. I was also at the C J C meeting. Um, that was well-attended by the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department. Some of the statistics that came out of that, where the child visits are up fifty-one percent over twenty twenty-four. And that's not a statistic that we want to be proud of. That means that there's problems for those children. C J C services, the kids that are hit the worst in our community by many kinds of different crimes and perpetrated by family or other friends or members. And so the fact that that statistic is up is a bad thing, not a good thing, so. Um, they're, they are excited about their eventual move into the new home. Um, they plan on having a grand opening and a ribbon cutting with not a date set yet, but hopefully in September. They also received eighty-two thousand five hundred dollar grant for mental health support for first responders who are the first ones to help these children and come into whatever scene that it is that causes, you know, the law enforcement to be called. So there's a little bit of help there for the responders to deal with that because some of these crimes against kids, um, quite honestly, would make me cry if I had to get into the specifics about it. They're somewhat horrendous sometimes. And then they also have an upcoming domestic violence training, and I didn't get a date off of that one either. And then I have been involved with the Deer Creek Fire, attending the meetings and the updates out at, well, both at the O S T Center. Ever since the complex incident management team took over, and that team is Great Basin Team Four, and they're out of Nevada. And then as well as the community meeting that was held out in LaSalle at the community center, and then the regular updates. And there'll be another one tomorrow, I believe, at eleven o'clock. Currently, I think, um, as of this morning, we were at twelve thousand nine hundred acres, and I think the number was three hundred and forty-some firefighters and personnel on the ground fighting that fire with a seven percent containment, so. Considering the size of it, um, they are making some headway, but it's, so is it. It's, um, it has not reached Grand County yet. It's basically growing towards Grand, Grand County on the east side of the LaSalle Mountains. And so at some point, if it continues as it is going in the middle, cross the line into Grand County, and there is a pretty amazing team out there that's been fighting that, um, air to ground crews and I know it was a fairly emotional meeting for the community members out there because a lot of them would just like to know where or what happened to their house. A lot of them have no idea yet. And so there was an assessment done yesterday, and the San Juan County Sheriff was going to update those people about their homes, and a lot of them are homes that are own, second homes by Grand County residents. And then there are a lot of them that are families that actually live out there full-time, so it's, um, it's got a lot of people up in the air wondering when and what, what happened, so. That's still ongoing, and then we do also have a fire that started this afternoon, was a lightning strike up in the Book Cliffs. And that's a fairly small one. They had hoped that it would be extinguished or put down by the end of today. And then I also attended the U Dot meeting, um, with Brian earlier, and then I was also part of the meeting with the I D C and the prosecuting attorney there, um, Mr. Alaminia and staff earlier today. And that is the end of my report. We can move on to elected officials, Mr. Stocks, if you want to.
Take us away? Sure, and, and just to correction, Mr. Alaminia is one of our public defenders. That's A okay. Um, one of the trainings that happened last week was put on by the I C C R, which is the Institute for Coordinated, Coordinated Community Response for the Domestic Violence. This is the program, uh, that the tech detective from the Moab Police Department uh, applying for. We were one of the four counties throughout the U S that received this program. In conjunction with their cohort here, they give us quarterly trainings. So they fly somebody out here. They give trainings to law enforcement, prosecution. Uh, it's a wonderful service. They brought down, um, a law enforcement officer investigation specialist involving domestic violence specifically. How you go on scene, take photographs, all of that. They did it for Wednesday and Thursday. It was highly attended by Moab P G. Uh, the Grand County Sheriff's Department, EMS, other, uh, and entities attended as well. Um, it's really, really helpful. They hosted it on Wednesday and Thursday of last week. And we even had folks from Carman County come down to be able to receive the additional training. Additionally, I don't know that anyone's mentioned it yet, but, uh, I believe within the cycle was the Fourth of July. I think everything went, went well, uh, based on everything that I've heard. It was well-attended. I don't know of any incidents, uh, that occurred, um, but I think that's, that was something that was. Um but I think that's, that was something that was done very well and and done in a safe manner. Um attended the CJC Advisory Board as Commissioner Winfield notes, we are seeing an uptick in domestic violence uh issues. Uh this could be for a myriad of reasons, um it's something that happens in this community. Uh it's a weird thing to say that it's a good thing, but generally in the summer months, a lot of the reporting is down. Because a lot of the mandatory reporters like teachers, for example, they usually get to see a child and they can kind of notice things and so then that gets sent up the chain. Um so having good reporting numbers is a good thing, um it's a bad circumstance generally, but having. Involved community members that can see the signs of a child uh kind of being off is a really good thing, so individuals in the community are always encouraged. You know, to see something, to say something, uh oftentimes kids are the ones that don't have the requisite toolkit to kind of fend for themselves and so. Uh really excited when, when we're able to do those interviews, make sure that they're um. Able to have their cases processed, apart from that, um we're here to help, I know there've been uh entities that reach out for questions. Uh you can come chat with my office and reach out to us, we're happy to hear additional questions and uh look forward to any folks that reach out.
Right, Kate?
Thanks, um. So I've uh rolled out a new Board of Equalization Appeal Application Platform that's available online now, um. And just generally preparing with my staff for processing appeal applications, um. Because the Clerk Auditor's Office is kind of um taking more ownership of the BOE Appeal Process as is sort of statutorily required. Um thankful to Assessor Swayze for, you know, collaborating and being open to to adjusting that, I think for the better process and for the better. For the public um engaging in that way. Um and so that, that's sort of all being prepared in response to tax valuation notices. Uh which I've been spending a lot of time making sure are. You know, ju- they, they, they have to be right and we're sending them out a- across the county and there's a lot of information in detail in that. Uh it's quite a long process going back and forth and creating drafts. Uh working in concert with the Recorder's Office, Treasurer's Office, the Assessor's Office, making sure. That all, and and the uh State Tax Commission and making sure that that um that information is uh is correct and. It looks like we're, those are due to go out in the mail Friday, ju- this Friday, July eighteenth. Uh so folks can um expect to receive those valuation notices, um you know, this weekend or early next week. Um I've been fielding pretty consistent grammar requests, some large, some small. Uh last week I attended the Clerks Conference from Wednesday to Friday in Burgum City, uh a lot of very stimulating uh. Conversation with the other clerks and auditors around the state, so it's really well attended, pretty much every. Uh elected from every county um comes to that, that summer conference and. Uh we really get down to brass tacks, I always look forward to it. Um I was involved in the Branding Agency Scoring Committee, I wasn't able to attend the, the discussion, but I was able to per- um. Review all thirty six applications and score them, um and uh. Right now I'm working on a draft resolution as has been referenced regarding the Rural Healthcare Sales Tax, um working on draft resolution. Uh that the, this commission would need to pass for that measure of that increase from one half to one full percent. Uh to be placed on a ballot for this November's general election. So trying to crank that out and get it to legal, so uh we can uh hopefully uh have that considered sooner than later. Um Finance Officer Stephen Vowles will be presenting a fiscal update. Um as well as a twenty twenty six budget action plan at the next commission meeting on August fifth, so can look forward to that, so. And it's really just, um there's, you know, there, there's a lot going on as far as this budget amendment and moving forward and just the. The, the planning and strategizing um that we're working on and preparing for the twenty twenty six uh budget season, so I think uh. I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do it in the, in the. A more thoughtful and comprehensive way than we ever have and just continue to improve year over year, that's always the goal. Um in regards to the external audit and draft financial statements. So as it stands right now, Finance Director Vowles and I are going through the process of a detailed review of the statements and verifying and cross-checking figures. To see um request, requesting grouping tables and mapping tables, um so that we can make sure that we know the representations in the financial statements. We can verify them, um we want to feel really confident and and the details uh presented in those statements and as well as just all the information that's present. Presented by narrative in the, in the statements, um it's not a situation, it's not a. It, it's an effort that I know has urgency, uh it's also an effort that I've, I'm uh not willing to rush through, I'm, I think accuracy and. Sure enough, it's important in this case, as always, um. And I want to make sure that the content is complete to the, to our abilities, I did hear Commissioner Hadler. State that there uh might be a, a special meeting of the Internal Audit Committee on August fourth. Um and I do think that uh Finance Director Vowles and I's review, um it's reasonable. To say that um our review will be complete such that a draft can be um. Shared with that committee in anticipation of their meeting, not the day before, but po- potentially a week before. Um and such that a ru- that committee can complete their review and and potentially um approve and forward to the, to the kind of commission. Um so I, I think we're on track to um, you know, to, to, to have a, you know, a complete. Um is that for me? Am I going too long? Uh with, within a, within a, within a timeframe that, you know, is uh. Reflects that we've been try- that, you know, reflects my office's uh intention to, to really do it the right way, um. And I think that it, it, you know, in my understanding with the State Auditor's Office and what the expectations are with regards to the completion and suspension of those. Uh financial statements, it will be well, uh you know, well within uh the, the confines of what. Um you know, uh. Not resulting in any penalties to Grant County, so just wanted to say that.
Very good, thank you. And Sheriff Wiggins. Oh, here he is, oh, great. And Kate, thank you.
Medical Emergency Manager, Kate Finley.
Glad to have you back.
Sure. Started last night.
Time to start, yeah.
Uh happy to be back at the county and excited to. Start building on the work that Cora did and work for it, even greater.
Very good. Um being tested somewhat right now with the fire and everything else that's going on, so starting with the full workload.
Thanks, go ahead, Sheriff, uh she doesn't like to brag, but she's Emergency Manager with the Air Force currently. See, manager of the year, last year, the Air Force, so the county, I think, is in good hands. So yeah. So I just figured it'd be easier to just talk about you, Seth, uh. So for the month of May. Obviously, we're, we're on our busy season right now on top of the wildfires, so in May, two thousand two hundred and fifty-two calls into our dispatch. Our search and rescue calls were at fifteen. Uh quite a few traffic stops, five hundred and sixty-six traffic stops, our arrests were at forty-three. Um and then when you compare that to the month of June. Um two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven calls from our dispatch center. Twelve search and rescue calls, fifty-four arrests, traffic stops went down a little bit, that's three hundred and eighty-three. Um the next thing that I wanted to talk about was. Uh a new funding revenue for public safety, it's House Bill zero four eight eight. Send it to your grant with emails. Some uh, some important updates, it's an existing law, I think Kate may have talked about it a little bit, I. Won't stand outside. Um it's a real game changer for counties from the third to the sixth class. It imposes a point three percent on sales tax and that revenue would go to public safety. In that, you could, with that generated revenue, you could put it towards facilities, personnel, equipment. It's a small tax with a potential big impact. Uh could fund a public safety building, which we're in desperate need of. Provides a dedicated funding stream, it's, we'd be less reliant on general funds, we're on certain grounds. Other sheriffs in the state are already taking advantage of this. Uh and uh other sheriffs are exploring the option of using it. So what's next? Is this something that the commission wants to pursue? I think that. Uh public transparency and outreach will be crucial. The next steps could include feasible studies, cost projections, timeline planning, whether the county wants to spilling back to. Public safety and create a public safety or want to go out to this county and put another facility and build something, but ideally. You want all of your, you know, your county attorney, your sheriff. Your court system, the jail, all in one building, because right now we're separated, where my law enforcement officers are across the street and the backup for the jail. Is across the streets, but we have an emergency, they'll have to come over and come into the jail, it is, it's better to call one facility. I don't know, Kate has any questions on, on that?
All, all I have just a little bit, I believe that Cruz has been presenting our next meeting on this, correct? And they'll give us a little bit more broader view to the community here as to where that tax will really come from. I've heard different numbers, it'd be great to hear it actually from him, but some people say it's about eighty percent of this tax would be. A tax raised on tourism, the other twenty percent's gonna hit locals and that's in the form of. Everything other than gas and your groceries gets a, a sales tax put on it and this would increase on that, so. The bulk of it will be carried by. The tourism industry that comes here to bring this money in and, and I will say, just like Jameson did, that I, I think it's important that we get this out. And the people get a chance to know about it and weigh in on it, I certainly um do not want to do anything here that the public hasn't weighed in on and been able to. Voice their opinions on another tax that. Although it is a larger size of it on the tourism industry, it's still gonna pa- impact every one of us. And some of the largest impacts to the locals will be on contractors because of. A sales tax, you know, i- is gonna, on a ten thousand dollar load of lumber is gonna increase that load of lumber, which then gets passed into the housing. To everything else down the line, so it will be felt by locals to some degree, but I believe that there's um. Some support out there for this and I think we just want to find out, you know, where the public weighs in on it, at least certainly I do, so. Anybody else on the commission wanna? All manager, weigh in?
Those of you that haven't been on a tour, I, I highly encourage you to tour, to tour the sheriff's facilities. Uh we're in desperate need of a medical center for the jail, apparently we have a closet.
So much.
Uh evidence rooms spread throughout the county. Uh lack of training rooms, interview rooms, like the new emergency manager, I had to create a new physical in, in. The whole library that we're in, I have no space, so. Uh future growth, we're just as busy, even though TRT da- numbers are, are down, people still come to the county and camp out in the desert, we still have to respond to those calls, so. Yeah, I think it would be a, a great source of revenue off the county from public safety.
Yes, sir.
And then, and then one other thing that I think the jail needs um is beds, I mean, we have a lot of folks that come in and are on substances. And are de- detoxing and I think that's another area that it's gonna need additional funding and money for because a lot of people. Unfortunately, put themselves in a circumstance where they're not in the ability to take care of themselves and then they end up. Uh getting law enforcement intervention and they have to pick them up and we have to care for them and we're not equipped to be a mental health facility. Uh but that is something that happens frequently, jail staff does a phenomenal job caring for folks and keeping folks in. Because they can't, uh unfortunately, they're in a circumstance that they're a danger to the community and you're making the sheriff's office or. Not you guys, the community makes the sheriff's office have to care for these folks because we don't have a facility that has beds locally, so that's probably another thing. Um that eventually the, I, I, I think that jail and probably the community has to be real about is. Setting aside some funding for that, because we have a number of frequent flyers that end up there and it puts a lot of stress on. Jail staff, mental health, everything, it's very, very difficult. And then some, just to note, I mean, the county did remodel the jail twenty sixteen, but that didn't get us really any more beds. Um we're busy here, a lot busy here right now than we're in two thousand and sixteen. We do house some state inmates, uh we get paid for those state inmates per day. Don't quote me, but I want to say it's like eighty dollars a day per state inmate, that pays for all the county, the county jail inmates, so it is. They can have state inmates, uh Iron County Sheriff's Office just did this public safety tax, they built a new jail facility. And then also with that new jail facility is they started housing more stated, to also help offset the cost of their. So it's a, it's pushing.
Yeah, and I would hope that, you know, our local papers would pick up on this a little bit and maybe get some. Information out to the public that we're considering this and that there will be a presentation on it at the next commission meeting and then maybe our. New Public Information Officer could do some kind of a press release or something, so we, we have the public involved in this as much as possible. Before we make a decision and. Listen to their concerns for sure.
And then just one other quick note, I, I also don't want to make it sound like we're trying to incarcerate everybody, we're not. Uh the sheriff's done an excellent job to get pre-trial release services, that's been a huge asset, we put people on free trial release. Unfortunately, there's been a number of folks that, they have that additional level of supervision and they choose to uh make poor. Unfortunately, court decisions and they get uh picked back up, so it's not without trying from the sheriff's office to try to find some alternatives as well and that's been. That position was grant funded, I think, for this year, um but that's Curdall Lou and Curdall Grove both doing tracking, which is a critical and necessary uh piece of. Altera- uh you know, alternatives to incarceration.
Yes, Mary.
When we, we modeled the jail uh two thousand sixteen, we had a C I B grant that helped with that as well. Could we do that, go, go back in that direction as well as sales tax or?
Just depends on.
A limit.
It just depends on what the county wants to do, obviously. If we, if we go back to this facility, I think it might be cheaper to remodel this, back to a public safety building, if we go out to the county and build a whole new facility, it's gonna cost a lot more money. And then you'd probably have to dip into the C I B and, and ask for some more revenue to come in. But regardless.
Okay, so it could be a, it would probably have to be a combination.
We were talking a little bit, I mean, even if you guys were to enact this, this public safety tax right now, I mean. And while we're waiting that decision, you still have that revenue that comes in, you could pay off the loan that currently is on the jail. Still owe us money on that, dog, the remodel.
And then just bank that as that money comes in until we made the final decision on the public safety, where they would go, I, there's definitely some value there.
You also got a lot of key players at the table right now, uh I would hate to speak for them, but I would patrol. Down at the basement, I think they want to leave and go to liquor store. They've asked, hey, are we doing a public safety building, would like to stay here and stay in the public safety building. Ideally, like again, you want everybody in the same facility. Uh we're like one of the last few remaining counties that doesn't have a public safety building. So P and P, the courts were asking for a remodel of the courts. And we do it as, that's the direction the guys want to go. So you got a lot of good uh key players at the table that are wanting to do something, so I think that if you explore this. So it'd be great to go down.
I, I'd also think there's a chance for those players to participate in some of the costs of this, um clearly that. Highway Patrol participated in the Raptor State Park funding, uh because they put housing out there and so. There, there's an opportunity to multiple agencies to help with this new public safety building or. Remodel this one, which would then displace staff here and have to be put into a new building. On site or somewhere else, so all things to think about and to get our. Public involved in. I appreciate you bringing it forward and again, I think it's um pretty important that the people want to know more about it, that they attend that presentation. At the next commission meeting.
And then also, just so everybody knows, we're sending resources from Grand County Sheriff's Office and San Juan County. Closing roads down for them, they're utilizing our Starlink, there's no radio service or internet out there, so we're left our Starlink out for San Juan, so they'll have some kind of communication. But had very uh good donations from the community here in regards to food and water. So San Juan's very appreciative of it. It's good to be. If I have any other questions on.
Anybody else?
Alrighty.
I know Kate left, but if there's still a need, you let me know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Boos my thing, so.
Water and gate rates can never have enough of that. So.
Now, I've seen people deliver by the trailer loads out there, so it's from the community.
Most of it is shut down just for the uh something out there, so.
Alright.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, thanks.
Commission administrator.
Mister, I don't have anything to add at this point. Thank you.
What do you? Alright, so. Then. We are too early for six o'clock citizens to be heard or the public hearing, so. We could move into the approval of the consent agenda. That's alright with everyone. I will. Recommend a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for the meetings of June seventeenth and July first, twenty twenty five. Ratification of payment of bills, total bills, two million eight hundred and seventy nine thousand. Two hundred and seventy seven dollars and thirty five cents with a total payroll of five hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Three hundred and sixty seven. Point three seven. Total bills and payroll, three million four hundred and fifty six thousand, six hundred and forty four dollars and seventy two cents. Also, the ratifications, ratification of the Mud Springs contract. Ratification of contractor agreement with T S. J Construction for the Airport Taxi Lane Project. Ratification of local consent for various event locations of the Moab Music Festival. Letter of support for Ride With Respect O H V R Grant Application to Do Maintenance. On motorized single track. Award bid for hydro excavator trailer for county roads. And the I C A Real Creative. Who is Moab Media Production Project? Michael. Uh I move to approve the consent agenda as red. Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner Martinez. All those in favor?
Hi, yeah.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you. And we will move on. Keeping an eye on our time here. The following is an item, an approval of a thank you letter to the C I B for funding the our fire truck. And that is um. Well, the um multiple people worked on this, mostly Quinn and putting the wording together, I believe. Thank you. And that's just a letter um that we will be sending to the Community Impact Board and thanking them for what was. I think on our part considered an emergency, which they consider a special loan. For the purchase of a new fire engine. We've had. A lot of problems with ours out there and I haven't heard an update yet. I don't believe that it's even up and running yet. We're still. I'm relying on the generosity of the Provo Airport for the use of one of their backup fire engines. And so this. This is just a thank you to the C I B board. Um it was a unanimous decision to give Grand County that. Special loan, as they called it. Um I abstained being from Grand County. I sit on that board, but it was um very nice to see that they. Approved that and we could move forward with um getting that on order. It's about a two year lag. The order of fire engine before you receive it. And so with the R F. P process and moving that timeline all along, it's uh just allows us to get in the queue. For a fire engine much quicker than we normally would have been. We would have had to wait on. The possibility of another grant from FAA. So again, really, this is just a thank you to that. That board and the staff there at the C I B. That's all what that is. Um yes, Mary.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter of appreciation to the firm and community if they have to go for the funding and the purchase of a new. Aircraft rescue and fire truck.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner McGann, second by Commissioner McCurdy. Discussion.
Right, second, and uh. I really do appreciate the C I B. Uh there's. Pretty much nowhere we can get. Loans of that caliber for the interest rate that we uh that is available to uh the entities to that thing. It doesn't exist, but C I B took care of us really. So.
Yeah, and for the public, I believe that, well, I know that that interest rate was one percent on that money. And at a future date, when we are funded by the FAA for a new fire engine, we will be able to pay that loan off in full. And. I'm sure the C I B board will be glad to use that money for then another project somewhere around the state. So any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Hi, thank you, Jacques. And so that passes unanimously and we can. Move on to. Number four looks like it's going to be lengthy, or do you think it'll be quick? Jenny Beth?
Yeah, fairly quick.
Alright, let's do it. We will do the consideration of the twenty twenty six quarter. I am packed. Special event intended to apply submissions with Jenna Beth. Thank you. Help us through that.
Alright, uh Jenny Beth Jones, Special Events Coordinator. Uh looks like we do have a fairly busy first quarter of twenty twenty six. Um and there are some notable events on there, which include the half marathon and Easter Jeep Safari. Those are both on the pre-approved list. For January, we have Arches Ultra. Which is a Mad Moose event. Um they also do the marathon, so very, very good company there. Um. That is recurring for eight years. Arches Ultra. Um travels around Arches National Park, et cetera. Um. In February, there's another Mad Moose events for the Red Hot Ultra. Um that one's recurring for nineteen years. Um pretty big event there. In March, we have Run the Rocks. That is also a run. Walk event, but that is by the Trans Rockies. That one is recurring for two years. It's a three day running event for participants. And then we have the Skinny Tire Spring Festival. Uh that one's a cycling event recurring for around twenty four years. And then we have a couple of early submission requests, one being the Grenadier Gathering. Will take place at OESTA uh April thirtieth through May third. And the Raptors on the Rocks. It's for May seventh through the tenth, also motorized at OESTA. And then we have the Red Rock Rally, which I presented to you last quarter. They have requested a date change from June eleventh through the thirteenth to April twenty third through the twenty fifth. Um and I apologize, I didn't give any dates, just the the months. Do you need me to go back and read dates?
Oh, I don't think so. We we cannot read through. Yes, Melody starts.
I have a couple of questions for you. I'm just curious why is the Red Rock Rally um. Wanted to change. I was real excited for it to be a June event because we don't have a lot of June events and going into April when it's super crazy. Busy. It's just hard to. Um so do they give a reason why or?
Um Kent, would you like to answer that?
You want to go up?
Why not? Please. Thank you, Ken.
Bill Jacques has got something to say.
Okay. I'll get to you just a minute, Jacques, after Kent.
Thank you, of course, no problem.
The question that you had is why we want to change the dates. Uh extremely, extremely. And our biggest concern is for participants. Uh even though that we stressed lots of water and things like that, it's just, uh we did have a couple of incidents where we had. Uh issues with the vehicles, but that is the reason.
Alright, Jacques.
Yeah, I actually I was going to ask the same question as Melody. I I approved, I voted to approve for this event the last two. Uh years and I I I I didn't have any issues with the events whatsoever. I found that they were very well run. Um and like her, I I thought the June date was fantastic. There's less people in town. Um in the past, some of the uh U T V events have been loud and have uh elicited complaint from local citizens. This one didn't elicit any of that. I didn't hear a peep from anybody, but there are a lot more people and a lot of events going on in April. Um June also is a time when we need more people in town. We need more tourists. There's a lot of tourists around in April. And having an event that brings people in in April, in a June, I think is uh is a fantastic addition to the special events. Programs here in Grand County. So I'm I was very supportive of the. June date, but I'm uh less excited about the April date, although I do recognize what Ken said about the heat. It certainly gets hot. So there's that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacques, Trish, and then Mike.
Um yeah, I. I I'm a little discouraged to see that you guys are asking for the date change. Um. When you look at, and one thing Jenny Beth, and and I'm not giving you a directive. But one thing we've done in the past is kind of at least had a calendar so we can kind of see all of the events and I'm just throwing that out. It might help us get a visual. But it does look like we have a number and maybe you can help me here. The Grenadier, that's a motorized event, correct?
Correct.
Also in April, we have Jeep Safari, correct? Um and then right after, in theory, if we move that Red Rock right after Raptors on the Rocks is another motorized event. So we just have them lined up. And I, you know, one of the things that we tried to do um when we were reworking special events is being a little more holistic, trying to integrate up. You know, a variety of events. That were kind of, you know, um you know, not just having, you know, one type of event, maybe having a cultural event and. Et cetera and so on, and trying to melt that. And so I I'm not super supportive of the state change and I realize it's really. Really hot. Um you know, maybe we could look at, and I don't know what the end of May is looking like as far as motorized events, but this is like. Right in the mix and I I'm not supportive of an April. I really like what Mel said as far as having that June. It kind of. That was a time where we needed that influx of of visitors. So I I'm I'm going to push back on that that date change bit.
Well, and there is a calendar in your package.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see that. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
My question the calendar does answer was whether or not it was conflicting with something else. So Mike, I'll move on to you then. Thank you.
Yep, uh. I understand that the reason for the date change, it's hot, they had incidents. I mean, I would I would bring safety above all. No question with me, so. Uh all the other events, really, uh there wasn't a peep from. Pretty much any event last year, including uh the Red Rock, uh the Grenadier. I did hear back uh personally from the Grenadier uh team. They love Moab. They want to keep coming back and they want to expand. I've also heard. In future uh events coming up, the C town. Uh will want to uh partake. Uh in Moab and in Grand County, and I expect their, I expect theirs to come in early to you, uh just so you know. Uh but they they love what you're doing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, Melody.
Yeah, I so I just had a couple more comments um after that was just that. After our last quarterly um meeting, like we had, like there's good comments from other event. People and they were upset because we jumped ahead. And so my my concern with moving Red Rock Rally from June to April. Is we're in the, right now, we're in the first quarter. So the majority of people that want to do an event in the first quarter, which is January, February, March, have put in their applications. And we approved the June one and then so the second quarter applications would be coming up. And so that would be um. My the April, May and June, and that would fit that one in there. And if we take an event time that somebody else had kind of already had planned, I mean, there's. I do, I'm just like some feedback I got from community members and other people that were doing it. So I think that I still have that like. You know, we're going to have letters of like, that was our weekend, but we didn't put it in yet because we don't, we are taking application submission. So maybe. I would like to table it and put it on next, next ones, just for that fact. You know, I don't think it's really fair to just move June. Into April and those those other events. You know, when it's as far out as June, it was like it kind of lets everybody know, but when we're like asking people. Another another recommendation that I have is putting those Mad Moose events and on that preauthorized list. I mean, they've been doing these forever. Maybe even that skinny tire twenty four years and then have to wait and come before us and and, you know, just say, same as when Red Rock came before us last time. We wanted to give you more time to plan your event instead of just coming in those quarters. So I've always seen them looking at these big, I'm not. Against the Red Rock Rally or any of the events. I love them all. I think they're all great. Putting them out is great. It just, I know that we're going to have pushback from community members and. And I just want you to understand that. I mean, I'm giving you the the evil eye, but it's just like.
It's not an evil eye. I mean, in June.
No, those are.
The reason we looked at this because there wasn't anything else during that week. And uh we're really concerned about people's safety. And and so this is why we chose this date to uh to try and work it out to see who can possibly give those to you. And quite frankly, you know, people are are wanting to come at a cooler time.
Absolutely. That's the best time of year. That's my one.
Biggest complaints we had uh for the participants was the heat was very extreme. And by the way, the ultra uh they were just fantastic with this, you know, everything accommodating and just everybody got on their backwards cars. But that's one of the reasons we want to change the dates.
I understand.
Okay, and I will um let Trish. Questioner speak here and then I want to go to Mark Pet. He's got his hand up and he's part of this online.
I think I would support your idea, Mel, of delaying their application until until it's their their time. And then that way we can see. We can make sure that there's not other applicants that are overlapping in that weekend. And and then maybe we can also look at May. Cause they, right now, currently kind of the end of May is pretty blank. Thank, sorry, sorry that I didn't look at this calendar. Sorry about that. Um and so if you're down with waiting, I think that would be great so we can get a holistic view of the applicants and and what the calendar looks like. That that I would. I would like that.
Okay, Mark, um you've got your hand up.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, uh this is a safety factor. We had three medical heat related incidents. In one case, we actually had an individual go to the emergency room. Uh that individual had to be put on IVs and uh had to be shocked twice to bring their heart rhythm back in. Uh I understand about pushing to the end of the year. Uh we've had a couple of beautiful dates in June. Uh we also would prefer a date in May. Uh we do have Angie Book on. I think she could speak to the schedule. We have had several meetings with Angie to try and accommodate a May. Change. And there just wasn't a date available. The only date that did not have an event on it was this April date. Uh I don't want to put our June date in jeopardy in any way. However, I do feel for a safety factor, uh our average age of attendee out on the trails is fifty three years old. So um. Understanding it'd be great to have this later in the year. I I think it is a major safety factor to hold it when it can possibly be that hot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And who else? I think there was another hand up here. No. Alright, Brian.
Yes, quick question. On the the last rally that you guys had, how many people did you guys bring into town?
Uh we had four hundred machines.
Four hundred machines is. You'd usually figure.
We had uh numerous vendors. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we have nu- numerous vendors that were here too. Uh again, uh when the rally was being advertised, there were a lot of. Uh folks here in town, businesses that offered discount codes. And as soon as we announced the dates and stuff, some of those hotels, hotels filled up within forty dollars.
I I can answer those specific numbers if that would help.
Sure, ahead, Mark.
Yeah, um we had in the town altogether, we had over four thousand people. Uh when we take into account uh the hotel rooms that were taken for this time, the people that used the codes for the hotel rooms and that were in there. Uh we had four hundred and ten machines, uh an average of three hundred and forty out on the trails per day. And at any given moment, we had upwards of fifteen hundred to two thousand people inside the OESTA itself. Yeah, those are the numbers.
Thank you, Mike. Uh just to reiterate what.
Kent Green said, Mark said, uh, thank you uh to Angie and O S team. Uh, and that goes from many uh special event holders, not just you guys, but I am thankful you guys said that. Uh, and she's on online with us as we speak.
Awesome job.
Yeah.
How do we want to proceed?
This is a hard one, isn't it? Is that the same weekend that the car show is as well? Same weekend as the car show too. Red Rock Rally. Yeah, the last week, well, usually, I mean, the, usually the April Action Car Show is the last weekend in April, and that would be the last weekend in April, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-third, twenty-sixth. So I mean, you're competing for rooms and stuff for that as well. I mean, that, that's another thing to think about and all the sign-offs. And we don't sign off the final. We just put it on there. But I'm just, it's just a big think about, you know, timeframe, so. They would be, but there's nothing at the arena that would be in May.
That's what, that's what Angie was gonna ask Angie.
Go ahead, Angie.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
It's a little busy out here and service is not very well, but I am, as Mark was saying, as far as twenty twenty-six, because of the way Easter falls and the events fall, the April date is really the only date that's available for this event. Um, even when we go into June, there's already other events that have requested those dates, and they'll be coming to you um in the next quarter asking for those dates. So tho- those dates are not currently available. Um, and they, it was extremely hot for the Red Rock Rally. They were having heat concerns for their events, and the events that I have on the calendar for June are, a majority of it is held inside.
Yes, Commissioner Martinez.
Same with May. May is is booked solid every weekend.
Yeah, Angie, do you see that if the June dates were to uh, if if we were to make this move, would those June dates, do you think fill up?
Um, the the June dates are full currently right now with a private event.
Right, but the the June dates right now, the June uh eleventh through the thirteenth, do you think that if those opened up, those would end up filling up?
They're currently full right now.
Got it. Thanks.
All right, I'm gonna go to Mary, and then I'll come to you Jacques online. Back to Trish.
Yes, this is, thank you, Angie. That was very helpful, that information. Uh, my thoughts are that uh if we choose to uh support this, that we start planning ahead next year to to see if we could have it late, like if later in May or something so that we're not pushing so much into April. I understand there is not an option in May. Angie's hands raised again.
I know. I'm sorry. Um, I should have stated the events that are in May are long-term repeat events. So the end of May is the P R C A rodeo. Um, and then you're looking at events that have been happening for a long time. Um, this is something that I've went over extensively with Mark, just trying to figure out where we could possibly move it. And those spring events are all events that have been happening for a long time. Um, there's, there's only really one event. Um, that I would put on the table, and I feel bad even putting it on the table because he's such a great event holder, but he's the only one that doesn't hold the longevity, and that would be Raptors on the Rocks as far as May. If you guys were looking at choosing events, that would be the only event. And that would be the second weekend in May. Both great event holders. Um, and as far as Mark, I, you know, it was my first time working with him. He did a great job. Same with Kent. Very well organized. I had no issues at all with the event. Um, you know, you, every, I know everybody gets scared with U T Vs, but I didn't even have one person spinning a donut on the property, which I expected to have, and I didn't. It was a very well-rounded event. So.
All right, Jacques.
Uh, a couple of things. I was just wondering if since, since other folks haven't had a chance to apply for um, Q, this would fall under Q two, and we haven't had that group. Is this potentially taking um, another uh slot that someone may be applying for in Q two? That'd be one question. And then um, second, yeah, with this, I I did look at the calendar. It does look like this would conflict with car show. Um, that is a lot of competition for hotel rooms. It's already a, a time of the year when you're gonna have full hotel rooms in Moab and lines out the door at the restaurants. It is literally from working my business for years. It's about the busiest weekend of the uh, one of the very busiest weekends of the spring. Um, unfortunately, again, I I do appreciate the um, the good work that this event's done in the past. So I would, I might almost suggest keeping the June date for this year, and then again, working on a a different date and going through that next year if that's possible. Um, but my, I think I'd follow in line with with Melody's recommendation to table this for now and and go ahead and approve the rest of the uh, the rest of the um submissions and then look at Q two more holistically when that comes up.
Thank you, Jacques. Trish?
Um, I was just gonna say, on the application and just maybe just, you know, for your guys, if you'll make them align a little bit more. So you said that you, on the application, it says it's like two hundred and eighty-five um vehicles and and you were saying you had more like four hundred. So if you're seeing like that consistency, maybe just make sure on the application, it just aligns with what you guys are seeing, just so we have a better idea.
Yes, Mike. Well, I'd like to make a move, uh, a motion to approve the consideration of twenty twenty-six quarter one high-impact special events intent to apply submissions as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy to accept as presented, second by Commissioner Martinez. Further discussion, Mike?
To align with safety, they want to run a cooler. We don't have time to put them in a building other than this one. Both answers are provided. But we can look towards next year. I'd like to continue talks about looking at May next year. Uh, but again, some of those other events that it would uh take precedence over in in May. So I really understand the timing.
Yes, Trish.
I'm not gonna vote for this just because I do think it should be tabled to allow the second quarter to just all come in in a whole package. And so um, I do support your event, but I would just like you to wait until the next quarter.
Just a question. When is the second, um, when is the second uh order proposal coming?
October.
It would be into October.
Second commission meeting in October.
And then I guess this next question would be for Mark and for Kent. What would the, what would that look like for your event if you did not know until October, if you were able to lose your uh, your dates?
Did I answer that, Ken?
Yeah, that's what Mark answered that one.
Yeah, it's still possible to to market and to get everything set and organized if we were to wait until October?
It, it isn't. Um, and that's the reason we came in earlier. Um, due to the nature of the industry, they set their budgets prior to October. Uh, most of the vendors that we had come in at the show last year had a special breakout in their budgets to accommodate it, uh, because they heard about it so late, which was the reason why we came in early uh, to try and get that original approval. I I understand you have your schedule um, and and what you have. Uh, obviously, we wouldn't give up our June date if the April date was not accommodated. Uh, but waiting till October, um, you know, we, we have to begin registration on this. It's gonna be in April by December. So that's pretty late in the year.
Yes, Mel.
Well, I also feel like, you know, based upon that, you have to go and get all the approvals from law enforcement, EMS, and when they're looking at car show weekend, you know, if they're looking at their availability, and that's the idea behind this. You know, depends on the commission, but then it still has to go in and get all of the checkmarks through and and ultimately, we're not wanting to have, you know, five events in the same weekend. It's not, it's good, it's not good for our community. It's not good for our restaurant. It's not good for our EMS or sheriffs or police. Um, and so it's just really, my number one thing was just the fact, the unfairness of 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 moving you from June, which was already kind of out there, but then it kind of saved your spot to April where those other people are gonna be putting in. I was just looking at last year's calendar. Um, you know, so Thelma and Louise was that same weekend, which, you know, they already have some things. They did it on the right process. They could have put that Thelma and Louise one in for April right now, and we'd be seeing that. And then um, we have the Mossa Trail Race, the um Cruz Moab was the same time, and they ended up changing their timeframe. And so I mean, there's a lot of events going on right there. So I just look at our resources that we have and um, just, just kind of the fairness of just saying, yes, we're gonna put you in there when other people haven't had the opportunity to select that April date. I understand the the safety concern, but they're all gonna have that same safety concern. You know, that's things, all these events are. And so we just don't have enough April and May weather, but we have fall.
Commissioner Hadler.
Thanks. Good, good points, all that. I actually had friends who uh tried to get a hotel room during the um, car show last year and and didn't end up getting one and not coming just because the uh, the hotels are so expensive at that time, but you're gonna have all those events that Mel just referenced, competing for for hotel rooms and a piece of the pie in town. Um, I'd, I'd like to introduce a substitute motion to approve everything uh on, all of the submissions except for the Red Rock Rally and um, and put off the Red Rock Rally until the next, uh, until the actual Q two time period or have them stay at their uh originally scheduled June time slot and then and then re- take a look at this earlier uh, for the twenty twenty-seven Red Rock Rally. So that's my motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hadler, second by Commissioner Hadeen. Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Martinez.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I mean, I I also like that event to be in June as well. Um, you know, just because we are looking for, you know, business in June, and that was nice. Um, and I do know that this year's June was exceptionally hot. You know, I mean, I've had Junes where, I mean, like this June right here, it was, it was warm. Um, but I've also had Junes, you know, where I'm out in the maze in the middle of June, and it's also, you know, pretty pleasant to be out hiking. So I have seen that happen both ways. And, you know, I've also seen it in May and April, been hot and cold. So, you know, the weather in the spring can be can be kind of off. Um, the thing that I, that I'm worried about is just, you know, in this time right now, where we're, we're sitting here, we're crunching our financial numbers. We're looking at things, turning away four thousand people, right? I don't know if that's something that I really want to go ahead and risk. Right? That's a, that's a big number of guests, and I know it's at a time when we're already busy, but it's still four thousand people that are coming to this town, spending money, and really helping provide all the services that we need. And that's where I'm just a little bit hesitant um, on on turning them away. Right now, we don't, this is the only spot that they can move. Uh, it seems like staff did go ahead and try to find a spot that might have fit into another place, but there all that, that entire period is already booked through. So I think that if this is something that we want to do, um, I'd probably still stick with the original motion, but I I really understand what Mel's saying. You know, that that o- option fairness right there of kind of hopping in above somebody else that kind of comes in. I mean, that makes sense to me as well. So I'm a little bit torn on this, but but I would say that, so as I've been sitting here going through this budget right now and all the cuts that we have to make, that's kind of where, that's where I'm sitting at right now is, here's an event with four thousand people. I don't want to be, I don't want to see them go down the street.
Mary, please.
All right, I, I would like to say that I don't think we're turning it away. We're not turning it away. We're just saying that right now, for fairness, that it's better to wait and give everybody the equal opportunity to to submit. And that, you know, cause, you know, you're right. We want that, we want that. But to have those people at the weekend that is already so overcrowded and you can't get rooms, are we really, are they really going to be able to? Or will they end up be spending in Green River, or will we push more people to Green River to have it on the same time as the car show?
Um, county attorney. So not, not to confuse the matter further, one or three minutes passed, assistance be heard, but what you have before you is a three-part motion with a variable in it with some undefined terms. Which means that it's approving all except for that application, either postponing it or allowing him to keep the original date, and then requiring you guys to move up your next quarter with review dates when unknown date. That's the three things that were requested in that motion. Just noting that, you guys can make the motions you'd like. That one's gonna be tough. I don't know if you guys are spot, maybe deposit this conversation, or if you guys want to dredge on word.
Hey, Stephen, I'm happy to, I'm happy to amend my motion to make it simpler. I I'd, I'd amend my motion. Th- thank you, thank you. I'll amend my motion to approve all except for the uh relocation of the time period for Red Rock Rally. Um, and I assume, so that's my motion. And then further, I'd assume that that means that uh their previous time slot stood because I would definitely be supportive of the eight, of the um June time period. And I would be supportive of that because um, I, like, like Mary said, I think, I mean, we could actually be turning away more people uh, if we move it, because people who are coming to things like Thelma and Louise or the um, or the car show might not actually be able to get hotel rooms if we have four thousand extra people in town. There's only so many rooms you can go around, and that's one of the very busiest times of the year. Um, whereas otherwise, uh, gentlemen, um, Kent, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, but I think you'd still have this in the middle of June. And um, I assume if you had four thousand people come last year, that you'd have similar numbers this year. Um, and to Brian's point, I I've been out guiding in this area in June many times myself, and it's, it's very unpredictable. And you can have, you can have low ninety-degree days, or you can have a hundred and five-degree days, you can have eighty-eight-degree days. Um, so I would, I would very much hope that you might get one of those better weather periods. And I do remember that heat wave last year. That was, that was tough. So anyway, I've made my motion and and that's all I'll say. Thank you.
And Trish, do you seconding his amended motion?
Still.
Amended substitute motion. All right, and um, I'll go to Mike and Melody, and then I say, let's wrap this up and vote on the substitute.
Agreed, but I just want everyone to remember when someone gets T-stroke and passes away, we can't hold it against them now.
Melody.
Well, and I'm just gonna make things really a lot harder, because if we're gonna do that, I don't think we should recommend the Raptors on the Rocks or the Grand Deer, because they're both asking for that second quarter as well. That's not fair to put his on hold and then approve those others. So I mean, I think we just support, approve, if we're gonna approve them, we approve. Um, so I'm gonna make a substitute motion that we approve quarter one, the quarter one calendar um, events.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner McCandless through the second, second quarter.
Quarter one.
Quarter one.
Quarter one.
Seconded by Commissioner Hadeen. Mike?
Worked on special events for years. It's because they cannot promote their event
substitute.
in the right amount of time to actually promote their event well.
That is right.
Okay, events policy needs to change, but.
Jacques, I see you have your hand up and Mark as well, but I think let's postpone this discussion. Um, we've got a large crowd here waiting for citizens to be heard, and we've um further complicated it. You guys will just hold for a little bit. Jenna Beth, I'm sorry to keep you here longer, and Kent as well, and Marth, but let's um open the six o'clock, citizens to be heard, and then we will open the public hearing on the I forget what it's being called, the men or property, I believe, after the citizens to be heard. So we will start with our
Two online.
Okay, we will start with our citizens to be heard, and we have two online. Let's start online, please.
Sam Hodges.
Sam, would you like to speak up?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you fine. Thank you, Sam. Introduce yourself and then um, let us have it.
Great. Yeah, my name is Sam Hodges. I'm a resident of Moab, and I've lived here for about nine years. Um, I just wanted to add a comment to voice my support for the Trail Ambassador program. I feel like there's a lot of towns in Utah that are always saying we don't want to become like Moab, and it's kind of like a classic thing, but the Trail Ambassador program really helps protect the landscape and helps keep people safe from my point of view. And from living here, I've noticed a pretty noticeable difference of less human waste on public land. On our trails close to town, like Corona Arch and Grand Staff Canyon, where they're out often, and in Mill Creek, really helping people stay safe on our land that really is closest to town that a lot of us locals really care about. So to keep Moab continuing to be clean in an open inviting space, I'd really like to voice support. to keep Moab continuing to be clean and an open inviting space, I'd really like to voice support for the Trail Ambassador Program.
And that's it. Thank you, Sam.
Audrey online as well.
Audrey Pefferman, please. Audrey, are you hearing us? All right, we will wait on Audrey. I'll go to the commission chambers. Would there be anybody that would like to come up and speak, citizen to be heard? Sam, please come up, introduce yourself.
Hello. My name's Sam Newman. I also named Sam, and I've also lived here for about nine years. Um, I am a pretty frequent trail user here, and also a trail user in many other places. And when I go to a new area, I notice that I take a good amount of time to orient to the subtleties of a particular place, how to get around, what's going on in the environment, how do I navigate our landscape here? You know, probably we all live here at least in part, because we have a landscape that's unique. Um, unique in the US, unique in the world. And so it makes a lot of sense to me that most people visiting here for the first time don't really know a lot about what we got going on here, how to be responsible, um, and also how to stay safe. I use the trails close to town, and I encounter the Trail Ambassadors pretty frequently. Um, if I was a visitor for the first time, I would be super excited. I'd be thrilled to have somebody to ask all the dumb questions that I would have about an area that I wasn't all that familiar with, and, you know, they're located right at the front of the trailhead, a very convenient location. Trail use, as you know, we've talked about a lot of times, is a huge driver of our economy. And I think the Trail Ambassador Program is deserving of county funding in order to continue to represent our local ethic and character to the visitors that we hope to continue to attract. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else in the commission chambers?
Hi, I'm Zoe Houston. Um, I've also lived here for about nine years. Uh, and I'm also here to express support for the county continuing to fund the Trail Ambassador Program. Uh, selfishly, I've really enjoyed it as a frequent trail user. I'm also want to speak on behalf of my parents, who are not citizens, but who have been visitors here many times, and have had a great experience with the Trail Ambassadors. As their kid, I felt a lot better sending them out when I have to go to work, and knowing they're gonna run into someone who's going to make sure they have water, and is going to tell them where they can and can't walk, and who's gonna give them options as far as what's a, a safe outing for them. Uh, I imagine other people who are parents or who have parents who visited Moab have probably felt good as well, knowing that there's someone looking out for them and, and helping them orient in desert, which is kind of a scary unfamiliar place. Um, I'd like to see Grand County continue to fund the program. I think it's a good one. I think it makes the Moab visiting experience pretty special. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, everyone. My name's Christina Young. I've lived in Moab for the last fourteen years, and I'm also here to talk about the Trail Ambassador Program. So as everybody here knows, visitor behavior really affects the residents of this county, causing soil erosion and dust when visitors walk off trail, uh, leaving human waste inappropriately and taking resources from search and rescue. And the Trail Ambassador Program really corrects these behaviors in service to the residents of our county. And so uh, they're really providing the messaging and, and information that is directly and indirectly affecting residents, and they are really representing the voices of local residents. They are creating the messaging that the county, the, you know, being county employees, they are creating the messaging that visitors are hearing, and we're really representing the voices of people in the county. And so ensuring that that messaging comes from a body that represents the residents is a really important thing. And so maintaining that messaging, not outsourcing it to a nonprofit or to some other type of entity that isn't representative of the residents of the county is actually a really important thing, and something that I really encourage the commission to consider when thinking about the importance of the Trail Ambassador Program. So thank you for thinking about it and for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Olivia Holmes. Uh, I've also been in Moab for about six years. Um, and I just wanted to voice my support for the Trail Ambassador Program and for the county to continue to fund it. Um, I think we can all agree, hopefully without saying, that our economy and quality of life is dependent on the land around us, and not only is the Trail Ambassador Program an internationally recognized program, but I think it's also an essential program in mitigating user impact and preserving um, what we have around us for tourists, locals, and businesses to stay connected and.
Thank you. Anyone else? How about back vote? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Jenna Gurnear. Um, I don't like talking in public, so it's super boring for me. Um, I'm also here to talk about the Trail Ambassador Program. And we've heard a lot about it today, uh, overwhelmingly supported by your citizens. So if you are truly here to speak for your citizens, I think is an overwhelming support. And I think you should vote to keep supporting what your citizens.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Preece Spahn. I'm here in support for the Trail Ambassadors. Responsible recreation education efforts at trailheads like the Trail Ambassadors is not the reason visitation has shifted in Moab. What we are seeing is broader recreational trends. The US Travel Association declared as of May twenty twenty five, travel has began to stabilize post-COVID travel wave. This isn't new. After nine eleven, everyone bought recreation, travel trailers, and traveled domestically. COVID brought a similar wave. We live in a boom and bust town, and it will always see impacts by whatever is going on domestically or globally, whether it's disease or war. Please consider the implications of cutting the Trail Ambassador Program. They are community members who are in the right place at the right time. They offer guidance, water, and other resources to visitors, to people who have been dangerously misled by Google Maps on a hike. What a great investment into our community, so that other resources can be allocated to emergencies like a car crash, heart attack, or another family in need. National news loves to share a tragedy, but it's exhausting as a local to keep reading things that could have gone differently and that could have had not impacted as many lives, including all of the people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? How about back to Audrey online? Would you like to speak?
Mr. Don.
No, she's still there. She was having some audio issues. She.
She has audio issues.
Yes, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Joy Danley, and I actually am a member of, of GCAT, and I'm speaking as a private citizen today, so this doesn't affect the county or um, represent like the department in any way. I just wanted to speak to the importance and the connection of education and knowing about our landscape and how wonderful this is, and how it really improves the visitor experience. Um, when I first came to Moab in twenty thirteen, I had no idea about the desert, and I know that the more I learn about it, the more I realize how special this ecosystem is and how unique it is. And um, I'm really excited to teach people about this, and I see the spark in our visitors and in our volunteers and the people that I teach about bio crust and how to stay safe and about like the junipers and the different wildlife that we have. Like, these people come to our trailheads, and they don't even know the magic that they get to experience when they come to Moab. And sometimes they do, but we're here to help bridge that educational gap. And like I've seen it firsthand, and my parents and my friends, and, and when I bridge that educational gap, it allows people to care for the community. I really really truly believe that education equals care, because the more that we know about it, the more that we can properly care for it. And I think, um, yeah, I just wanted to support uh, the program that I work for and that, the amazing people that I work with. And um, I truly believe it's a wonderful, wonderful part of our county, and I'm really, really grateful to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Audrey sent her comment via chat. I'll email it to everyone.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Audrey. I hope you get that figured out. We um,
Should we read it? Because.
Oh, you had somebody have it, so.
Yeah, we should read it. Some of us should read it.
Quinn, that's you.
I don't believe this.
Self-driving, not my inbox.
All right, from Audrey, I hope you can still accept this as a comment. I would also like to voice my support for the Trail Ambassador's Program. We've been in Moab for about ten years, and have seen a huge improvement in the condition of our front country trails with the implementation of the program. The amount of dog poop and human waste has dropped dramatically, as well as the incidences of graffiti at some of my favorite places. We're going to continue to advertise for people to come and recreate here. It's incumbent upon us to take care of these resources, and the program is a well-recognized way to do so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Audrey. Anyone else? Commission chambers, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Beth Roberts. I've been a resident of Moab for fifteen years. And I just want to make the point that the Trail Ambassador Program does promote recreation, even if it also mitigates. People will come back to Moab because they had a good experience. They will tell their friends about Moab because they had a good experience. It does promote Moab.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Absolutely.
Tonight. Um, so yeah, although I'm on the city council, I'm uh, speaking as a resident of Grand County, um, and as a private citizen tonight. Um, although I do support the Trail Ambassador Program, I will be speaking to another issue tonight.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, my name is Luke Bojowski. Sorry, thank you. Um, so first of all, I'd like to thank the commission for the opportunity to comment on the draft letter to Secretary Perdom, which attributes recent declines in trade, our TRT revenue to the timed entry system at Arches National Park. I understand the concerns behind this effort, as I share many of them. TRT revenue has declined, and we're all looking for answers. But the evidence we have simply does not support the claim that timed entry is the primary driver for that decline. Visitation at Arches is stable and actually trending up. According to the National Park Service, Arches hosted seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-four recreation visits through June of twenty twenty-five, one point four percent increase over the same period last year. Early data also shows that Horse Point and Canyonlands are performing steadily. When combined, the three-part complex is trending one to two percent ahead of twenty twenty-four. The combined visitation numbers of those three parks have also showed small and similar increases from twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, and twenty-three to twenty-four. So overall, in opposition to conventional wisdom, park visitation is actually up. People are coming, so we need to ask, if visitation is rising, why is TRT revenue falling? Um, TRT revenue is down, but the causes are likely complex. Uh, Grand County's TRT distributions for the first half of twenty twenty-five are down about nine percent in nominal dollars, and eleven percent when adjusted for inflation when compared to twenty twenty-four. It's a real concern. But instead of assuming a single cause, we should be exploring a range of potential contributing factors, including shorter average stays, lower hotel rates, or price discounting, potentially due to increased competition, increased use of RVs or dispersed camping, reduced international visitation, particularly from Canada, which is down by a third in twenty twenty-five, day trip from nearby regions, heat waves, fuel prices, and broader macroeconomic pressures. These are all trends we've seen before, and they're all measurable. The problem is that uh, the planned economic study as presented by the community does not design to examine any of them. Narrow, narrow, uh, narrow loop, narrowly scoped study risks strong and complete or misleading conclusions. The county's draft letter and plan study frame the timed entry system as a primary driver of economic softening without formally considering other influences. By limiting the scope to a single factor, we risk misdiagnosing the problem, overlooking actionable insights, and missing an opportunity to design better local policy. I don't argue that timed entry might have played some sort of role, particularly in its first year. But to understand what's really happening and how to respond, we need a study that looks holistically at our economy, not just through the lens of one park policy. Meanwhile, it's important to note that timed entry has improved the visitor experience prior to its implementation. Before the system was implemented, Arches had to close its gates a hundred and eighteen times in twenty twenty-one due to overcrowding. Timed entry ended those closures, reduced congestion, and helped distribute use more evenly across the day. Since its launch, the parks is, or the park service has also shown a clear willingness to adapt. They shortened reservation hours, increasing day ticket availability, suspect that the system entirely during the twenty twenty-five shoulder season. These aren't signs of a rigid efficiency. They're signs of a willing partner that is trying to be aware of the impact policies have taken meaningful action to mitigate those impacts. It's also important to note, the letter proposes solutions that may not be realistic. The draft letter includes requests for a new northern entrance, an expanded shuttle system, additional parking and trailhead development. All of these require major planning, environmental review, capital funding, and long-term staffing. But the National Park Service is currently facing billion-dollar budget reduction based on a letter from the president in May, and has already experienced a twenty-four percent reduction in permanent staff since January. In that context, large-scale asks like these are unlikely to move forward soon. And training the park service as the obstacle may damage the very partnerships we need to be cultivating. Closing, TRT revenue is down, but visitation is not, and that disconnect tells us we need to dig deeper. Limiting our economic analysis to a single factor, a factor that the data show is likely map that we've caused does not serve the best interests of this community. If the goal is to understand what's happening to our economy and how to respond effectively, then the study we commissioned.
Getting close, yes, I've literally lost three minutes, so out of respect, why?
Last sentence. So then the study we commissioned must be broad, data-driven, and capable of testing multiple hypotheses, not just reinforcing one. Thanks.
Thank you, Luke.
Anybody else in the chambers?
Commissioner, can I take three more minutes of your time? I won't need it all.
And we discussed that at the beginning, that we do not want to speak twice. I'm sorry.
That's fine. That's why I asked. Thank.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else online?
Bill, just a question. When we talked about uh, only limited at once, was it? My memory was that we were going to limit them to talk about the same issue.
That's right, Mary. It would have been.
It'd have been the same issue. Uh, you know, we, if they were to talk about one at one and one at the other.
So my point has been there.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Open the public hearing. Yes, so I'll call an end to the citizens to be heard then, and we will um, start the public hearing to get that started before we resume our scheduling of those events. Let me get to that again. All right, so we will open the public hearing for the Metter Drive Town Homes Rezone for Overnight Accommodations Overlay OAO Residential. Proceed.
And I just want to introduce myself. I'm Andrew Jackson. I am an employer for Rox Engineering. I'm a contract planner to you right now. I've had thirty-five years plus experience in planning and zoning at top for twenty years at B Y U. Experience has been in the Los Angeles, so it's. Yeah, so I've spent all my time working for these four. From there, I can go into the brief introduction of the project. So it's a meter drive um, project. It's at thirty-nine eighty-one South Highway one ninety-one. That's uh, parcel number zero-two dash zero-zero-two-seven, death, zero-zero-two-seven. Uh, the quest is for twenty-four units on two-point-one acres of uh, land in the endless the Mollif family residential twenty zone. And it also has the overnight accommodations overlay. This item is just for the application of the overlay. In a lot of places, when you have an overlay, you, you have the underlying zoning, and then you have the overlay, and it just automatically comes down onto the property. But how the Grand County code is written, it um, have that overlay, you actually have to do a zone change, even though it's zoned for the overlay, you still have to do that by your code. So that's why we're talking today. Um, this went to the planning commission yesterday, and I want to speak for the planning commission, but um, they decided that it was a good location, and they moved to approve it and recommend that forward to you. However, there were two things that are um, exceptions. One is on the eighty percent of the power generated on-site. The other is the assured housing um, requirement. The other is the assured housing requirements and the applicant is requesting a waiver of those two. But in this, tonight's discussion isn't on the waiver. Tonight's discussion is just on the overlay application.
Um, just a couple of things. This was noticed appropriately. There was, there were signs placed on the property. It has been noticed on the public notice website as well as on county website. Planning commission voted unanimously with one abstaining. I don't know if that was mentioned. This, as far as the overlay, it was, it's adjacent to current Rim Village, so the overlay is already applied there. Or it's in the overlay zone where it could be applicable.
Um, yeah, so as Chris said, that was noticed, the property was identified, posted. But she'd gone out there before and it was the notes were taken off. She reposted and some of those have been removed as well. Just so if somebody drove by and said it wasn't posted, it was.
And we do have photos of those posted. They were torn down, it looks like, and then they were placed back up and torn down again.
Double check, this is out of Rim Village?
Adjacent to Rim Village.
Do we have a site map?
Yep, it should be in your packet. Yeah, so.
Fun to do for staff to say.
Yeah, one thing that I do want to say, the development agreement is at this point a draft because of the exception portion. So the development agreement would need to be revised depending on whether an exception is.
Also requirement of a capture of gray water to be used as a gray water. Project and the applicant, which is customary, would like to know that they've got this overlay before they put a lot of time into detailed site plans, but they just looked at it, but the engineer isn't saying approval, but everything is consistent right now, but once it happens and they get the finer details, someone will get information, but that's why this is just the overlay district, but also, but you can look at that just for.
Sure.
And this is just a public hearing, so we're great, so we're not making any decisions.
We have like a ten days of what it is.
So do we want to open it up? All right, then we'll open up to the public if anybody wants to come forward and speak on this. While the public hearing was open.
I think the applicant would like to say a few words before.
Thank you.
My name is Curtis Wells. I'm the applicant, the developer on the parcel. Yeah, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I thought the, the staff review and the work has been really good. The planning commission discussion was really great. Commissioner Hadeen has acknowledged since the one that's been knocking my signs down, so. But you know, as mentioned, this is one of the parcels that was set, set within the overnight accommodations overlay when those boundaries were set following the lodging moratorium. And having served on the commission during that time and been really involved in that, you know, the idea was to set aside areas that were already predominantly short-term rental uh, use and this parcel, you know, everyone to date, including staff, myself, planning commission concurs that it's perfectly appropriate used for overnight accommodations. You know, we are, we, the site plan that we have proposed, although this is just a zoning amendment, um, is half of the allowable density. The allowable density is twenty units per acre. We're about ten units per acre. Um, and so I feel like it's a, you know, it's a reasonable proposal. Um, and yeah, I think it's a great development. I encourage you to look at the, at the document, the narrative document that I included. Um, at today's property tax and transit room tax rates, this will add over three hundred thousand a year in ongoing revenue for the county, twenty-four units total on the just over two acres. Um, it's a great project, so I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak to this while the meeting is open? Anybody online, possibly, Quinn?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so we will hold this public meeting open until Wednesday.
But for written comments until Wednesday the twenty-third at five P M.
Till Wednesday the twenty-third at five P M and then this will be commented for the commission at the next mission meeting.
Can I make a quick? Um, I would recommend maybe a trail camera up by your.
You probably got it. I was like.
Did you have something?
I was, I was just gonna say, I've got one of my staff members here tonight and the next item, item eleven, I didn't know if it was a short conversation, but that was pretty corrupt to be able to leave. There's no one here that's on the public, the public comment on this item.
Anybody have a problem with moving to eleven and holding up our other one? Okay, we're gonna move then to item number eleven. Um, thank you. Guys, it'll be on the next agenda. Uh, public comment will be allowed until Wednesday, as you said, the twenty-third at five P M, so. Thanks for presenting all of that. Number eleven, billboard relocation.
This is on for the commissioners, it's on for a discussion item. And I should have stated, is that, sorry, this doesn't require a vote for discussion. Thank you.
Um, so this originally was placed as a discussion item when the applicant came to planning and zoning to discuss moving a billboard. They have turned in a complete application and then with, we wanted to kind of gauge the planning committee or the county commission's appetite on what they want us to do. Originally, we didn't see a path to deny, then it came forward that we could potentially deny it and I'm going to let Andrew speak to that. Right now.
Yeah, and so we look through the application and the applicable section of the county code that refers to state legislative code that deals with counties, specifically the permisigns. And so there's a section on that, but then because this is along Highway one ninety-one, which is a federal highway, that also falls under the or I think it's seventy.
Seventy-two, seven.
Yeah, so two seven five, which is the of outdoor advertising for the highways. So falls under a different section. I've had discussions with scenic Utah to byway folks. They have a lot of information regarding the billboards and they say that based off of the zoning, which the county zoning does not permit uh, billboards. So what the state does on Utah is that then that refers to the county and the underlying zoning for the county, so that's not, there's no approvals for billboards. And so this relocation, you know, it's a relocation. It's a new application as far as the county is concerned. The only, um, I guess caveat would be if Utah was widening one ninety-one and they had to take the billboard out, there's specific protections for that. But we don't see those on lost lease. And the applicant has submitted some additional information. Um, I think it was just Monday, right?
It was just yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, so we're still reviewing some of that, but we kind of wanted to let you know what's going on and get kind of your feeling.
And that contained in the packet. It's the first exhibit the letter had done, assuming July.
Yeah, it is. And that's just. So.
So I just, they put in the application, I sent them a letter of denial for the application for the billboard based off of the zoning and split industry. The requirements.
Sure, and then Mr. Jackson identified himself, if you guys would too, just for the public, I mean, before, if you're gonna speak.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. So my name's Braden Saunders. I am the director of real estate for YESCO.
I'm Amy Clayton. I'm the Utah rep for the billboard properties in the state.
Thank you. And so I guess some clarification on the packet that was submitted. In our, in our discussion with the planning department, we this was Thursday or Fri- I think it was Thursday, Friday, anyway, end of last week. We had wanted to provide some examples in, in the applicability of the state law in this instance for relocations. And as was stated, generally, billboards are regulated in the state of Utah along state highways.
Wow.
Along state highways and interstates pursuant to a specific section in Utah called code. Commonly known as the Outdoor Advertising Act. Um, but there are two separate portions of code, one of which is in the title for counties. The other is in the title for municipalities that deal with, among a few other things, relocation in general. And the examples we provided, so, so I guess it's important to note both those municipal and county languages are identical in their provisions. So we wanted to provide some examples of, recent examples of instances where we've used that code. And it basically, for lack of a better way of explaining it, in instances with supersede the local ordinance to allow for that relocation. If the, the items are met pursuant to those two codes, so the packet that you have is the demonstration of a few instances of that. Along with one instance in St. George where we were gonna use it and, and in discussion with the city, found a different location, they'd prefer it to go. Luckily, it worked out perfect in that scenario where it was just better for everybody to put it where they preferred it to go. It still wasn't consistent with their code, but was something that allowed for a, a, a path forward, so we're happy to expound on any of that. I, I'm not sure, because it was sent to you last night. Uh, if, I'm not sure if anybody's had a chance to review it or.
I'm not big guitar action and it was just a.
Sure. Um, I, I'd like to just weigh in and then I'll go to you, Mike, but I've driven it several times looking at the locations and the billboard is currently right next to the containers that have the Volkswagens on top of them that are semi-memorial to the two young ladies that were killed here a few years back. And so it's somewhat blocked when you're driving south by the vehicles and so I could see the potential that somebody could want those removed, just as the county did. We wanted a container removed that was in front of our sign up here at the end of four hundred east and so moving it to the next location, which is down by Maddenborough, it, there's nothing there. Um, it's in front of the flooring company there, so just in my opinion, having driven it twice to make sure I understood where it was, I don't have a problem with it and I just wanted to weigh that in there and kind of explain, you know, some of what I had seen in the process. And so, Mike, please go ahead.
No, I really think that was answered because you guys were talking here and I wasn't there. We're moving.
We're moving a billboard in the county to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was, I would like to know anything about billboard code.
My profession requires me to be a billboard nerd and sometimes I just go for it.
You're okay, you're okay.
Yeah, we have a grandpa structure.
Yep. I drive by it all the time, it's covered by the trees.
Just keep that structure, move it to a new location.
Thanks.
One of the main reasons I wanted to bring it to you guys is so that the public, when they saw a new billboard being built, didn't freak out at the planning zoning department saying, what are you guys doing? I wanted it to be a little more public. And then when, when some things sort of came to light, we thought that there might be a reason that we would deny. I just wanted it all to happen here instead of in the hobble hole of planning office. So you guys understand why it's here as a discussion item and it was, it's not just me trying to waste your time.
Thanks. I just didn't quite understand, sorry.
I mean, we can call for a thumbs up if we want.
Oh, no. There's no, I mean, if there's any discussion, if there's any discussion that's negative, then you guys say it now. If not.
I, I'm getting a gate checking it.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Have a nice time. Didn't mean to sound dumb. Back in time to some other item now.
So folks, we will move back to consideration of two thousand twenty-six quarter one high impact special event to apply submission and I'm hoping that the county attorney can explain where we were with the motion and actually has amended some.
So, so technically you guys had an amended motion on the floor. Whenever you guys have an amended motion on the need to vote on the amended motion before you can do a substitute motion. So we're rewinding a little bit. You guys are now on your amended motion that cleaned up the original three-point issue with one variable within it, back to approving with, we're approving everything with original date of uh, RRR. That application. Red Rock Rally. So that's where you're at. You can't do a substitute motion until you figure out whether you want to amend the previous substitute motion. Then if you guys want to do a substitute motion to your substitute motion, you can do that exactly.
Excuse me.
Substitute the amendment to Jacques's original motion.
That's a table to vote on all of them, but to table Red Rock Rally.
Correct.
Until our next quarter.
Correct. So that's the pending amendment. You have to vote whether to amend your Jacques's original motion.
We have to vote whether to amend Jacques's.
Correct. That's where you're at. You're in the middle of the amendment process.
And that amendment then would be again.
Jacques, no, Jacques.
Sorry, Stephen, that, that amendment was just to, to simplify my original motion to, um, to make it say that I, I approve everything on the, um, all, all the submissions except for the Red Rock Rally, which would remain at its original date in June.
Was, then Melody had the other one.
Yeah, that'd been the third one, because the original one was Brian's. He made a substitute.
So that's the amendment motion. Now you have to vote whether or not to amend that motion. And then once you determine if you amend it, then you can vote on the amended substitute.
And I heard the amended, amended.
Jacques, can you, can you restate your? No.
Mine's not on.
No, not on Jacques, it's Jacques. Jacques, can you restate your amendment to your, to your motion?
Yeah, the amendment, the, the original, ah, the original motion, as Stephen pointed out, was a little bit unwieldy and came in three parts. So all I'm doing is amending my original motion to simplify it, to approve all of the special event submissions before us, except for the date change of the Red Rock Rally.
So that's an amendment. Do we have a second on that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so we got a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Now you guys discuss this one and vote on the amendment first, whether to amend the motion or not.
Okay, any discussion?
I would like to hear. She doesn't have to state it as a motion, but I'd like to hear what he said before it broke.
Okay, so yeah, not as a motion, but just I felt like if we allow the other two that are asking for, um, I know, I, so I know we did this last order when we voted these, we allowed a couple of them to be. And this was one of them to be come outside of the zones. Have you guys done that before? Because I'm calling back to last year. I don't know if you did or not. Anyways, and so as, as we were thinking about Jacques's motion to table one that was asking for early submission, I thought, well, that's not really fair to not do the others. So I was, I was just stating that I thought it would be fair to keep with, with, with them, just all of the ones that are for quarter one. You know, it's, and it's really hard still because I think back to Brian's thoughts about, you know, income, our revenue, you know, those things. But also, how do we, we have to look at our, our submissions and say, how are we deciding who gets to have an early submission and who doesn't, you know, and that's where I really am, am stuck. It's not that I don't want to, I want to prove them all, absolutely, but I'm just stuck on this like fair, because I, I know, for example, that two of them that we're approving right now for quarter one, they were already like in the you know, set in there that we could have voted on last quarter and, but we didn't, they didn't bring them forward. So I don't, you know, there's, there's a flaw in the system and I don't want to take it out on the applicants really, so. There you go, there's my thoughts.
Mike.
Uh, you, you said the best of the tail end there, a flaw in the system, so we'll fix the system again.
I'm gonna go to Mr. Penn, he's got his hand up online.
Thank you, I don't want to uh, continue the conversation as much as possible, uh, two items. I did talk to Mr. Ben Frederigal about how many rooms were available on that last weekend in April. There had been concerns expressed to me about that being the car show weekend. According to Mr. Frederigal, there were over four thousand rooms still available in the town on last car show weekend. So I, I know there was a mention before of someone not getting a room. I, I don't know how those two jive, but there were rooms available on the car show weekend. Also, we, our attendees rent VRBOs in greater numbers than hotel rooms. And so I don't even have the VRBO numbers to be able to tell you, I only know what the hotel rooms sold us. So we're well above the four thousand, but I don't have those numbers and so I did not give those to you. However, uh, most of the folks that came rented VRBOs around the Osta as well. Um, and then I was also told, uh, Jenny Beth, uh, when I originally spoke to her about this uh, issue. She, she assured us we could ask for a new date, but our June date would remain approved. And so obviously, if, if we can't get an approval for an earlier date, we'll stick with our June date and we'll have to just take the weather into account. And if, if we are looking at another hot spell, we, we may not have the event in its entirety on this next time around. I, I don't personally feel after what we went through last time, I could put someone out on that trail uh, in the heat that was there. And I know there are other events that are enclosed vehicles and I don't want to start a enclosed vehicle versus side-by-side discussion. Um, I just felt like that it was pertinent data to the conversation, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, so are we ready to vote on the motion? You're voting on whether to amend it or not, or voting whether to amend it?
You're voting on the amended motion.
No, no.
amended or not.
Wow.
And so what was the original motion that we would be amending?
The original motion was Jacques's three-part motion that had us approving all except for rally on the rocks. And then the caveat was either postponing the current application or permitting it staying at a June date without any variable as to what decides that or not. And then finally moving up your next review date, that's your original motion, whether you're amending or not. And the issue with that is it's three-part and vague and ambiguous.
So call for vote those in favor of ammen- allowing the motion to be amended.
Aye.
And so those against amending the motion. So that passes with two against Commissioner McCurdy, Commissioner Martinez. So then that now takes us back to the original motion.
That's now been amended and you can vote on that as the, the original motion, you can vote on that.
We can vote on that or we can then substitute as Commissioner McCambus. And so once again, then we would be voting on read the three.
No, no, you've amended it now. Okay, so it's now been amended to approve, uh, have Jacques just stated a moment ago, which is approving, um, approving all of them with the exception of Red Rock Rally.
Date change.
Yeah, yeah, just the date, just the date change, not the actual event.
All right, are we ready to vote on that or is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Just heard the event promoter. Right? Just heard it. Probably not gonna do the event, those people won't be back. Two times they haven't caused, but, but there's been no comment against it.
Can, uh, can I make a comment, Bill?
Sure, please, Jacques, I didn't see your hand there.
Oh, yeah, that's all right. Um, I would say, I mean, the, it sounds like the first year there, there wasn't a heat issue if they continued to uh, ask for the event to be in June. After that, again, it can be a bit of a crapshoot with the weather. I, I didn't hear him say he probably wouldn't hold the event if the, if it was hot. I just heard him say he might modify it a little bit, um, which is reasonable. And also I just wanted to correct something, I didn't say that uh, my friend couldn't find the hotel room. They did find a room, but it was so expensive because there was three events in town that week that they decided not to come. So I think that, I think, I think that's a reasonable conclusion that a lot of people might draw at that time. Anyway, um, that's all.
Okay. All right, so we are gonna call for a vote on the amended motion.
Amended substitute motion.
Amended substitute motion to approve everything except the Red Rock Rally, leaving them with their, with their request to change the date and leaving it at their original date is what we're voting for.
Correct.
Okay, those in favor as stated, I'm sure Mary, I'm sorry.
I just have a quick question. But then if they want to re, to apply for that, that date in October, they still can, right?
You're saying if they pulled their applicant, if they pulled their June application and then applied for quarter three, then they'd have to do it by the quarter three deadline cutoff. And I don't know what that is by heart.
It's October, it's Monday in October.
Okay.
All right, those in favor of the amended substitute motion, leaving Red Rock Rally with their June date and approving everything else as stated. Those in favor.
Aye.
And those opposed. And so that passes four to three with three opposed, Commissioner McCurdy, Commissioner Mc- Martinez and Commissioner Winfield, myself. So that passes then gentlemen with your original date of June thirtieth?
June eleventh.
June eleventh, my apologies.
Or in summer.
Yeah. I, I don't know if there are options to go back and look at dates and still get in by the other deadline to see if there's some way to make that change. But as it stands right now, you do have at least your June, June date to hold that event.
Can you clarify something for me?
Sure.
If they want to come back in October with another amendment request, is that something they can do?
I, I don't see why not. Um, I would rely on our attorney to say yes or no, but.
Are they, I mean, we can, we can have that discussion offline, but essentially it's gonna be, are they moving it up? Are they moving it back? Are they decreasing the numbers? There's a lot of variables with it and it's probably best to just have a conversation offline.
Okay.
Um, Ken, if you want to say anything, come up here where the cameras.
I just have a question, is um, since we've, we've done this uh, to try and get our dates changed, is our date still available or is there another event during that day?
What, different June?
Hmm, in June.
Your June is.
June is good to go.
Yeah.
That hasn't been changed.
Uh, my name's Angie.
Angie.
I'm, so like this whole event permitting process is getting kind of messy. I'm sorry that I have to say that because um, the calendar, like Jenny Beth doesn't have access to the Osta calendar. And now that this has been voted out of, out of sequence, um, the events that are coming up for June haven't had their ITA looked at. And they have those dates on hold. So I have like tenanted dates on hold on my calendar and those dates have been spoken for. So I have those on hold for somebody else currently because Red Rock Rally was looking at dates in April. So you, you're gonna be seeing a ITA coming forward for those dates for the next quarter. So it's getting, it's getting messy, so I don't know how I'm gonna be able to keep my calendar clear here and keep those events straight when I need to be able to flip the arena and mitigate that. And I'm the only one that knows what needs to happen for that process.
Well, I, I still think the vote stands and this again, I think the county attorney is correct that there needs to be some discussion offline and try and come to a conclusion here on how to move forward with the event and the scheduling. And as Commissioner McCurdy stated and others, I do see room for some improvement in our process here. Sounds like we need some fixes, so a, at this point that we are where we are.
So at this point, he doesn't have a date because we approved it, but then it wasn't approved through the arena?
He doesn't have reservation at the arena, so.
We can talk about this, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let's.
But, but let's move this offline and see what we need to do to fix it, whether it means coming back at the next commission meeting. But let, let's work this out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I've given you the desk.
Okay, we are on to number five, which is OHVR grant application for OHV Trail Coordinator. And this is Maddie, please.
Hello, um, I'm Maddie Logwitz, I'm the Director of Grand County Active Transportation Trails. Um, and I'm gonna talk about the OHVR grant application. I do want to say that uh, we caught a error in the budget spreadsheet today, so Tom Admin didn't help us change that out. But if you downloaded the packet earlier, there might be different numbers, so I just wanted to address that. Um, the error was in the salary benefits, which is one of the larger line items unfortunately, so it does impact things. Um, so some background on this, we're actually reapplying to this grant program, which is the OHVR grant, the um, OHVR Recreation Grant Program. We applied in two thousand twenty-three and during that application process, we were awarded a quarter million dollars. Um, and what that went towards was a full-time trail ambassador position for two years, um, a part-time trail ambassador position for uh, two years. And then also some large equipment expenses, so two UTVs and two enclosed trailers, as well as some other kind of associated equipment. Um, and those trail ambassador positions were specifically OHV ambassadors, so specifically working um, in motorized areas. So this application is, um, the way the timeline works is we have to apply now to look ahead to fiscal year twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. And so we're, we're um, looking at a similar uh, application. Uh, but we did adapt it a little bit based on working with the Motorized Trail Committee to kind of respond to some of the things they brought up over the last two years. So one is looking at that full-time position um, and expanding the scope. So, so previously, the um, primary goal was education and that included for that full-time staff, a lot of field time. So we want to adjust that to allow that position to have more responsibilities for coordinating projects. Um, because we've heard that there's a need for like more routine maintenance and more coordination between all these different nonprofits and agencies to help with larger maintenance projects on motorized trails. We also are um, requesting three part-time positions instead of one. And again, this came from a request to the Motorized Trail Committee to kind of give a recommendation on what they thought a good number would be for part-time staff to keep it at one or increase it. And then um, the plan for this project would be to continue to use those UTVs, uh, both for the educational purposes and then also specifically the Can-Am Defender that we has, has, has a bed. Um, and we kind of bought it specifically knowing that in the future, there might be some trail work component and so it's a suitable vehicle for that. Um, looking at the fiscal impact, so for this grant program, some expenses are not allowable. Uh, benefits, most notably, are, are not a permitted uh, request from the program. And then a few minor things like shipping expenses. And so if you look at this um, budget spreadsheet, these are what we put down as the cash match. So primarily um, the benefits line item and then a few smaller shipping expenses. Um, and then we also put in an in-kind match, so this is, uh, doesn't really impact the county financially, but it uh, helps show our like community-wide buy-in. And so for in-kind match, some of those are donations, um, donated materials from the BLM, they've offered a commitment to it. And then also volunteers. And with this um, OHV coordinator position, we're also hoping that we can work on really building up the volunteer base on the motorized side so that we can get more volunteer hours and then show a bigger match and that could allow us to apply to other grants in the future as well. So that's the overview, do you guys have any questions?
Please.
I move to approve the letter of support and OHVR application for funding to support ongoing educational programming and maintenance on the motorized trail system.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Martinez, second by Commissioner Hadeed. Comment? Mike?
I'm not exactly sure, what's the cost that can be to?
So the, oh. Um, the cost would be, uh, there's a budget spreadsheet in there, so if you want all of the details.
Uh, total.
Total is in-kind cash match, it's gonna be fifty-five thousand dollars over two years, so half of that per year. And then the in-kind match, which includes kind of all the other stuff that isn't, isn't cash, right? Like volunteer hours, which have, I think the value, it's around thirty-four dollars per hour, um, per volunteer hour. That is about thirty-six thousand dollars and then the partner match is twenty-nine thousand dollars.
And so could you clarify where the problem or the mistake was in this, in this document? So we are the public who's trying to follow along with this.
Yeah, so if anyone's looking um, online, it's all corrected now, but if you had downloaded it earlier, the difference is gonna be at the very top, the first um, section, number one, where it's full-time OHV trail coordinator, salary and benefits. So um, you'll see it has intended vendor, Grand County, quantity two for two years. Price per item would be the annual salary and the annual um, benefits. And those are two different rows because one, we can ask the grant to pay for and one, we can't. And then if you look over to the right, it, it has it broken out, so that's where it's requested OHVR funds, applicant cash, applicant in-kind, partner cash and in-kind. So previously that amount was half and it, and it was just a formula error, there weren't. The formula we got from HR, which helps us calculate the benefits, it just didn't have the correct number of hours in it for the year. So it was showing like six months times two instead of twelve months times two essentially.
So the number fifty thousand six hundred dollars is the number that you're talking was previously showing half?
Correct.
Okay, then the fifty thousand six hundred dollars is correct.
Correct, and then um, the total applicant cash match includes that fifty thousand, which is the largest portion of, of the cash match. And then if you scroll down, there's just a few other scattered items there, like shipping, which is not included. Um, a sticker for the uh, OHV waste kit, um, and just a few like smaller line items. And that comes up with that total of the fifty-five thousand.
All right, any further discussion? Those in favor of supporting this OHVR grant letter of application? All right, that passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Maddie, and we will move on to , oh yeah, number six. SEU HD MOU for Healthy Trails Coordinator.
I'm gonna turn over the floor to these guys, but I'll just be in the audience in case there's any questions.
Thanks, man.
Thanks for enduring that.
Oh, boy.
My world.
We'll uh, we'll make it short, short but important, uh. Yeah, well, thank you for allowing us to present this MOU and uh, for partnering with us for a third year on our Human Waste Initiative. Uh, I'm Jonathan Dutrow, I'm a environmental scientist with the Southeast Gulf Health Department. This is what a man who needs no.
introduced.
Uh, Ryan Rogers, he's our environmental director. And uh, Brady Bradford, he's our executive direct, director. And he uh, made the trip from Bryce uh, today to show us support for this program. Um, so thank you for giving us a few minutes here, uh, quick to talk about one of our favorite subjects, a human group. Uh, some of you may not be aware of the extent of our involvement in the Trail Ambassador Program under this MOU, uh, the Healthy Trails Coordinator. Under this M O U, uh, the Healthy Trails Coordinator, where I award, uh, works at our directive. Uh, to forward the goals of our Human Waste Initiative, um, which is simply to mitigate and mitigate the impacts of. Improperly disposed of human waste on public lands in Grand County. Uh, we're proud of the work Mariah's done, as well as the entire Trail Ambassador team to advance public health. Safety and responsible recreation on our public lands. Uh, the impact they have had cannot really be understated. They've enhanced the user experience on our trails, dispersed camping sites. And I think everyone in this room uh, probably agrees that their preventative search and rescue program program has saved a life or two by. Preventing dehydration, uh, heat exhaustion, heat stroke, et cetera, et cetera. For a little historical context, I think I have some slides. You might have them. Uh. There's a uh.
Quinn, do you have the slides?
Yeah, that's, there's a, there's an article from the Desert News from nineteen eighty-nine. I think it says, Wellab dislikes the smell of success. And uh, so yeah, uh, this is not a new problem. Um. There's a a history of human waste problems and and solutions uh, here in Grand County. Uh, that particular article, uh, was talking about a local committee that was formed to tackle human waste along River Road. Um, and that really laid the groundwork for much of the developed campgrounds that are there today. Our situation today is not so different. That uh, scope and scale is is much larger. Uh, but community-based solutions still exist. So what exactly is the problem? There are some good pictures in that slide. If you guys get a chance to look at it, um. As you're well aware, uh, many of our most popular dispersed camping areas and hiking trails. Uh, we're seeing exploding rates of visitation and along with it, concerning densities of untreated and exposed human waste. In places there was a real potential for exposure to human pathogens and a risk of infectious diseases. Situation was, oh, there it is. Sorry, there's the. Yeah, we can move on to the next, next, next slide. There's some goodies. Yeah, the situation was quickly becoming a critical uh, public health concern. And we found everything from used toilet paper, surface feces, shallow cat holes, all the way to D I Y houses. Buckets full of excrement and R Vs dumping their black and gray water tanks uh, directly on the ground. Uh, local vets have treated dogs for suspected marijuana toxicity from eating human waste. Um, and our waste haulers from Solid Waste District are receiving so much human waste. Um, that some of them even sprayed when the truck was compacting. Uh, this was an unacceptable risk to our essential workforce, service workforce. Uh, the scale of situation was enormous and while we were able to avoid closing areas. Um, and trails by working with the land managers. Um, on targeted cleanups and installing temporary toilets, this was not a sustainable solution. So in order to change behavior, uh, we knew we needed to educate. Uh, we were aware of that signage and social media campaigns and. Traditional media, uh, were great tools for education, but the real challenge, uh, we felt was getting the message um. To the end user um, in real time. And so for that, we really need boots on the ground. Um, this made a partnership with the county and the Trail Ambassador Program a efficient and logical solution. Um, together we created the Healthy Trails Coordinator Position. Today, the results of this partnership have really been outstanding. Uh, Mariah has grown the Human Waste Initiative Coalition to. Thirteen partnering organizations and agencies. Uh, a group we now formally refer to as the Poop Group. Uh, she coordinates quarterly meetings. Along with Solid Waste District, we were quickly and efficiently established the Wag Bag Bin Pilot Program, which is now a a funded and permanent program. We created a deep uh, detailed instructions for disposal of of the weak wag bags. On every, those to be put on every wag bag, those sold or given away in the county. And um, since then, incidents of human waste contaminated trash has near gone to nearly zero and no waste taller. It's been sprayed with human waste once since then. Eighteen thousand wag bags have been sold locally or handed out on trails. And uh. I think we have a. Yeah, that's all right. Uh, over twenty-five tons of, I think, I think the slice is twenty-two, but that's been updated since we put that in the packets. Twenty-five tons of wag bag waste uh, have been collected by the Solid Waste District and safely transferred to Klondike Wayneville. Fifty thousand pounds of poop um, that we've, we've maintained, been able to keep off our land. Two hundred poop with plant posters. Uh, have been distributed to businesses and facilities on our public lands. Visitors have even requested these as sneakers. Two hundred and ninety thousand uh, social media accounts have been reached with educational material uh, specific to human waste. And the Trail Ambassadors have had over a hundred and seventy-five thousand in-person educational interac- interaction uh, interactions at trailheads. And our high-use recreation areas uh. Which is a staggering number when you stop to wrap your head around it. Um, you know, observe a significant improvement in some of our hardest hit areas. And the number of complaints we receive now have been reduced significantly. So going forward, we really hope to solidify the gains we have made and not slide backwards. However, if the conditions deteriorate, the health department remains prepared to post warnings detailing its exposure to human waste and extreme situations. Uh, possibly close areas, uh, to all use until that hazard has been removed. Uh, we are concerned to hear the Trail Ambassador Program may be facing substantial cuts. We understand that times hard decisions have to be made. Um, budgets have to be balanced. We get this better, better than most. But we want you to know that you have a willing partner. The health department will be excited to work with you guys in the next budgeting session, uh, to find resources. When perspective and uh, work to ensure that the Trail Ambassador Program can continue well into the future. So. Again, thank you for your continued partnership and we look forward to working together to advance our common interests. You guys have any questions?
Mike, uh, thanks for the meeting with both me and Mel.
Oh, yes, I was gonna say that earlier. That was great. Um, uh, yeah, that's good information.
It was good information. Thank you, yes. That's a lot of human waste.
It's it's crazy, isn't it?
How? Are you understand easier than most? It it's all where money comes from. It's not, it's not all the same allowable money. Is the B L M helping us out on this?
Well, these are great questions. Uh, and I think they would probably love to. I can't speak for them, right?
And I don't mean to.
That, so we, we previously had a um, cost share agreement with the B L M for thirty thousand dollars a year. Uh, in addition to the in-kind that they offer us, so um. You know, generally speaking about like the partnership. Typically, they don't have um. A lot of, or they have limited cash, uh, but they often have materials and then they also provide the N I P A. So that's a big contribution that they're making, which is, I think it's sixty thousand dollars approximately per per N I P A. And they do like three or four of those per year for us for different trail projects. Uh, so. So not specific to the the Waste Initiative, um, exactly, but looking at the bigger picture, that's in the past how that partnership has gone.
Okay.
And then um, in recent years or or recently, um, that thirty thousand dollars for cost share agreements has been a challenge. Because they lost a lot of staff at the state level who managed those agreements. And it's basically uh, an empty position. So those are big process currently. So we had paperwork in to renew that agreement for five years and it just cannot be confirmed at this point. So there has been passed donations of various kinds, cash and in-kind. Um, currently, there's, there's not.
Okay.
There's not cash, I should say.
Not to eliminate our voice in this, but uh. If if health department's going to close a trail down, because there's too much human waste on it, you think. E L M, I mean, we combine with our voice, we would, we would want to help. Put forth that argument to B L M, be like, they're going to close your trails down. We need some help with this.
I think.
Like, we, we could be part of that argument.
I, yeah, that's, sorry, I, I think that's, that's great. I think these are great conversations to have and we can have these conversations. Uh, and we'd love. Love to sit down with all of you and have these conversations. I think the core goal here is that like. We are all kind of stay committed to this program because it has a real impact, uh, undeniable impact. Here, so I think there's, yeah, go ahead. Oh, no, okay. Yeah, I, I think there, there could be a lot of. Um, partnering agencies that we haven't explored, you know, just up until this point, the county has been able to. Foot the spill, so to speak, and we've been happy to partner with them. We understand that money's not there anymore and uh, I think. We're looking for a chance to like, help you guys find that, that funding.
Yeah, and let us be a partner that helps find grants and stuff like that. We're good at that sort of stuff and kind of answer your question further. When Willows, we were close to closing Willows Springs like twenty seventeen. But first, we're going to talk to Sid, who came up with the plan.
Commissioner Martinez.
No, I'm good.
Mike. I, I move to approve the twenty twenty-five memorandum of understanding between Grand County. And the Southeast Utah Health Department, which will provide thirty-eight thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars to Grand County for fifty percent. Of the Healthy Trails Coordinator Position.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by, actually, I believe Commissioner McCandless was the first one in line. And so then I will open it up to further discussion. Trish.
Um, I appreciate what you're doing. Um, I was on a group of climbers. I don't know, there were six or eight of us. We started Friends of Indian Creek and I had to, had to look it up. It was like, how, how long ago was that? It was two thousand and eight and we did it because of. Human and dog, but mostly human species. It's like we have to deal. You know, there's a point when that visitation becomes, I mean, people have been in Indian Creek on the weekends. It was like, there were five hundred climbers. It was no longer, you know, smattering of climbers here and there. It was literally getting to the point where you're at the crag, you turn over any rock. To go to the bathroom and somebody had already gone to the ba- I mean, it was, it was really bad. At first, we started with wag bags and then it moved. We were able to put in a couple of facilities and I know they've expanded that since I've left. So I understand how desperate this need is. And I appreciate your guys' work.
Commissioner Havler.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I, I wanted to make a similar comment. I definitely appreciate the work that's being done. Having lived and guided here in the backcountry for the last twenty-five years, including camping out as a dirtbag when I first got to here. Got to Moab and and um, seeing, seeing all the human waste out there. I think uh, you all have helped. Uh, Grand County make some very significant strides. Um, and the, and the other point I wanted to bring out, Trish alluded to it, just briefly, was dog waste. I mean, I, every trail I go on these days, there's. People bag it, but they don't take it out, or or maybe a lot of them take it out, but they leave enough that it's, it's a, it's a massive problem. So just, just wanted to highlight that and and thank you all for all the, all the help you've done on this.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mike.
I need you in the conversation after this. We'll be talking to you guys.
Yeah, and so after the county attorney and I just spoke here for a brief moment, but we would also want to make sure that this is transferable in the future. If this ends up moving the Trail Ambassadors to a different organization, would that grant be transfer, transferable to follow them? And.
Yeah, that, that's a. That's up to our, our grants through the Department of Environmental Quality, uh, it's a G P S grant, uh, that, that decision would be up to them, but they have been flexible. Yeah.
And for clarification, this M O U is just to finish out this year, the grant. And because that county was doing so good, instead of us being the middleman. We opted to have the, uh, to work with the county just for the county to apply for those funds.
This is just for the re- the rest is just for.
We have a little bit to, to go into next year.
Yeah, and the hundred and seventeen thousand or something of the county was awarded by N P S.
It's gonna, yeah, we, um, so I, I can't remember exactly when we applied, six or eight months ago. Um, so we applied to the same grant program, um, and were awarded that. That contract won't be ready to sign until the fall. But that contract is a confusingly an N P S grant. It's not National Park Service. It's non-point source uh, pollution grant. And so that would be fiscal year twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. So that's kind of approved, pending, contracted and approval. Yeah, perfect.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing that on call for a vote to approve for this M O U. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. And so that has us moving, I think we found number seven. It is a resolution to amend the twenty twenty-five budget with um. Gabriel Loitek starting off here. And I, I want to just say something in case that people are leaving before this goes totally out. Gabe, actually, um, it was mentioned earlier by one of the citizens. That this budget is amended. And that there isn't a deficit that we're facing. And I, I basically wanted to clarify those. Comments that we are still looking to find a place to come up with one point nine million and change. To move into. This budget in order to amend it as. We're working towards here. So the, this budget is still short, almost two million dollars, and that's part of what this discussion is going to be about. So Gabe, I'll let you start that off.
Thank you. I do agree with that. Um, so. There was a presentation uh, for the opening of the public hearing at the. July first meeting. And in the agenda summary for this item, for this approval item, uh, there's a. I, I went to length to sort of uh, provide a narrative of the main key points um, of this amendment. In a way that would be easily digestible. Um, to anyone uh, some information about this amendment. Uh, since the presentation of the amendment on the first, there are some. There are, there have been some adjustments to what was presented at that time. Just want to give a, a brief overview of those adjustments. Uh, not major, um. But I, I'll, they're, they're in this, in this, uh, on the first page of this document, uh. That's titled Proposed Amendment Supporting Documents. Uh, there's a little bit of a dark shade on some of these cells here of this tentative budget amendment summary. Um, and that darker shade represents items that have been adjusted since the meeting on the first and the presentation of the amendment at that time. Um, so right now, the, the contribution from the general fund surplus in order to balance the general fund. And so let's share that, that's what you're referring to there. Um, it is reduced uh, by a small amount and I'll go into, to. A relatively small amount. And I'll go into why that was made. So right now, um, as in the amendment as currently written. Uh, one million eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars uh, would be needed to be budgeted. To be pulled from the general fund reserve balance uh, in order to achieve a balanced budget. In addition to that, there, um, so the, the main derivation of that reduction uh, relates to. What had, on the first was presented as um, five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, which was to be. Um, draw, be drawn from the general fund in order to replace T R T revenues. Transfer to Fund Forty-Seven to support Grand County Active Trails and Transportation. Um, in the current version of the amendment, uh, that five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar uh. Amounts uh, has been reduced to three hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. Um, therefore transfers out at the general fund uh, to make up for revenue shortfalls. Total one million twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars, this shaded cell here. Going down to the bottom of this document, um. There was a bit of a, a, a. There was a, a di- uh, an, an updated revenue projection as it relates to T R T mitigation. This was brought to light by Commissioner Martinez. Um, he referenced um, an error that I had entered in my analysis regarding the splits. Um, with the T R T collection rate at four and a quarter rather than four and a half percent. Um, the split being determined by the first two percent of that collection. Uh, and so uh, on the second page of this document, uh, or I, it's not the second page, sorry. I'm going to just scroll through here. Hopefully, I don't give anyone vertigo. Um, is it in this document? Yeah, it's on this uh, page here. Um. We can see that it's demonstrated most clearly in this line that I have highlighted. And this line that I have highlighted, which um, that the, the, the split from. July first to October first, um, is actually forty-seven and fifty-three, forty-seven going to. Establish and promote, fifty-three going to mitigation, where it had previously been uh. Where had previously been um, um, in error, that split was quoted at forty four and fifty six. Um, so I'm gonna go back to the first page, and that's why that revenue projection has been updated for T R T mitigation. And likewise, the um, the. The, the pull from the general fund to make up for that shortfall is increased slightly, I think somewhere in the order of fifty thousand dollars. And that's also uh, reflected here in this shaded uh, cell. Um, this again is in reference to Fund Forty Seven, that five hundred and twenty six thousand that had been budgeted to be collected or to be. Come in as revenue to Fund Forty Seven, which had been T R T, but is currently being proposed to be general fund dollars, is reduced to three hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. And then just a general contraction to G C A T expense, uh, Grand County Active Trails and Transportation expenses in response to that T R T funding loss. And this um, associated reduction, which I'll, I'll, I'll touch base on here in a minute. Um, we did receive our federal payment in lieu allocation, which came in eight thousand six hundred and seventy two dollars less than expected. So that's a known quantity as far as revenue, and so it, it, uh, that, and that, that update just came in. It's not a very uh, large amount, but um, because it's a, a known command, known variable at this time, I entered it into this. Um, so um. Additionally, there, you know, so there's some, a couple of documents that were presented on the first that have remained unchanged. That go to explain adjustments made in this amendment regarding uh, general. Salary and benefit expenses projected uh, for departments that are funded out of the general fund. Uh, as well as uh, the needed uh, cleanup of Fund Twenty Three, which had been housed in Fund Sixteen. Uh, but somewhat hastily had been transferred to Fund Twenty Three in the original budget, um, with the. With the knowledge that some cleanup would be uh, necessary. So moving on to that um, item, that five hundred and twenty six, uh, sorry, okay, is that blown up enough? Good, okay, five hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. That had been originally budgeted or allocated in T R T funds to support Grand County Active Trails and Transportation. Um, of that budgeted amount that was approved in the original twenty twenty five budget, um. There, uh, so. This is a, this is kind of an error in how I have this um, detailed right here, so I'm gonna have to clarify this. Uh, year-to-date expenses to active trails and transportation that were intended to be funded by T R T. Uh, total one hundred and sixty three thousand eight hundred and sixty two dollars. That is not. Uh, that, that's money that, you know, because this is still in an active current budget year. Uh, that, that's not T R T money that has been spent. We, we will appropriately account for those funds. As being general fund expended, so I want to be very clear about that. That's not a hundred and sixty three dollars in T R T funds in twenty twenty five that have been spent. Uh, for the trails department, as has been made by, clear by the commission, uh, that that is not the commission's intent. Um, but I just mere, I, I, I phrased it in that way just to indicate that. That had been originally intended to be budgeted from uh, T R T funds. Um, due to conversations, uh, as a result of conversations that I, I, I wasn't, uh. I didn't participate in, but I was reported on, it was reported to me on, and I'm entering the, you know, the uh, accounting on the, on those uh, conversations, um. Uh, you know, I don't think in agreement, there, there, it was, it was at least, uh. It was at least agreed to that the current amendment version would enter in option three. Um, which was presented by Trails Director Logowitz, um, at the July first meeting. Um, which it represents a, a continuation of some of the responsible recreation programming. Um, uh, but does, does scale back. Um, that, um, that expenditure from five hundred twenty six. To um, what would to, what would be a total at the end of the year of three hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and ninety one dollars. And so that, that, um, and that's made up by what would be projected to be spent out, um. The rest of this year under the guise of option three, um, in addition to what has already been spent this year, so the overall. Amount that is currently entered into the amendment, amendment being proposed is three hundred and forty thousand dollars out of the general fund. Uh, to support that activity, um, and this is a brief breakdown of what option three. Um, is uh, comprised of, um, and that's a, there's a more detailed document in the uh, July first meeting. Uh, that goes through those options, uh, but this is what I've been directed to enter into this current proposal for your consideration. So, um, going back to the, let's see, let's go to the end, the final summary sheet, and this goes back to, um. The general summary that there's about ten million dollars in general fund savings. If you look at unplanned general fund expenses this year, and if you, if you consider. If you consider using the general fund reserves to make up for revenue shortfalls as an unplanned expense, that's kind of how I'm. Framing it here, just for the purposes of kind of visualizing what we're doing here. Uh, there's a rough, there, you know, there's a very, very close association with those unplanned expenses and. Uh, what is currently proposed in the amendments to be drawn from the fund balance. So, that, you know, and that, and that amount is one million eight hundred and fifty seven thousand four hundred and sixty four is currently proposed in the tentative. Uh, or in the, in the proposed amendment. We talked in the, on the first about, uh, the commission indicated its intent not to, to. To keep funding whole for, for essential services. Sorry, I lost for a second, I don't feel good, okay, um. And so in, um. I would say, and, and so when we look at sales, the, um, and, and so I, I guess that, that, that goes to, that begs the question. What amount of this current tentative budget draw from the general fund reserve balance is made up of. What we might consider non-essential services, because I think that that's what the commission is still uh, interested in, and, and, and scrutinizing. Um, sales tax shortfall, uh, so, so that, that. You know, what I'm considering an expense that sales tax goes directly to support general fund activities, um. And so that would be a matter of, of seeking expense reduction, uh, cost reductions in general, across general fund departments. Um, and so that, that is kind of have a scope of a conversation about essential or non-essential, I mean, certainly there's a discussion, but. Um, at this point, we haven't really gone into that, that level of, of detail of scrutiny of the general fund department budgets. The T R C C shortfall also relates to, I believe it's. Better off, it's O S T and Airport, I believe, in this current budget, I would have to, um, but again, those are general fund departments, um. And so it wasn't, it wasn't indicated to me that we were scrutinizing the essential or non-essential at this time. The essential or non-essential aspects of. Uh, that department activity that's supported by T R C C. As the restaurant and car rental tax. Uh, T R T mitigation shortfall. Um, uh. The, the item in there that, um, I think perhaps deserves more conversation, um. Is the uh, allocation that's still in this proposed amendment uh, to the, the Moab Museum. And that's in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars. So that is still in this proposed amendment, uh, to be made up by general fund, uh, dollars, um, and. And making up for this T R T mitigation shortfall. Um, as well as, um, so the Moab Museum, as well as this uh, continuation of option three. In support of Grand County Active Trails and Transportation, uh, making up for what had been previously budgeted to be drawn from. Or to be from T R T revenue. All right, and so, you know, my takeaway from where we left off on the first was. Um, you know, we may need to indicate in a motion, uh. You know, whether, you know, and, and often, as a way of deciding which essential or, or which, which, which non-essential services, um. Would be included or not. Um, and so. You know, I, I guess I would invite, or I would direct or invite the commission to, um, you know, I have a, I have a proposed, um. I'll just stop sharing at this point. I have a proposed. Motion, a suggested motion that indicates that there could be an adjustment made to the contribution of the fund balance based on a denial of. A non-essential allocation. Um, alternatively, um, the uh, the proposed amendment could be, um. Could be a, there could be a motion to appro, approve the proposed amendment as presented. Uh, in the packet without any additional uh, adjustments.
Okay, and so I have two questions. Um, you mentioned the museum, is there anything else in that five hundred and sixty four thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars? What are the, what are the other non-essentials other than the museum you mentioned? And then why is there a difference uh, between? One million eight hundred and thirty two thousand six hundred and two, and then the actual number you were using of one. Million eight hundred and fifty seven thousand four hundred and sixty four dollars.
Um, remember that there were some, uh.
It's roughly twenty five thousand dollars there, so it's a difference.
Yeah, and so like, thing, things like the, the reduction in the pilt, for example.
Okay.
You know, there's some other little, little items that, little adjustments that were made. And that kind of, that weren't factored into the full, like that sort of tally.
That chart.
I was kind of isolating those out.
Okay.
Um, it was close enough. As far as that, um, the T R T mitigation short, shortfall. Um. What is currently allocated is, uh, uh, of T R T mitigation is search and rescue. Uh, solid waste, law enforcement, which I believe the commission is indicated is, um, is considered essential. And then, then lastly, the hundred and fourteen five twenty five to the museum, so. The answer is that that is really, the hundred and fourteen five hundred and twenty five is the, it's the only, um, item in there that one might consider non-essential.
Okay, and so that answers my two questions. I'll go to Commissioner Hadler and then Commissioner Hadeen.
Great, thank you, Bill. Um, thank you, Gabe, that was, that was a thorough, um. Presentation and it, and it made sense to me, um. For, uh, just one quick question, I'd still like to keep the floor, but as far as that museum contribution, that hundred and fourteen is for the whole year, wouldn't half of that already have been? Um, given to the museum?
That's a good question. I'm, I'm looking at my soft budget software right now, and it looks, um. It looks like in this case, we haven't made, my, my actuals are showing zero right now, so it looks like an allocation has not been made.
Okay, thank you, and then, um, I would like to go ahead and uh, make a motion to approve the budget amendment. As presented, and if there is a second, I would uh, like to continue to keep the floor, I have a few comments as to that.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hadler. Approve as proposed and seconded by Commissioner Hadeen, with Commissioner Hadler continuing on with the discussion.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, I think this is, uh, I, I, I've been involved in a lot of conversations on this, I think. I think my preference would be to fund a few of these things, um, at a higher level, but. I just want to say that I very much appreciate, um, uh, the spirit of compromise in coming to an. Attentive agreement, whi, which I, which I hope will continue about uh, things such as the G C A T funding and, and. Option three, I think I, I'd prefer, um, one of the o, other options for sure, and I think, uh, some others would prefer. Not to fund it all, but, um, again, I just wanted to say that I, that I appreciate that spirit of compromise, I definitely. Uh, as far as the other non-essential items, I'm, I'm fully in favor of funding the museum as. We discussed last year when we were budgeting, I think that the museum is doing a fantastic job, it fills a. Unique niche in the county, um, with cultural tourism that is appreciated by locals and visitors alike. And, uh, I'd especially like to see that contribution continue, um, so thank you guys, and I'll yield the floor.
Okay, Commissioner Hadeen and then Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, and I, I guess I have a, a question for Gabe, and then I would like to make a comment, so. We had spoke about the Rec Special Service District, and then now it's kind of, so did I miss something along the way? I, I, I'd just like to see where that, that piece. Uh, that line item, and I don't know, Mike, if you want to add anything, if you want to advocate for, so.
Yeah, I, I haven't been, uh, I guess, where I, the, the indication that's been left off for me is that. Uh, that there isn't going to be scrutiny from the past or for the remainder of this budget year of allocations made to the Rec Special.
Okay.
Perhaps that's going, uh, going to be reexamined for the.
Thank you.
That's kind of where I'm left at.
Okay. Um, and then, and then my comment is, I'll, I'll kind of fall in line with Jacques that I would. Have preferred, um, to fund G C A T to a higher level, however, I do appreciate, um. Coming to a compromise in light of, you know. T R T funding, just overall sales tax coming in, and, and what we need to do to tighten our belts at this point. Um, so I, I appreciate that compromise, I do, hopefully we understand, and. I think there's somewhat of a misconception, my understanding is going back, this, this idea of coming up with the trail ambassador was Elaine Gisler. Is my understanding long ago, is that correct, Mary? And so, you know, I think at that time, people saw that need, and I've already talked about the Friends of Indian Creek. The reality is, we want visitors here, we're welcoming here, we're doing all this advertising, and people come to. Marvel in our landscape and our surroundings, and I think that this program does. Everything we can possibly do to protect our environment. And so if we invite visitors here, we also need to educate them, and again, going back to Friends of Indian Creek, it was very simple, we did some basic hiosks at that time. You know, don't cut down the trees for your campfires, I mean, port, you go into Superbowl campground and every cottonwood was stripped. It didn't have a leaf left on it, and, and so the reality is you have to educate visitors to. Um, our environment, and so I greatly appreciate what this program has done, and I think our support of that is. Is supporting that continual visitation and, and welcoming tourists to a place that we all marvel in.
Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, so I got a question, and then I'll write in a comment for just a minute. Um, but I guess this would be to Jacques, you said that a, a negotiation was, was reached, could you just? Talk about that negotiation, because that was part of it, I think that everybody would like to know what, what negotiation was reached.
I don't, I don't know if it's, I, I don't know if it's a negotiation, I've just had conversations with other commissioners about, um. About. Where we can kind of find some common ground on this, um. So, yeah, if I misspoke when I said negotiations, just conversations, um, I would have liked to have seen. The program fully funded for the rest of the time, and I think that I would have also, um, you know, you know, some of this compromise. This option three eliminates mountain bike trail ambassadors, eliminates climbing trail ambassadors, both those are activities that I very much, uh. Favor, support, um, you know, it, it affects things directly, so this is definitely, um. Definitely, definitely hurts, it's, it's, it's tightening the belt, and, uh, I would prefer not to do it, but, um, that's what I'm supporting.
Bill, was that also your?
Yeah, that, that was the way that I take it as well, Commissioner Hadler, Madam Logowitz, and myself, and I believe we had. Admin, both Quinn and Mark in attendance, and we just kind of came to the conclusion that. It was very possible that it could completely be cut at this point, or. We could look forward a little bit and show some empathy for. People that had to consider either looking for another job or possibly ending up somewhere else under another organization to try to get through the end of the year. With where we were. Um, for myself personally, I looked at the numbers, and I don't remember without going back to Gabe's numbers there, but. The difference was, we have to come up with money out of savings of approximately, now I think it's a million eight hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. Or it was going to be a million six hundred and some thousand dollars, and it just made sense to me to, um. Extend that program as best we could up to the end of the year, and then start looking at. At how we're going to meet the budget next year, and I, I think we have to, um. All, all realize that we're not done making cuts, it, it, the reality of it is, is that. We're in this situation right now because of a huge shortfall, and, and. We can all hope that the economy turns around in the next six months, but the reality of it is. We're not, we're not done, I, I think that we're going to see an update at the next commission meeting will give us an indication of just. We're currently at six point one, I believe Gabe has mentioned, and what that will look like at. The next commission meeting will kind of give us an idea, but. I, I, I hate to say it, but you. I, I, I hate to say it, but you can only take away so many pencils and crayons and paper. You, we, we have to budget based off of a reduction in staff in the future if the economy doesn't correct itself. And that pendulum might take a little while to swing back. We have, you know, improved the amount of money or increased is the proper word, I guess, the amount of money that we're putting towards advertising. And that's directly related to our budget woes. And I, I think that it was a, a good move and I certainly appreciated the work that all of us put into and come into a compromise to get where we are and get us through the end of the year. So, yes, Mike and then Mary.
Still had to go. Did you need, still have?
I, I was just, I was just asking a question because I didn't know how the negotiation.
Yeah, so finish up. I apologize.
So, no, you're just fine. Yeah, so I just, you know, would like to just mention right here, when I look at this right here and when I looked at it originally, when I started looking into HB four fifty-six, we're looking at a structural deficit here in the county. Right? We are spending way more than we know than it's going to be coming in. Right? We have, we have, we have things that we just cannot afford here inside of the county. And I think these cuts are going to have to be made. Um, I do, I do like that, the idea of empathy and trying to continue the programs the best that we can to finish out through the year. But I think that right now is a time to start looking at how we're going to be moving forward um, in all departments. Because we just don't have the funds to keep funding this. We cannot fuck, keep, continue to fund into a deficit way that, the way that we're, the way, the, the, the way that our current projection is, is going right now. And so just letting everybody know that, yes, this, 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 this negotiation or this compromise has been reached. And I do think it's a great compromise, but I don't think that it's a solution. And I think that everybody needs to understand that. Um, as all of this started happening, you know, I, I, I talked to quite a few people about the trail ambassadors. And one thing was that I, that I got from every single person that I, well, I'm sorry, there was two people that actually uh, Colin was one of them. And, and there was one other person that I talked with. Not one person was willing to fund the trail ambassadors out of property tax that I talked with. Most people, when, when we talked about funding the trail ambassadors under the TRT, they said, that's great. Right? And we like that, we welcome. But when it came down to funding the trail ambassadors over property tax, most people that I talked to said, no, 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 we don't want to do that. It should be funded by the, it should be funded uh, another way. And that's just not possible. And I just want to make sure that that's out there. I realize the great benefit that the trail ambassadors provide out here. Right? See them out there. I, I understand that the, the benefits to the search and rescue. Um, I see the, you know, them out on the trails handing out rag bags. You know, I understand them on the trails. They are a very valuable program to this community and I do value them. That being said, how, how do we fund them? Right? Is, if, if, if our taxpayers are not willing to fund this program, right? A property tax owners are not willing to fund this program. I mean, we're really left up against a wall right now. And I just want to just mention that, 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 that I'm, you know, I, I agree. I think that the negotiation and moving forward to the end of the year is, is a good idea. And it's something I think that we have room for as we kind of look through what we have in savings right now. But it's not something that I see moving on into the future.
Um, I'll just real quick before I go to Mike, I, I will say that we've already sent all departments emails that to look at this year's budget, to start tightening belts where we can. And we had a discussion, I don't remember when it was, um, at Administrator Tyner and I, maybe Quinn was there as well with the sheriff, and he's got an open position for a dispatcher for the nine-one-one services. And we've asked him to move his lead person into that position to work and to not fill it. So it isn't, it, this is not one department suffering here. This is the entire county and we're going to have to look at everybody's budget for next year. And so I'll, I'll move on to Commissioner McCurdy and then Commissioner McGann. I'm sorry, I buttered him.
So, that's a simple question. Uh, Gabe, on the uh, voting to approve adding to RT tax, uh, TRT tax collection rate, uh, quarter percent or half percent? Uh, is that enacted? Was that enacted in July? Are we still waiting on that coming? That increase to come through?
We've been told that it would become effective October first.
October first.
Yeah.
Is that?
It's factored into.
It's factored in there? That's what I wanted to know. Yeah.
We're counting every penny we got.
Every penny. Making sure, Mary, please.
I, you know, I, I won't go on very long because I've made myself clear before. I, I think um, we're a little premature doing all these cuts. Uh, I was so excited hearing Vega's presentation today. I think we're going to see much more TRT tax coming in this summer with all the movies and all the things that are happening than we were anticipating. So I don't think the shortfall is going to be as great. It is across your fingers. We also, I just don't think we're going, you know, we, we've left a lot of uh, positions unfunded. Uh, I, I'm very uncomfortable. I think the trail ambassador, we have time. I think it should be completely funded for the rest of the year because we've heard tonight, it, it's an amazing program. It does a lot of good. And we have that time as the health district proved to us tonight. I think we can go out there and for two thousand and twenty-six, find partners. I think we can find partners and it can change and it can look a, a lot different for two thousand and twenty-six. But I do think this is an important program and it is our goose that lays the golden egg. If we do not protect our back country, we are cutting ourselves off. And I, I think we should, I, I I really think we should support the, that we shouldn't be doing these cuts at this time.
Yes, Commissioner McCurdy. Optimism's a good thing, but we're seven months, seven and a half months exactly into this year and six point one percent down as we know right now. And every, I, I'm glad that I, I hear emails were sent out already. And admin's working with departments already on this year's budget, because next year is going to be picking the teeth.
Um, I don't like that analogy, but um, does anybody else have any other comments? If not, I'll call for a vote on, remind me, um, Commissioner Hadler's motion and who seconded? Commissioner Hadeen, thank you. It's been a few minutes and memories collapsing. So no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes six with one abstaining, Commissioner McGann. I mean, not abstaining, can look again against, I'm sorry, Mary.
No, no, there's probably a problem, I apologize, Mark.
All right, so we will move on to number eight. Consideration of response to BLM draft environmental assessment on class one e-bikes.
It's me, give me one second. All that. So, let's see here. So the BLM, um, Board of Field Office released the draft EA um, concerning the authorization of class one e-bikes designated by trails and presented um, a few different alternatives. Alternative A was to leave to leave all the trails closed as is. Um, alternative B was to open up the brand trails originally. And then some other trails on a phased approach. And then alternative C was to open up all trends. Uh, we got quite a few responses in here. So there's, um, you know, I, I went and attended the um, the GCAT. I'm sorry, the Trail Mix Committee, Committee Meeting and listened to the concerns that was there. Um, I also attended the um, Motorized Trail Committee as well and listened to their um, concerns right there and their letters is posted inside of here as well. And then also inside of here, we um, have a letter posted from Scott New, Poison Spider, uh, Poison Spider Bikes. That kind of goes through um, uh, what, what the, I don't remember. Let's find out real quick. The number of bike outfitters that kind of supported um, as well. Um, the letter that I have presented right there um, supports alternative C. Um, and then also, we also had a letter, uh, an alternative letter presented by Jacques. Jacques, do you want to go ahead and present your letter?
Uh, sure. Thanks, Brian. Um, yeah, I, my letter is a result of um, discussion at uh, Trail Mix that I attended to, as well as conversations with many um, kind of longtime Moab bikers. That's kind of, kind of my community, as well as e-bikers and, and other trail users. I think the relevance of um, everyone and not just, not just mountain bikers, but users such as hikers and equestrians, et cetera. Um, make a, make a big, uh, they, they, they deserve a voice and I think Trail Mix is a good way to give them the voice. Anyway, long story short, I, my letter is proposing to um, support option B. That's a little less than Trail Mix, well, Trail Mix was uh, supporting a kind of a B minus approach, which in, did not include uh, the Pipe Dream Trail and uh, part of the Amasa Back Trail System in uh, being open to e-bikes. So yeah, you can go ahead and continue, Brian. And then um, if, if you have anything else to say, and then I, I had some other comments I'd like to make, but I'll return it back to you.
Yeah, so, well, I think Brian had some more comments. Did you want to finish up? What's yours?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Give me just one second. Let me just pull up my letter real quick here and I can. So, you know, some of the main, the main uh, uh, topics that I brought up in the letter and um, with the reasons that I supported all previously um, was, the, the main reason was enhanced accessibility and inclusivity. Um, the second is the uh, growing popularity and uh, economic benefits that the e-bikes provide. Um, the third was the minimal in, uh, environmental impact and efficient management. And then the fourth was the limited user conflicts that had been seen in other locations. And then the fifth was just alignment with the evolving trends that we see now here. Um, you know, when we look at some of the letters that have been presented, um, the majority of the mountain bike companies, tour guides and outfitters signed on to a letter supporting alternative C as written. Um, on top of that, you know, when you look at the, let's just look in here on the respondents, right there, there is um, uh, public, um, respondents for the public scoping comments that we're receiving. In support of allowing class one e-bikes on the identified mountain bike trails, four hundred and forty-seven, uh, the five hundred and forty-two comments, that's eighty-three percent of the people that commented supported e-bikes on the trails. That's, that, that, that's a pretty big number right there, you know? And I know Jacques said that he went and talked to, to, to the community, where there's a big portion of that community um, that spoke up tonight that didn't feel that they were heard. Um, I know that, that Jacques mentioned that, you know, that they have, they have the ability to go to these Trail Mix Committee meetings and speak up on their own. Um, but once again, you know, these are, these are not paid positions right there that are at that meeting. Um, and you know, we are paid positions. And I think it's our duty to go out and reach out to the business community, to reach out to the outfitters and to reach out to the entire uh, um, community. Besides, just our friends, right? And see what is, what, what the conversation is out there. Um, and, and what I'm seeing out there is that there's a large population that does want to see alternative C as the preferred alternative.
Anybody else?
Okay.
The Jacques should have a go first.
All right, um, Commissioner Hadler, we'll let you go with it. Sorry if I was stepping on.
Yeah, thanks. First, uh, first I want to say thanks to all of our advisory committees for the uh, time and effort that they put into the research and discussion of this topic. Uh, you know, they, they are volunteer boards. I know some of those meetings run really long with the discussion. And we put a lot on, on those uh, private citizens to um, to comment and, and work on these things. And I've been, I've been heavily involved in e-bike issues since, for ten years. Twenty fifteen was when I first started selling and running e-bikes in Moab, um, first business to do so. Um, and um, I do, let's see, to Brian's point, I, I, I reach out to, to plenty of folks. I know everybody on, on those letters. I don't just talk to the business owners. I talk to the people who actually work at those businesses too. And I could tell you that there's a lot of people who are frustrated with e-bikes. Um, but that's, that's fine, whatever. Um, I want to offer a compromise. I think I really like uh, that Trail Mix and Motorized Trail Committee both came forward and made a suggestion tonight and in their discussions. And that suggestion was that we go with a phased approach. Um, I would also propose one, I, I'd propose going with C with that compromise and what they suggested, a three-year approach with each of the three, uh, with, with, with a third of the trails, which is about seventy-five miles a single track, I believe, roughly, uh, for each of three years. And I think that can be done pretty easily, phasing in different trail systems over the three-year period. But the other thing that I would like to add would be to exclude the Raptor route system from that, but include all the rest of the trails. And the reason for that is because our Sand Flats uh, Stewardship Committee has weighed in on that as well again. And, and they don't um, recommend making that a motorized trail system. Uh, the trail system does start in the Forest Service. You aren't allowed to ride e-bikes up on the top trail there. That's Eagle Eye. And that could present some confusion. But also, um, I think that the Sand Flats is in the best position. They maintain those trails also. They're in the best position to um, make a decision about that. So I'd like to respect them as well as the other two committees. So I'd like to make a motion to approve a letter that kind of compromises between the two letters, supports um, option C, excludes the Raptor route and also presents a phased approach to, a, a phased three-year approach is recommended by the Mob, uh, the Motorized Trail Committee to uh, integrating e-bikes into the Mob Trail Systems.
We have a motion, um, is that a second, Trish, or okay, and a second by, we have a motion by Commissioner Hadler, second by Commissioner Hadeen and Mike with discussion.
Uh, two quick questions. I, I, I know we got letters supportive of, of, of a phased, uh, of a phased opening to e-bikes, but I, I see, I see conflict being made in a phased. I, one, if, if we represented that we wanted to open uh, our trails to e-bikes, we could promote that, you know, come to Moab, e-bike in Moab, uh, ex- excessively, but we're gonna, we're already opening it up to problems by saying, we'll come to Moab with your e-bikes, but stay off of these trails. And when people don't pay attention to that messaging, they're going to get caught on said non-trails until they are the next year or the next year. Uh, so it's gonna, uh, it's gonna hurt our messaging right out the gate. And to speak to the point on uh, a Sand Flats Recreation Area, I, I, I do understand that Sand Flats Recreation Area abuts the forest and Forest Service. And I use, I would use this as our view to tell the Forest Service that, hey, we recommend also that you start looking at bike access too. Because they're a thing. They're not going away. And that's the, I mean, telling people you can't on some trails, but you can on some trails, you're opening up. We'd be opening up the problem of enforcement for the next three years when we could just say they're open.
Um, go ahead, Melody, and then we'll go to Mary.
Well, I really liked the letter we got from Dave Wilver and he mentioned that we could use our TRT promotional money. We can encourage people to come here and go on those routes that are open. So, I think it's, it's doable. I don't think that the planned approach is going to affect, I, I think the, the promotional efforts will mitigate that. So I think, and I'm in, I'm in favor of, of um, that plan approach, opening them all up. I understand what the um, Sand Flats Stewardship Committees ask about the Raptor route, you know, it's only that small section and e-bikes could go around it. Um, so I, I mean, I'd be in favor of that. I think that ultimately that's really small, you know, concession to ask for that one, about to stay, to stay close to e-bikes.
We'll go to Commissioner McGann. We'll go to Commissioner McGann, then Commissioner Martinez, and then McCurdy.
I think. I had my hand up also, Bill, just to let you know.
Okay, yeah, I see you now. I'll, I'll catch you after, Mike.
I think e-bikes are here to stay, and I think they're, they're really good invention, invention, especially the pedal-assisted e-bikes, because people get exercise while at the same time they're able to do something perhaps at another point they couldn't do. With that being said, as an e-bike rider, I celebrated and wrote letters in support of having the trail that goes through town and the trail along the river goes to be open to e-bikes. And I was so thrilled when they did, and I'm still thrilled they are. But I found that there's, there's some issues with that that were unexpected, were very unexpected. I mean, uh, because people don't, you know, uh, you know, there are things other than just the pedal-assisted e-bikes. That they're, they're showing up on the trails and they're, they're causing problems. And I think a phased approach is going to help us look at it in a more holistic way, because we're gonna, we're going to see that, oh, this is, that we're gonna have to uh, mitigate this, and we're not gonna have to mitigate that. There's things we're going to have to do to, to make this dual. And as we know, it's a lot easier to open things up than to close them. So through our, through our investigation and through a phase system, which would give us the opportunity to really study the impact and study the problems with uh, enforcement. How much is it going to cost us to enforce that it's only pedal-assisted e-bikes? And that all of these look-like bikes that are really motorcycles aren't on it? That will give us an opportunity to figure out how much, how are we gonna, you know, how are we gonna enforce what we're asking for? Because we're asking for e-bikes, pedal-assisted e-bikes to be allowed on the trails. We're not wanting all e-bikes. So that's, I think eventually we will have, and we should have all the trails open to e-bikes. I think especially as our population is very active, gets older. But at the same time, I think always, you know, opening it wide open, we don't know what's gonna happen. And by phasing it in, we're gonna have a better opportunity to study and understand the impacts and the pro, on the process of enforcement. So that's why I support this program.
Thank you, Mary. Brian, and then Mike, and then Jacques.
Yeah, just a couple of things. So first off, you know, I, I personally do like the idea, I was there when, you know, the Motorized Trail Committee was kind of talking about the phased approach and talking with Jennifer Jones, who was a big part of this VA. And uh, you know, and the collaboration that would be required between uh, GCAT and the BLM. Go ahead and collaborate to, to, to roll this thing out, it's a phased approach. And I like that approach. I mean, I, I personally think that that's, that's, that's a nice way, and I would agree with you, Jacques, but that's, that's something that, that I could agree to. However, though, I have heard, you know, from, what, we bring up again, four hundred and forty-seven people on the comments, and you know, are, and the majority of our biking uh, outfitters, that that's not the ideal situation. And, and I did talk to them and asked them why that's not the ideal situation. And so the guides and outfitters, I mean, as we've been told, and as I've been told my entire life, right, we're the eyes and ears out there. And I can't imagine how many BLM and MPS meetings I've been at where they've said, you know, the, the guides and the outfitters, you're our eyes and ears out there. And, and I think that we really are. I mean, I've, I've heard it enough that I believe it, right? That, that we are the people that talk to the majority of people that come on out here. And so I think that a giant majority of the people that come and visit Grand County, that are, they're getting their information from the people at the bike shop, whether they're renting bikes, whether they're going out on tours, or whether they're getting onto the bike shops, you know, website to find out which trails are open and which trails are muddy. And so I think that those are the people, when I, when I want to listen to, I think they carry a lot of weight. Um, and one of the things that they, they're worried about with the phased approach is that how are they going to be telling people, hey, this is, this is, this trail right here, system is open, this trail system is not open, and this trail system over here is, is closed. And so that's, that's their concerns, and I think that that's a valid concern. Um, but I also have concerns, and, and the reason that I do like the idea of a phased approach is for our staff, right? I mean, there is going to be a lot of work to be done for our crew to go out there just to replace the, the signs out there, you know, and, and put new stickers up on, on all the spots. So there's a lot of work to be done. And I think that, you know, between the BLM and the um, and, and GCAT, I think that they could accomplish that in, in a two or a three-year phased plan. But you know, the thing, the problem I have still, that, that I personally have with the, with the phased plan is, is I think that if we really were interested in the, in the phased plan, we should have done it five years ago when this thing came out, right? We should have, we should have jumped on it five years ago, and we should have been ahead of the curve, and we should have started moving right then. Right now, the phased plan just kind of feels like a negotiation that's failed, right? And everybody's just trying to scramble to grab as much ground as they can and sacrifice any kind of face that they can. Uh, I mean, I don't ride e-bikes, so I mean, I don't have, you know, a big dog in the fight, but I do talk to a lot of people that do ride e-bikes. And you know, a lot of my buddies that I ride with are getting to that age where they do like to ride e-bikes. And, you know, and I like to ride with them. I like, I like to go out with their kids, you know, it is a big, big group outing, and it's a lot of fun. Um, you know, and then talking about the, the Raptor Route, um, and I understand that the Sand Flats Recreation, and I, I read their letter. Um, but a couple of things on that, you know, the Forest Service argument, right now, I think that they, we've seen two uh, findings of, what is it? It's the Fonzie's findings of no significant impact have been found on Forest Service land allowing e-bikes. E-bikes are coming into Forest Service right now. Now, I think that that conversation is about to start changing here pretty soon. Um, and you know, to not have them coming down the Raptor Route, if we are going to be changing trails in the Forest Service, I think is setting us up for failure, because people coming down the whole enchilada, there, where's the bailout? The bailout is the Raptor Route, right? When you're coming on out, and you're like, am I gonna run Porcupine Rim, or am I gonna run the Raptor Route? And so I don't want to set us up into a situation where we say, you know, let's, 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 let's leave the Raptor Route alone. And next thing you know, the Forest Service goes ahead and opens up, you know, the Forest Service Trails, and now we don't have the easy bailout for e-bike riders. And I think that, that's important at right there would, would be a spot that I just, I don't feel comfortable for. And you know, and right now, we do have a lot of trails, you know, that are open to just, just uh, standard bikes, you know, to analogs. Fisher Mesa Trail is open, Lower Porcupine Single Track, the Eagle Eye Portion of Raptor Route, Hidden Valley Trail, the Whole Enchilada, Hazard County, Jimmy King, Moonlight, Schumann's, Hell's Canyon, all of those trails up there are all only open to uh, uh, to analoge bikes. So there is still that option right now to go out, you know, if, if we were to uh, adopt um, alternative C, to still go out and still have that, that same experience to where there are no bikes out there. And I mean, to be honest, though, like, I mean, we all ride out there. How many times have we gone out there, even though those trails, there are no e-bikes allowed? I know that I see at least three or four e-bikes out on every single one of those trails when I ride, right? It's, it's the, the, the time has passed. I think that once again, we need to be, we need to be looking forward, and we need to get ahead of this curve, and I think that we need to embrace this change right here.
Um, I'll go to Mike, and then do you, Jacques, and then I want to weigh in.
Brian said, well, we're behind the curve. We uh, shut down a trail system up on Sand Flats, of literally removing the bike trail off of the roadway, uh, from, clear up from, I mean, clear at the top of the road, I mean, or at least to the canyon. Uh, we did have a plan on trying to find funding to get approved to put a bike path up there. We could have kept them off all trail, or at least section of trails, a lot easier in the past. But being behind the curve means that if we, if we block them off of certain sections, they're gonna go there, and we're gonna have to mitigate that. And in another year, it's gonna come up, hey, we have to mitigate hundreds of people off of said trail, said trail, said trail, because we didn't allow, we just didn't say you could go on all trails in Grand County. We should have been building trails for e-bikes years ago. And we, we did a good job of building many trails, but we're still negative on some very key points. Sand Flats is really one of them. We should have funded the bike path off when we had a chance before. But again, we're behind the curve, and especially with e-bikes.
Jacques.
Yeah, uh, but I mean, Mike, that was just a bike path at Sand Flats. It wasn't single track. Um, and uh, there's, there's, there's lots of good e-bike opportunities in Sand Flats. The very famous Slick Rock Trail is probably the very first trail ever legalized for e-bikes at some point. We, people have been riding those since the beginning, and they're still allowed to ride them. Um, but anyway, um, I, I mean, a phased approach is, it's, it's not difficult to implement that. It's, it's easy for bike shops to tell people where they can go and where they can't. It's easy to have that information posted and online. Uh, I mean, I did it for years, telling people where they could rent the, where they could ride the e-bikes they rented from me, where they could go. Um, that's, it's, it's not really an issue. Um, with e-bikes, um, we're also, I, I, I think it's hard to have this conversation without also having a conversation about increased maintenance, because um, we, I mean, our trails are, are, are our crown jewel, and that's why people come here. And um, we're gonna see more impacts, and um, having more maintenance is gonna be crucial. I'm just saying that as an aside. I think we need that anyway. Um, some of the routes that Brian mentioned that um, we can still ride e-bikes on, almost all of those were up in the forest and, and that's uh, or I'm, I mean, not that we can still ride e-bikes on, but that are not e-bike legal, are all up in the forest, and for six months of the year, they're inaccessible. Um, and as far as coming down the Whole Enchilada and a bailout for e-bikes, I mean, we came down the Whole Enchilada for years on analog bikes, and you could still bail down Sand Flats. Uh, you can ride part of the Slick Rock Trail if you want to. You can, you can come down that. But you, you're not legally allowed to ride e-bikes on the Whole Enchilada right now, and no shuttle companies will take e-bikes up there. Um, and you also really don't need them. I mean, it's, it's, it's a mostly downhill trail. There's, there's parts that you can, you can, you can use an e-bike on uphill, but I mean, I've ridden that route probably a hundred times, and, and, and uh, most of it's gonna be actually easier on a regular bike than an e-bike. Um, so those are, those are some points. But anyway, I do think that the uh, the Raptor Route, it would be nice, we can, you can always change designations. If they did change the designation in the Forest Service, then we could, then, then the BLM could revisit our Sand Flats uh, Stewardship Committee could revisit allowing e-bikes on the Raptor Route. Um, but I do think that's a, that's a, that's a really nice compromise, and it does give all those traditional mountain bikers. And there are, no matter what you guys say, there's plenty of traditional mountain bikes, bikers out there who are frustrated with e-bikes, and, and um, would like to have a place to ride where they don't, where, where there isn't motorized activity. And I think having that one small trail system available for those people would go a long way towards even keeping people like that coming to Moab. Um, because those were the uh, people that built our, our, our bike community to begin with. Um, I, I think that's it. I, I, I support my original motion.
I have a couple of questions. Um, what is, what's holding us to the phased approach, number one? Because if we wanted to do a compromise here, we could look at opening up all of the trails other than the Raptor Park, which would be somewhat of a compromise where we find ourselves right now. I can see the benefits to the phased approach on our staff. But a lot of this isn't our staff's responsibility. It's the steward of the public lands. And so we do have a, a state crew down here as well as our own GCAT crew. And with the help of the BLM, what would hold us to a phased approach rather than asking that they open all of the trails except for the Raptor Route? And um, as long as what you say is correct, Jacques, we could, if the Forest Service does move in the future to allow e-bikes up there, then we could relook at the Raptor Route. By that time, we're gonna have enough, um, I don't know what, time under our belt here that would allow us to see if there really is as much conflict, or if there isn't any conflict. So i- is there an option? And Mike, I know you have your finger up next, but I think Brian and Jacques are the, the two more knowledgeable in the issue. So I'd rather hear from them as, if there's even any sense whatsoever to my recommendation.
I think so. And, and one other thing I'd like to just mention about, about the Raptor Route is when we're out looking for the funding on the up route, right there, talking to the Division of Outdoor Recreation, we just need to make sure that when we're looking for that funding, that it's not gonna be required to have e-bike accessible. Because that is one of the stipulations that is starting to become attached to some of these grants for trail building. So I just want to kind of put that out there, that that might be one of the stipulations that we're looking at when we're talking about the up route. Um, but I'd like to go ahead, I'd like to go ahead and just make a substitute motion.
Okay.
Okay, um. Second here, though. Pull up the original. I move to approve the letter commenting on the BLM authorization of Class One e-bikes on designated mountain bike trails as presented in my letter with the following edits. While we support alternative C, adaptive management, and a phased implementation, we'll provide time for trail crews to roll out this approach. We suggest opening half of the trails year one and the remainder of the trails the following year, conducted in close collaboration between BLM and GCAT. However, we specifically request that the Whole Enchilada system, including Raptor Route, not be open to Class One e-bikes until Forest Service approves their route, or I'm sorry, approves their use.
Okay, we have a, an amended substit, we have a substitute motion here by Commissioner Martinez, and second by Commissioner McCandless, and Jacques, I'll let you comment first, because I kind of asked questions of both you and Brian there, and I, I don't mind. Feel free to.
Uh, Brian, I'm sorry, you cut out on me for just a second. Could I, could I, so did your motion say that you wanted a, a, was it a two-year phased approach? Is that what you proposed, Brian?
Yeah, yeah, a two-year phased approach.
Okay, instead of a three. And then the other thing that you said was not to include the Whole Enchilada or, except, I, I mean, obviously, part of the Whole Enchilada is motorized anyway, the Coca-Peli part and, and much of Porcupine Rim. Um, so.
Well, why don't we just take out the Whole Enchilada system, and then we'll just leave it as, I, I can amend the motion to just have, include the Raptor Route not be opened to Class One e-bikes until Forest Service approves their use. And I think that that, 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 that's, that's, that's a compromise, I think, that I, I feel confident. And the reason that I choose the two-year, I mean, the, the, the BLM is going to choose, you know, whatever makes most sense to them. But the thing that I like about the two-year approach rather than a three-year approach is that two-year phased system is already built into that EA right there. So they already have that, and so rather than trying to add another unit onto that, this would just be adding the trail work in, you know, the trail, the number of trails into the, uh, into that, into that alternative that they already have built.
Okay, and then, and then again, just to clarify, so as far as like, the Whole Enchilada, basically, all the top part is in the forest, so that the non-motorized part of that, you already, you won't be able to ride uh, anyway, and then the lower part is in a, in a WSA, and you won't be able to ride that anyway either. But the middle part will always be open because it's open to Jeeps and motorcycles, et cetera.
Right, and he, he basically removed the, the Whole Enchilada from his motion.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, we'll stick with just the Raptor Route on that.
Yeah, we got it. So you have to make him, make an amended motion, correct language, then get a second, and we have to vote on the amended motion.
Matter. So, that one again, all right.
That's it.
All right.
I'll make an amended motion.
Sure. Or, or we could just start out, you know, commissioners can make whatever motions they want, but we have to, when we go back and clean it up, we have to go through the, the amendment process.
If, if I may, it seems like, um, I mean, honestly, it seems like it doesn't matter, since, since those uses will already be open, just, I mean, anyway.
Well, let's, let's clean it up then, just so that the letter is a little bit more clean. Um, I'll go ahead and amend the motion.
Yeah, please do.
Okay, please, yeah, thanks. Uh, I move to approve the letter commenting on the BLM's draft authorization of Class One e-bikes on designated mountain bike trails with, as presented in my letter with the following edits. While we support alternative C, adaptive management, and a phased implementation, we'll provide time for trail crews to roll out this approach. We suggest opening half of the trails year one and the remainder of the trails the following year, conducted in close collaboration between BLM and GCAT. However, we specifically request that the Raptor Route not be open to Class One e-bikes until Forest Service approves their use.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Martinez, second by Commissioner McCandless. Further discussion needed, or can we vote on that? So it all works?
Sure.
Sure. I don't, I, I'm not a mountain biker, so I don't know when you guys say whole enchilada versus only the Raptor portion of it. If that encapsulates what you guys are looking for and starter, then you guys vote on the amended, the amending motion.
Amending to, on amending the motion.
Correct. First votes to amend it, second votes to approve the original motion. When I say original motion, the amended motion becomes the original motion.
I don't like the two years, but I understand the staffing.
All right. So I'll call for a vote to amend the motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And so then I will call for a vote on the motion as stated by Commissioner Martinez.
Could, hey Bill, could we have, uh, before you call for that vote, could we have a, just a, could I, could I make a comment on the, on that?
Sure.
Thanks. I, yeah, I just want to say I, I do appreciate the spirit of um, compromise that's pervaded this discussion. Again, this is an issue that's pretty close to my heart and, and I, I do respect all, all voices being heard. I, I've, I've heard from a lot of both sides and it's a, it's a difficult position to be in, in a decision to make, but um, I would, uh, in that spirit of compromise, I would somewhat, um, I'll, 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 I'll vote for it somewhat, somewhat half-heartedly. I'd, I'd, I'd much prefer three years, but, but yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Jacques. Anybody else? All right. I didn't mean to step on you before calling for a vote. So all those in favor of the motion is presented by Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Stick with the three years, Brian, but I appreciate your, your compliment.
Well, the motion passes from six to one, one opposed, Commissioner Hadeen. And so with that, we will then move on to item number nine, which is a discussion, excuse me, I just lost it here. Discussion and approval of letter to Secretary Bergen regarding Arches National Park timed entry and infrastructure investments. And that is you, sir, Commissioner Martinez.
Through all these letters. So the background on this is the Grand County Commission. I have drafted a letter to Secretary Bergen, um, uh, of the Department of the Interior acknowledging the make, making America beautiful again by improving our national parks, executive order link to, uh, oh, the, the link to the to the executive order right there. So you know, what prompted me on this is, is, is after I read this is, um, you know, this is, this is a federal directive coming down to federal lands. So how that's dictated is, is kind of beyond Grand County. What I want to make sure though is, is that we have a seat at the table when things, when things do happen, so that we can go ahead and, and ask for some of these infrastructure projects that we have been talking about for, you know, the past fifteen years. You know, I think that there's a lot of people that have concerns on how the park is managed. And um, and I do think that, that, that Grand County being a part of that is, is, is quite.
All right, discussion.
Thank you.
McCurdy, go ahead, and then Commissioner Hadeen, and then Commissioner McGann.
Uh, in, in reading this, uh, I really actually like the call out that the Secretary of the Interior shall review the maintenance backlog within National Park Service. And uh, to speak to Brian's point there, I, I'd like to be the first on the, on, in the list there. Like I, I mean, but get to the front of the line as quick as we can. But I, I know we have a decent backlog, Emergency Operations Center. Being at the first at the table, we, hands out first, you know.
Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner McGann, Commissioner McCandless.
I have, I have, I'll try to be quick. Um, so you know, via our, our recent legislation, the Beautiful Bill, there was a $1.2 billion cut to the National Park Service. And, and currently they're clawing back 267 million from the National Park Service, Park Services 2025 allocations. Since the beginning of 2025 with Doge cuts, the Park Service has lost 24% of permanent staff. This EO, um, executive order proposes a surcharge on foreign visitors via fees and passes. And to me, that equates to, you know, kind of pushing foreign visitation away, which we really can't afford right now. Um, I did a little bit of research. They believe that those surcharges will add up to about $90 million. And hopefully you see that doesn't add up to the cuts that they're making and are clawing back. Um, so to be honest, um, I feel that this letter, and I'm not, I, I appreciate the, what's the word? Kind of the intent behind it. You're right, we have these needs, some of them I don't agree with, but we obviously have needs. The Park Services has needs. I would have preferred that, you know, it was a collaborative effort where you're working with Superintendent Pace to, to define the needs that she sees. But to, to be honest, I just feel like this letter is, is just like a pie in the sky, like, oh, we want all this stuff when the Park Service is under extreme stress. They're, they're having their budget just hammered. And so you're going to turn around and go, oh, and we want a, a road coming in from the north entrance. It's just, it's just, I don't know, I, I find it a little silly to be honest. I would actually support it, which is difficult to state because of all the other things I just said. If we removed those initial comments about timed entry, because we've had a lot of feedback that we have now funded a $60,000 study to see if timed, timed entry is affecting our visitation. So then to put it in a letter that basically states like, we assume it's, it's affecting our visitation, I think is, is a little ludicrous, to be honest. It's like, if you have, if we've already made those conclusions, then why spend 60 grand? You know, so I would, I would actually support it if we took that out, maybe, I don't know. I just, I just, I just think it's unrealistic. And to be honest, I thought the executive order was, this is nothing against anybody in this room, it's at a federal level. It was somewhat mortifying to read. It just, at one point it's saying, we want to do this to foreign visitors near the end. It's like, oh, but we want to, you know, we want to encourage for, foreign visitation. It's like, so what is it? It literally within a document, you know, a one-page document, it completely counters itself. And so I wasn't that impressed again, that has nothing to do with anybody in this room. That's at a, that's at a higher level. So that's where I sit.
Commissioner McCurdy, and then Commissioner McGann. Oh, no, not me, I mean. Oh, McGann and McCandless, my apology. We got a few answers. Trying to stay ahead and then I'll get to you, Jacques.
Thank you.
Uh, I, uh, when we started studying, when issues of becoming overcrowded to the point that it, it was a safety hazard because the cars were lined up all the way to the freeway, uh, all these, all these systems were considered. But the cost is really high. And, and there wasn't the monies to do anything. And that's why they chose the timed entry. So, you know, and, and I, and I don't think these are bad ideas. I have no problem asking for them. I mean, I really don't. I mean, if we can ask for them, I think it might be pie in the sky, but we could ask for it. I'd like to add the emergency, uh, building to it. I would like to add that because it was kind of came from the Friends of Arches and Canyonlands. But I think paragraph, is it two or three? Paragraph through, uh, two. Is it, is that, it's a paragraph two. I, I think that, uh, isn't necessary. Cause, cause it's almost, it's almost taking away from the impact of the, of what you're asking for. Or if we prove it, what we're asking for, because we're asking for all this. And yet then we're also saying that we don't think this is good and this isn't working. Well, I think, you know, let's ask for what we want, but take paragraph two out completely, and I would support the letter. Because, you know, I just don't think it fits. I mean, besides back, uh, you know, that, that, that other people brought up that it's like, why are we saying that we already believe the timed entry hurts us before we've done the study? That's kind of, plus I think it almost waters down what you're trying to get at. Is that you want things to improve the park? That's what you want from the letter primarily, I'm assuming. And I think that to throw that in is like, people, what do they say, less is more? People don't like to read long letters. They want to get to the bullet points, get it done. And this kind of confuses the entire issue. So I just think adding the, what, uh, uh, Friends of Arches and Canyonlands requested and just removing number two makes the letter stronger. And I don't, I think it kind of counter predicts what we voted for in the past.
All right, Melody.
Well, in the executive order, it does say the Secretary of the Interior shall review all the department's recreational access rules and take steps to rescind any that unnecessarily restrict recreation in national parks. Which, I mean, since January, we've been advocating that. I mean, I've been advocating it for years. I feel like the, the reservation system has, once it's been in fact, our visitation has gone, gone down into the county. Maybe not at the park, if there are numbers, you know, we can talk about the numbers being skewed here and there. But anyway, so that's why I think it's important to leave that sentence in there because that is something that we're looking at. Is unnecessarily restricting recreation. And I definitely agree with adding in Friends of Arches, um, comment about the construction of the updated Emergency Operations Center to improve incident response. And I also, after listening to community response and the letters, and I really, you know, it hits home. And I know we, we did send a letter in support of the federal facilities earlier this year in March. You know, which did say that we wanted to protect those employees. But it didn't really specifically go out and say we want Arches employees, because I really like a letter that came in that said, you know, that we have to keep the, to keep the parks and other federal land in good shape, they need good employees. And we have good employees, but we need to make sure that they feel, feel safe and, um, you know, that they're dedicated to keeping it beautiful. And I, I don't know if we can add this in this letter, because this is kind of about infrastructure, but I think it's super important that we do send a letter that is, um, supporting the employees and making sure that that funding is there for employees as well.
All right, Jacques.
Sure. Um, yeah, thank you, Bill. I don't, I don't support the letter. I, I think the, the, the directive is, is disingenuous when you cut 260 million dollars from national parks and this year's budget alone, and then say you're going to make it up out of the pockets of foreign tourists who you've been driving away all year to begin with is a little bit ludicrous. Again, not, it's not against anyone here, it's just a, I, it is what it is. As far as a couple of the asks, you know, if we, if they establish a northern entrance to the park, those, those people are likely, most of them who come in that way aren't even going to come to Moab and spend money. They'll come down from, uh, Green River or, or as they're passing through I-70 and, or from Grand Junction. I thi- I think that actually might hurt our economy a little bit. And then, uh, some of the other things, yeah, I, I totally don't support the part about the timed entry system. I mean, if we're paying someone to give us an opinion on a timed reservation system and say that we strongly believe this to begin with, I think that's also, uh, it doesn't belong in, in the letter. So I, I, I don't support any part of it. Thanks.
County attorney. And then I'm on the way in. I don't, I don't have a dog in a fight over you, but.
Yeah, I haven't spoken yet, so.
Okay, sorry. If you look at the third sentence of your letter, second paragraph, third sentence starts with, we strongly, we strongly believe that. If you replace that with, we question if the timed entry system is limiting visitation and harming our local economy, these concerns prompted Grand County Commission to engage with that flows or logically, but I, I don't have a dog in a fight. Well, give me your verbiage again, now that. Just taking the word, we strongly believe that and replacing it with, we question if. And then everything else kind of flows. I don't, I'm not championing this, but that's middle ground-ish to what you guys are all saying.
Um, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah. And so, you know, speaking on a couple of people's points, I think that there's a confusion on visitation versus what the effects on our economy, right? The KMC gardener, right, is to find out what the effects on the Grand County's economy are. Um, I can look at the visitation numbers and you can tell that the visitation numbers have been stunted by the reservation system. Let's go, I'll start right here and let's go to 2014, we'll start at 1.284 million. 2015, 1.4 million. 2016, 1.585. 2017, 1.5. 2018, 1.6. 2019, 1.6. Right? Like the numbers keep going up. 2020, everything dropped. 2021, 1.8, that was your spike. 2022, 1.4. 2023, 1.4. 2024, 1.4. The reservation system has a capacity problem, um, that it cannot allow more than, I, I don't think that it can allow more than 1.4 million people into the community. I mean, that's, that's what it's shown over, over the years. And when we look at the numbers of currently this year, we are tracking up a little bit, but we're also, the last two months, we've been tracking down. Right? And they're, they're, they're following this just about the same. We're within five or 10,000 people either which way. That's one, that's one, that's one, that's one, uh, uh, conversation is the visitation versus the, what the effects are on our economy. And I do agree that there are two separate conversations, right? Getting to Tricia's comments, like I, I understand your concerns, you know? I think, I think that, you know, charging somebody more and then asking them to come to you is, is a hard ask, right? But, you know, but it's also an ask, right? I mean, it is something that, 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 you know, I'm, I'm wondering if we're going to see a bigger fund that's going towards the, uh, 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 Brand USA, that's going to be funded towards funding national parks, right? Because I know that they received a pretty good cut as well. So maybe we're going to see something like that where they're making a bigger push to push people to our parks. Uh, and I also thank for your, your help on the letter and, uh, helping out with some of the, you know, the writing. And, and I did change up some of the things, you know, on, on there to what you said, and I appreciate that.
That's not me, it's grammarly. I mean, I do a lot of editing, but I do a lot of grammarly too.
Yeah.
I, I recommend it to all my college students. Why not? Why wouldn't you?
Yeah. And, and to what Mel said, I, I, I agree with you on the employees. And I think that, you know, I mean, if you want to write a, a letter supporting, uh, you know, staff at Arches, I would give 100% you write it. I'd help you write it, you know? But I think that this letter right here is talking about the infrastructure needs. Uh, and I do like, you know, I do like the, um, you know, the, um, what Steve Evers had brought from Friends of Arches National Park. And so with, I think with that, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to make a motion. See here, got listed.
You're getting barbed, then. Just say it now.
Sorry there. I move to approve the letter to Secretary, uh, Bergam as presented with the following edit. Following bullet point number five, add fundamental infrastructure investments such as an updated Emergency Operations Center to improve incident responses.
Motion by Commissioner Martinez, second by Commissioner McCurdy. Further discussion, Mike, I know your hand was up and then Melody and then myself. Do you have a second?
Yes. Commissioner.
Uh, in the discussion, I would have liked to see, uh, Stephen's edits too, just to make it flow a little better. But, and I understand the grammarlies, but I really want to say I'm an international tourist when I can afford it. And I gladly pay up to 14 bucks more for my family to attend the the falls in Jamaica, because I am not a Jamaican citizen. I, I, I know that's the one fee that I pay every time I go, but I, I pay gladly because I know it's going directly to them at the Jamaica Falls to make it back. So that's an easy motion or easy conversation point. But the international tourism hasn't been happening since COVID. I am the guy that takes the Asian or French buses into Arches. It's, it's not someone else, it's not hyperbole. We're not talking about staff, it's me. I go up there with them, I talk about Arches, I guide them through Arches using a CUA. Like they're not here anymore and they haven't been since been COVID. That's not some, something to do with current federal policy, politics. It was the day COVID. That's not some, something to do with current federal policy, politics. It was the day COVID shut down. They haven't come back.
Melody.
Brian, I just wanted to recommend if we can move us to our state, to a delegation as well, to legislators and the governor, just because I feel like the state needs to step up too.
I, I think that's a great idea right there.
Yeah. I, um. I think that it's important to get this letter out there for sure. I know that there's this argument that we are, um. Paying for a study, but I, I don't think the letter relates to the study. The study is just to end a argument that's going on in this entire community, let alone upon this dais. It's not. The study is going to possibly change Bill Winfield's mind on the reservation system. And it's possibly going to change Ms. Pace's. Interpretation of the reservation system. And it's important that we have that study done just for the community as far as I'm concerned. And we talk about sixty thousand. Back through the studies from the last five years. I don't know how many of them were water studies that are sitting, drawing dust. The Trail to Tomorrow, a couple hundred thousand was drawing dust. We can, we can dig up study after study that's been done here, drawing dust. So sixty thousand dollars it tells in comparison. To all of these studies that have been done. So it's, it's just a. A kind of a political comment to keep throwing that out there. I just wish that we could, um, get the study done and change Bill Winfield's mind if that's what's going to happen. It, it's very possible. And I'm going to accept that study and I'm hoping that my colleagues will accept it as well when it comes out. I'm, I'm not here to. Hope that it comes out in my favor. I just want it to come out. Let's get it out and be done with it. We've. We've seen previous studies, the white paper by the National Park that was paid for by the National Park. You know, it has a dubious ring to it, just like the individual that called our study dubious, or it called, I guess he called the Hancock study dubious. We need something that isn't manipulated by anybody. We need a study done. That doesn't have anyone's fingers in it. And we've had people already trying to manipulate the studies and, and in their opinions from the public. We had people who were dead set against this study. The minute that the commission voted. To approve the study to pay for it, come racing and want to be at the table to be able to try and craft the study. I, I don't want. Any one commissioner on this board or any one citizen or. Anybody, National Park Service, City of Moab, I don't want anybody's influence in the study. And that has been stressed over and over to Kim Gardner. We do not want a study that is influenced. We want a clean study. Otherwise there's no value to it. And that's all I'm pushing for when it comes to the study. And I think that needs to get out there. So we kind of bury this instead of having this. Intangible sixty thousand dollar. Argument and that's totally diverting away from Brian's letter here and I support the letter. It isn't a perfect letter, but I think that it starts the conversation. And gets our hand out as it says towards infrastructure needs and we might not get any of them. Or we might only get an Emergency Operations Center. Or we might get the paving lot repaired and paved at the visitor centered Arches. There, there's so much backlog. That's out there. Who knows what we're going to get to, but I'm up at the legislature. Every single year with my hand out, trying to bring back money to this county. I worked hard on the Raptor State Park appropriation. I've worked hard on the Roads Department, bringing money back to this county. We brought back grants that are getting sidewalk and curb and gutter on Holy Oak Lane. The only way that you get those is by being there, asking for them. You do not get them hoping that it happens. And I'm, that's, I'm supportive of this and I know you're dying away and Mary, I see your hand there and I will let you, but. I, I think that it's time to vote for this and move on after you've had a, a comment. So.
Is, uh, you know. That I, I do, I, I have a problem with the, we strongly believe. I, I preferred what Stephen said.
Well, and, and I appreciate that and I'll, I'll let Brian stick with it or. Comment on whether he wants to change the, his motion, but. Uh, I'm think whether we've all kind of had our opinions out here.
And I'll, I'll, I'll comment on it real quick. Just, I mean, I, I want to stick with, we, we strongly believe, we strongly believed it enough that we went and funded a sixty thousand dollar study. Right? We believe that there is, there is a lack of that visitation right there. Um, and. It doesn't say that, 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 that I, I don't make any claims that, you know, that this is fact. Right? I just say that we believe this and we went ahead and had this study with and, uh, um, commissioned. Now we've engaged with KMC Gardner policy to assess the extent of the impacts. That's all.
Is, is there value in changing the verbiage if Commissioner McGann wants to vote for it?
Sure, yeah.
I got confused.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, I would, i- i- if you would support the letter, I'll go ahead and change the verbiage on.
Remind us your verbiage.
Question if, just we question if.
Okay, and so we, we leave that.
If, if this.
I, I'll vote for it, but I, I, I do think that we can still let her. Just because I know people like to.
I'm, I'm just asking you. I'm not forcing it.
That's, that's great. I'll go ahead and amend the motion.
And the motion to replace the language.
Yep, I'm gonna, uh, uh, oh, that's nice. Not gonna make the whole motion. I amend the motion to replace the language. We strongly believe that the timed entry. System is limiting visitation and harming our local economy to. We question if the timed entry reservation system is limiting visitation, harming our local economy.
Does it help point?
Saying.
Does that hit the point?
It's your guys' motion, but that, yeah, you're going to amend it. Yes, and then you need a second and you put on the amendment.
Okay, motion, amended motion by Commissioner Martin, Martinez, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. Those in favor of amending the motion.
Right.
That passes unanimously. Now we vote on the motion with the verbiage changed in that second. Paragraph. Those in favor of the letter as amended. Those opposed.
Uh, uh, nay.
All right, that passes five to two with Commissioner Hadler and Commissioner Hadeen again. And thank you for working through all of that. I, um. Want to say that I really appreciate the fact that we have worked hard here tonight to come to some agreements and. Even though we didn't totally. Maybe one, two, I think we've all been willing to move a little bit and I appreciate that. So we will go on to a discussion, number ten. Discussion of Moab City Services and I put this on here. And this was put on before a date was set that we would be able to work with our partners at the city. And so I, I don't think that we need to go into a terrible amount of depth here. I would also, before I start my discussion, number ten, like to say that I think we should move number twelve. With future medium. Um, just in the essence of time here.
Thumbs up.
So.
Thumbs up.
She's thumbs up.
I agree.
Right, moving number twelve, but can we finish on ten before we go to comments? Or did you have something, Commissioner McGann?
I just wanted to make a few comments. I, I felt like this meeting went better than many of our meetings. I, I felt like. There has been much more decorum, that there has been much more respect. And, uh, I, I'm, I didn't get anxious during this meeting like I normally do. The discussions and the disagreements were, uh.
Professional.
Professional, so I appreciate.
Constructive. Thank you.
Civil.
Skipping twelve.
You know, we are, we're skipping twelve, yes, and Stephen was fine with that. I checked before.
Come back to it someday, but.
Yes, yeah, in the future. And so just to discuss regarding the discussion around Moab City Services, there are a lot of loose ends between the county and the city. And I believe that the city who is here feels the same way, but I feel like we need to kind of collect all those loose ends up. And get everything tied up. And so there is a meeting scheduled. I want to say that it's actually tomorrow. Um, at two o'clock. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, I'll check if I correct you if you're wrong. Thank you. And so really that I think that I have a list of about six or seven different things. They don't need to be discussed now, but. It goes everywhere from the. Um. Nine one one services to the stuff with the CJC, to the victims advocates, to the. I don't know what they call the dog pound, the.
Yeah, animal.
And animal control. And so there's all of these handshakes and loose ends out there and it is my goal. And I believe it is with the city as well to try and get the ones under an MOU that we need to have under an MOU, get the. The past cleared up and the account ledgers cleaned and. We know moving forward that we're paying for X and that they are paying for Y or whatever you want to call it. And that's. That's really all this is about. And I didn't want, um. Because the discussion hadn't been made with any other commissioners. It was basically, um. Myself, the sheriff, Mr. Tyner and, um, folks from the city that were going to be in that meeting. And it needed to be something that the entire commission was aware of. And so, yes, Trish.
Um, so can I ask who's going to be in the meeting on your guys' end and then so.
Sure, it'll be, uh, myself, the city manager and chief.
Put up and talk because they don't get it on. They don't get it on.
Oh, and chief, and chief Bell.
Yeah, okay. So thanks and I appreciate that. I, I think we're on the same page.
Thank you.
Uh, we, we want to get those loose ends tied up as well.
Okay.
I've been working with, uh, Mr. Tyner and I think we've had some really good conversations. Tomorrow, we're looking forward to the meeting right here and, uh, both myself and Chief Bell will be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then on your, on the county's end, Bill.
It'll be myself and the sheriff and I believe Mr. Tyner, um.
Do you mind sit in?
Um, I think we started out small to begin with.
Yeah.
It's easier.
It's easier. Yeah, thank you.
I'll get you my lid.
I'm glad you had to sit through that.
Hey, wait, wait to join us.
Now you know, now you. I don't want to hear any of the councilmen complaining about your meetings. This is, this is just commonplace.
I believe that that ends the meeting, correct? We don't have a close session or anything. So at that point, I would say that we adjourn the meeting. Thank you, folks. Appreciate that.
Good luck.